Good morning and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County Regular Meeting of August 25, 2020, which I now call to order. We're going to start today with an invocation by Joy Erwin, I should have asked, Shitaklov of the Grace Bible Church, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're able.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. Excited to be here with you all and very blessed. So, we all need God's help. I don't know about you all, as a wife, a mother, an individual walking on this earth, we need God's help. So, Father, I thank you this morning, Father, for our elected officials, God. We thank you for the weightiness that the office holds, that you have given them. And we ask that your kingdom would come, that you would manifest your kingdom upon them, God. We pray for the wisdom that you have, Father, to impart unto them, even this day, God, for the weighty matters, Father, that weigh upon them, Father, for the people, Father. We pray, Father God, that you, Father, would protect and watch over each one of them and their families. We ask, Father, that the righteous in the city will rejoice as they, Father God, make the decisions that they have, Father, with the wisdom that you will impart, the knowledge and the understanding, Father. So, Father, we ask that you would bless this day. We ask that you would bless our county. We ask that you would bless our state, and you would bless this nation in the name above every name, in the name of Yahshua, Jesus, our God. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair, Bill?
I will, Carol. All right. We're going to start this morning with a moment of silence for Mayor Bill Sharon from Brayden Beach, who passed away in the last couple of days. So, we remember Bill, remember Tajet, remember his family, remember his dog. So, thank you for your service, Mayor Bill. We're gonna, we have a nine o'clock time certain this morning. Are there other changes, announcements regarding the agenda? Sherry?
Yes, Madam Chairman, members of the board, there are some changes to your agenda. If you'll bear with me, I'm going to go through those for the public as well. A change to the citizens' comment consideration for future agenda items under item eight. The comments submitted through our online public comment forum were added to this agenda and to this item. Change to our regular agenda under the Administrator under item forty, the discussion of ongoing issues relative to the COVID and coronavirus pandemic and the extension of the local state of emergency. The following documents were added to our item, the PowerPoint presentations for one, our ongoing responses to COVID-19 pandemic, and two, Week 18 reopening strategies report. Also, there were comments submitted through the online public comment forum. Additions to the consent agenda under Neighborhood Services, item forty-three, the approval of FY 2020, so 2020, 21 nonprofit agency funding investment recommendations, and the request for approval of the FY 2021 funding investment recommendations for adult and other health-related nonprofit agency programs. To additions to the Advisory Board appointments under the Administrator, item forty-four, the appointment of a Commissioner and designation of the Chairman, Member and Alternate Member for the 2020 Value Adjustment Board, and it's the request for the appointment of a Commissioner to serve on the 2020 Value Adjustment Board, and selection of the Chairman, Member and Alternate Member of the 2020 Value Adjustment Board. Under addition to the regular agenda, under Public Safety, item forty-five, authorization to work with the East Manatee Fire Rescue District and the Maiake City Fire Control District to begin the process of a merger. And that request is for the authorization for county staff and the county attorney's office to work with the East Manatee Fire Rescue District and the Maiake City Fire Control District to begin the process of a merger of the two districts. That is all. Thank you.
Okay, great, all right. Are there items that any Commissioner want pulled from the consent agenda? Anything you'd like to put on the regular agenda from the consent agenda? Steve, I think you're joining us today, right? On the phone via Zoom, somewhere?
Yes, I'm out here somewhere.
Out there somewhere. Good to hear your voice. Carol?
I talked to Sherry. There's just a few items that I wanted to bring attention to but not pull, and I told her I didn't need staff.
Okay.
First of all, it was...
Well, let's bring them up when we get to the consent agenda, okay? We're just...
You said pull from consent. I was going to tell you which items, right?
You do want to pull them for discussion and action separately?
Oh, no, as long as you let me discuss it, you usually make us pull it.
I will, I will. When we get to the consent agenda, we'll discuss it. We're gonna, it's just, we just ask upfront in case we want to give notice to staff that they have to be here. But you're saying, Carol, that you don't need staff here. Okay. All righty, then, we're going to go ahead, we'll go ahead and do our proclamations, and then we will get to the port agenda. We have one, two, three, four, five proclamations. Can I have a motion to approve the proclamations?
Go move, second.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Trace, seconded by Commissioner Bellamy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion passes. All right. Our first proclamation is adoption of proclamation designating September 2020 as Literacy Month in Manatee County. Very, very important. And I think we have some library folks here that would like to join Commissioner Trace as she reads this proclamation. All the folks associated with the library, come on up. I know that means we have some new folks.
I'm here from the Manatee Literacy Council.
Literacy Council, great, thank you.
Definitely. Good to see you.
It's something very near and dear to my heart, something I've worked on very hard the last four years, literacy and working with the school board and the cooperation. And I think we've made tremendous strides, and hopefully we continue making those strides. Whereas, an estimated 3.6 million adults in Florida are 24% of those 16 and older, lack even the most basic reading skills, according to estimates by the National Center for Educational Statistics Statistics, and whereas adults with low literacy skills, experienced personnel, social and economic hardships which affect their ability to function and provide for themselves and their families, and that the literacy level of parents has a direct impact on the literacy level of their children. And whereas the Sun Coast Adult Literacy Alliance is a regional partnership comprised of the Manatee Literacy Council, the Literacy Council of Sarasota, and the Literacy Volunteers of South Sarasota County, who work independently to increase adult literacy on the Sun Coast. And whereas the Sun Coast Adult Literacy Alliance, with its shared commitment to increasing literacy in our communities, celebrate the contributions of hundreds of trained volunteers, tutors, who work with adult learners to achieve their educational goals. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that September 2020 shall be known, designated, and set aside as Literacy Month in Manatee County, adopted with a quorum present and signed by our Chair, Betsy Banack.
If you'd like to say a few words, that'd be great.
Thank you for having us. My name is Michelle McLean. I represent the Manatee Literacy Council here. We provide free classes to Manatee residents for basic literacy skills, adult literacy skills, and English second language skills, and we are always looking for volunteers. So, please join us. Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
Good morning, County Commissioners. Ava Edie, Neighborhood Services Director. Very proud to introduce to you our new library manager, Elizabeth Partridge. She hails from Washington State. She made her way across the country in the middle of the pandemic, changed James, changed jobs, and she's got a lot of courage. So, we think she's the right person for our job. And Elizabeth brings with her three master's degrees, English as a second language, Spanish, and library science. And she has a great deal of experience and a lot of energy and creativity and a love of collaboration. So, I think you're going to be quite pleased with our choice, and this is Elizabeth.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. I am so excited to be here. I came a long way just to be here, so, and I am extremely pleased to hear that September is Literacy Month now. That is an amazing development and something that, as a librarian, I feel is near and dear to my heart and to the mission of all libraries. So, thank you very much, and I look forward to serving Manatee County for a very long time. Thanks.
And I know, I think some of you might have participated this year in Sun Coast Grade Level Reading. It was all done on Zoom this year, so it was a little bit more difficult than what we've done in the past, but the horns actually organized that, put that together. It was a wonderful effort. I'll tell you, the cutest thing was when all the kids were on the Zoom call, they were so excited to see their friends because they hadn't seen them in a while because they've all been locked up. So, it was kind of hard to keep them focused on reading, but it was okay. They were excited to be there, and then they got excited about the books that we were reading. So, I encourage everybody to continue to volunteer. There's opportunities to do that remotely. You don't have to do it in person. So, look up the Sun Coast Campaign for Grade Level Reading and look at the opportunities and get those computers out, so. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. All right. Next, we have adoption of proclamation designating September 2020 as Underground Railroad Month in Manatee County. Reggie?
Wasn't that a band?
Some folks coming forward to accept the proclamation?
It's kind of low, so let me make sure I make my necessary adjustments. Can you hear me, Madam Chair?
We can hear you.
Proclamation, Board of County Commissioners, Manatee County, Florida, whereas, in recognition of Manatee County's Underground Railroad history and in commemoration of all those involved in the UGRR, including the resources at the Family Heritage House Museum and State College of Florida, and the Angola Maroon Community at Manatee Mineral Spring Park, and whereas, in appreciation of the inspiring efforts of the people of Manatee County and all those from around the world who have committed themselves to document and share the Underground Railroad through the National Park Services, National UGRR Network to Freedom, and whereas, the National UGRR Network to Freedom acknowledges the significance of the UGRR and all those involved for its contribution to the eradication of slavery in the United States and as a cornerstone for more comprehensive civil rights movement that followed. And whereas, International Underground Railroad Month provides an opportunity for worldwide open dialogue that illuminates the hopes that arise from freedom for all people. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that September 2020 shall be known, designated, and set aside as Underground Railroad Month in Manatee County, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 25th day of August 2020. We have two agencies that will be receiving, and I want to make sure I say it the right way, Reflections of Manatee, and of course, Family Heritage House, State College of Florida.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Kathy Marsh. I'm the museum specialist at Family Heritage House Museum. I thank you for this proclamation. On behalf of Family Heritage House Incorporated, Board of Directors, and State College of Florida, we thank you for this recognition, and of course, for the National Organization of Underground Railroad. Because of the situation, the museum is not open to visitors right now, but please come and visit us at State College of Florida when it is. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next proclamation is adoption of proclamation designating September 2020 as National Preparedness Month in Manatee County. And we all know that we need to be prepared. I see Steve Lichhour coming forward. You guys want to come up? I'm going to go ahead and read it from here, and then you guys can speak from there, and I'll make sure you get it, okay? Good to see y'all here today, okay? Proclamation, Board of County Commissioners, Manatee County, Florida, whereas, each year the Federal Emergency Management Agency promotes National Preparedness Month as an effort to strengthen the country's preparedness capabilities for natural hazards or terrorist attacks. And whereas, since September 11, 2001, the US government has taken steps to encourage all citizens to make their own survival preparations. And whereas, Manatee County residents can take actions to become prepared to respond and recover from any natural or man-made hazard, no matter how big or small. The more people who are prepared, the quicker our community will recover. And whereas, first responders may not always be able to reach residents as quickly after an event, and the most important step to take is to be self-sufficient for a minimum of seven days. And whereas, Manatee County encourages all residents, visitors, and business owners to understand the threat of natural and man-made hazards and to undertake preparedness measures to protect lives, welfare, and property. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that September 2020 shall be known, designated, and set aside as National Preparedness Month in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 25th day of August 2020. All right. Good to see you, Chief Lichhour.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners, Administration. Thank you for the proclamation. I'm Steve Lichhour, the Chief Emergency Management. Behind me is Public Safety Director Sauer, our leader. With me today is our Planning Section Manager, Nicole Knapp. And throughout this 2020 season, I have Tom Kitchen, who is in charge of operations, Tristan Morath, which you see his reports every day, situational awareness, and Matt Myers, in charge of human needs. Not today is our Fiscal and Admin Person, Candy Kelly, and on a very deserved leave is Joe Richmond running logistics. So, on behalf of Emergency Management, I think we all would agree, this is a bumper year of everything going on, and we appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director, did you want to say anything?
He gets plenty of opportunities to speak, right? We all know how important this is. None of us can turn on the news without seeing what's going on in Louisiana and Texas. And, you know, we know the drill. We know we have to be prepared, so thank you very much. And next is adoption of proclamation designating September 11, 2020 as Tribute to Heroes Day in Manatee County. Carol, you look like you got some very, very well-dressed heroes behind you, willing to...
Best ever.
...to accept this proclamation. So, please come forward.
Hey. This was a rough day for everybody, but I also, our son was, worked for Morgan Stanley. It was his first week, and he was supposed to be in that building, and for some reason, some of the trainees went downtown. So, we didn't know till noon that he wasn't in that building. So, it was a rough day for all of us. My husband had to cancel his surgeries. He was too upset, so we will never forget this day. So, whereas, on September 11, 2001, the United States suffered and endured one of the most horrific acts in its history, the attack upon our homeland by terrorists who hijacked four jetliners to execute multiple homicide bombing attacks of great evil. And whereas, the American people wish to remember and honor the victims lost in this tragedy with courage, strength, and dignity. And whereas, September 11, 2001 proved to the world that heroes come in all shapes and sizes, heroes are the people sitting by you today, those who have suffered and gave selfishly and contributed to the strength of our country, and those who responded without hesitation and are ready to respond again whenever and wherever they are needed. And whereas, firefighters, law enforcement, and emergency medical services personnel are highly trained public services servants who work under demanding and dangerous conditions, and the courage and unselfish acts of these public servants proved again that day that our country is truly the land of the free and the home of the brave. And whereas, for many years to come, when our children stand with their hands over their hearts and pledge allegiance to the United States, they will more clearly understand that as one nation under God, the United States is indivisible, a country unable to be divided by tragedy. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County that September 11, 2020 shall be known, designated, and set aside as Tribute to Heroes Day in Manatee County, Florida, and the Board urges all citizens to remember those lost but not forgotten on September 11, and to pray for the families and friends of those who died, adopted with a quorum presented and voting this 25th day of August 2020, signed by our Chair, Betsy Banack.
I'm in the cone of silence, so I guess I can take my mask off. I'm Lee Whitehurst. I'm the President, Manatee County Fire Chiefs Association. It's a privilege to be here today representing all of our first responders in Manatee County. And includes law enforcement, and includes public safety as well as the fire service. We've been doing this for a lot of years. You have been doing this a lot of years for us with a proclamation for as long as 40 years as I can remember. It started off with before 9/11 occurred, our fallen firefighters service that we would have at the courthouse, and you always would recognize, of course, Fire Prevention Week in October along with that. That was 149 years ago that the Great Chicago Fire occurred, which is where Fire Prevention Week comes from. But now we have 9/11 to respect and honor, and so we've moved it into this time of the year. And, you know, for the past 18 years now, your proclamations have recognized and honored such. Tom Hennessy was our Regional Chairman of the 9/11 Committee. He's here today. Richie Evers is behind me, who was at 9/11 on that fateful day, and other fire service and law enforcement and public safety representatives. I just wanted to extend again our thanks to this board for recognizing this each and every year. This year, our 9/11 service is going to be a little different with the atmosphere of COVID-19. We're working with MTV in order to hopefully televise that live, but we're not going to have it open to the public this time. But all the players will be there, and all of the routines that you usually see during the 9/11 service will occur. But we hope that you're able to tune in or watch the rebroadcast of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your service and for continuing to come and join with us on this day to remember, always to remember. All right. And then our last, but certainly not least, the reason that we have heroes, the reason that we do everything, Constitution Week. So, this is adoption of proclamation designating September 17 through 23, 2020, as Constitution Week in Manatee County. Commissioner Servia.
Yes, thank you. Our constitution, as we know, is the framework for our federal government and perhaps the most magnificent piece of American history. So, it is my honor to read this proclamation. Whereas, on September 17, 2020, marks the 233rd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas, public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that September 17 through 23, 2020, shall be designated and set aside as Constitution Week in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 25th day of August 2020, signed by our Chairman, Betsy Banack. Thank you.
Thank you, Misty, for reading that. Okay, we're going to go ahead and go to the port agenda, which was a nine o'clock time certain. I just want to make sure we got all the folks that were here to get proclamations out of the room. So, I'll go ahead and turn it over to our Port Chair, Commissioner Trace.
Call the port meeting to order. Would like to start off with public comments. Have one person signed up, Glenn Jubelinis. Are you here, or is he on the...
He's here.
He's here. I saw him when I came in.
Glenn?
And while we're waiting for Glenn to come forward, I'd just like to thank the staff at the port, let people know we've not had to lay anybody off, that we've had complete safety. We've redone our protocols on how you come in completely safely, and we've stayed working efficiently for y'all. Glenn?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Glenn Jubelinis, for the record. Manatee County, property owner, taxpayer, voter. So, I want to bring up some items on the Port Authority that I've been speaking about for probably five years. One is the, you know, I was looking at the agenda today, and, you know, we pay $175,000 every month to FPNL. The Port Authority has several hundred thousand square feet of solar roof available. To date, not one panel. We need to move in more positive direction for sustainability out at the port. There are other ports around this country that have solar panels. So, that's my spin on that. We should move in that direction. The second thing I want to talk about, oh, and God is green, so he's for solar panels too, are the contracts. The last time I called in on my public comment, the contract for the lobbyist. I just want to bring up a few points. One, I asked the Port Authority Manager to provide information of the PFRs that went out, or the information to hire the new lobbyist. I've yet to hear anything from Carlos, so I don't know where that request went, but I believe the public needs to know. And for the lobbyist just to show up and take the contract, I mean, that did not look very above board to the public, and I don't think it was right. I mean, if we're going to spend money on a lobbyist, then you should put it out there. He probably, at the end of the day, would have gotten the position, but it was just the route that you took that was deceitful. And as a taxpayer, I think we can be a little more above board about it. And the second thing I wanted to talk about, if this lobbyist was so great, why didn't we have him before?
That's a good question.
Why didn't we have him before? If he's the best thing since sliced bread, and we kept renewing the old contract time and time again, and this guy was sitting in the wings until apparently the attorney that had it moved over to his firm, then we moved the contract. I just did not like the way it went down. I think we can do a better job. And the last thing I want to say is about the taxes. Back in 215, Del Monte split on the property taxes in a glitch of the tax appraiser, but again, the taxpayers got cheated out of $25,000 for two years of... again, the taxpayers got cheated out of $25,000 for two years in a row. It should have been your job to bring it up to Del Monte, either put that money in escrow or go back to the tax collector and say, why are you exempting a million and five worth of buildings on someone that's making hundreds of millions of dollars a year? I think that should have been straightened out, was pushed under the rug, never be heard about again. I'll see you back for future gen item. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Anybody else from the public wish to speak on public comment right now? Seeing no one come forward, closed public comment. Vanessa?
Yes, ma'am, I just want to respond to some of the allegations that I just heard. You know, I think that Mr. Jubelina does a great job in trying to keep things honest at the county and the port. However, maybe I missed something, but I'm not sure what he meant by, I think, I guess he meant Carlos, being deceitful about the, he's got a lot of questions on the lobbyist. Was something done under the table that I'm not aware of? I mean, I can tell you the gentleman that I know, Carlos would not do anything deceitful. I know I'm a little bit sensitive about the port, because we all love the port, all of us that are sitting here. And I think our Chairman has done a great job this year as Chairman of the port. And I know that when I was Chairman for three years, nothing went on that wasn't discussed with me that I'm aware of. So I just, I think we need to be a little bit more careful and show a little bit of respect, because I don't know that saying the word deceitful is justified. I just have an issue with that. So perhaps Glenn can meet with me, or send me an email on what it is he thinks that took place, because I'm lost. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Vanessa. Carol?
Yeah, I gotta say something. I was also Chair for three years before that, and everything's been pretty much on the up and up. Never heard, you know, sometimes people just have to say that even though it's not true. So, but I'd like to ask Carlos, what ports have solar panels, that run by solar panels? I know there are a few.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. There are a few. It's really, you know, an opportunity to, let's say, go greener. However, there's a heavy cost associated with that, that is very long-term payback. We are looking at that. We always look at renewable energy opportunities. And so, but we need to do it at a time that, you know, with cost recoveries that the customer's going to afford. We don't want to chase those to other ports.
Because we are a landlord port.
We are a landlord.
We don't own, we own the land, we don't own any of the businesses on there, so that would be an investment that they need to make, and that would have probably be in your negotiations that you would require it, correct?
Correct. And it would be, it would be, you know, something that, again, we want to remain competitive, we want to remain green. You know, we make steps towards making the port as environmentally friendly as possible at all times. And so the panels, you know, at this juncture, need to be considered vis-à-vis what the return is.
Right, I was going to ask that, because. Del Monte is one of our big customers.
Correct.
And everything is refrigerated, and everything's plugged in with all the semis there, because we don't have enough room in our warehouse, they move them into the trucks and they move out. Who pays the electric bill, and what's our return on investment? I mean, do we pass it off to the tenant?
It's a variety. We pass it on to the tenant, the electric bill.
Thank you.
Because it's part of the cost recovery.
Right.
The port is, you know, is very profitable financially. And so expenses such as electricity are recovered by the port and billed to the user.
And we own three buildings on, I think, on the port. We own the, oh, the house.
Yeah, we own.
What's it called? We own the big building, we own the old, where your offices are.
Correct.
And we own the.
We own the refrigerated building, we're the landlord. So we take in the tenants, such as Del Monte. The tenant's free to go, and however, the tenants are making significant investments, like Del Monte is in the buildings, and we partner to develop the buildings and keep them up to speed within terms of making them as efficient as possible.
Like Kinder Morgan just spent tons of money, correct? And also Racetrack?
Racetrack, you know, the essentially Transmontane, which is a fuel farm at the port. And so we have to remain competitive with the ports.
Baby Steps, I think maybe our building, their administrative building. You know, right now, during these economic times, we're doing okay, because we didn't get into the cruise business, so we're, we have our head above water. I think it's something that we could look at, but I don't think we should be passing any extra costs off to anybody right now. But I wouldn't mind you at least looking, like you said, Baby Steps, maybe starting with our administrative building that we have our meetings at in the future. But again, as far as the lobbyists, I didn't even know that the lobbyist was on the agenda till they came, you know, that I saw it on the agenda. And that's how it's, you know, they go up to Tallahassee, they know which ones that works, they know which ones are interested in coming. And I assume the one that we had, I know the one we had, wasn't producing like we wanted. And we gave them a chance last year, so this is not like it just happened overnight. So Glenn, like you said, you can always pick up the phone and call us, you sure sent us enough hateful email, but you could also call us and we could get it worked out on the phone, and then we wouldn't have to go through all this. But anyway, I just wanted to know, the more money, you know, our vendors pay to keep us afloat. We're a landlord port. We just own the land and the buildings, but they pay to retrofit them for their businesses.
And I may, may, Commissioners, that they're also free to leave at any time. So these are businesses at risk. All of our revenue is at risk. And since we do not collect any tax dollars, like the Port of Tampa gets 11 million a year from the taxpayer.
Right.
At least the Manatee County taxpayer is not footing any of the expenses of the port, but they do fortunately, and I think it's a great thing, benefit from the employment, as well as the taxes that some of the leases at the port pay the county.
When I was Chair, Del Monte was, their contract was up, and they were being courted by other ports in Florida heavily.
Heavily.
And we almost lost them.
Yes.
So we had, this is a business, this is not, nothing to mess around with.
And exactly, and along with that loss would have been the jobs.
Right.
You know, not just the jobs, the employment that the county benefits from.
Thank you.
Betsy?
Yeah, and obviously this, we're talking about warehouse modernization is on this agenda, but in regards to the solar panels, as we know, solar panels are being introduced by FPNL in a huge way, because it's making economic sense. And I believe the same will be true at the port. If it makes economic sense for us to install solar panels to lower our cost of energy, then I believe it'll be done. And, you know, when we talk about investment in the port, our number one partner is FDOT. So I take a little bit exception to the idea that no taxpayers' money are invested. Well, DOT gets their money from taxpayers throughout the state, not just Manatee County, but they are investing, and I think that they're, that we should look at any energy savings that we can, certainly. I would think that DOT would require, anytime we build something, that we have an analysis of the best way to produce energy. And if that in fact is through solar panels, I would bet we're going to put solar panels on the building, but we don't do it just because it's the right thing to do. We do it because it makes economic sense. Does that, do you agree with that?
We do. It has to make economic sense, and whatever referring to Commissioner is really ad valorem taxes.
Yeah.
You know, property taxes. And we want to make sure that Manatee County gets its fair share of state taxes, for sure.
Absolutely.
And so we look at every opportunity to increase efficiency. And FBL is, you know, we're one of their largest customers.
Sure.
You know, paying over a million dollars a year to keep that fruit, those fruits and vegetables, you know, fresh and in the cold chain, take them to the store, so you'll buy them. And so from that perspective, we want to do everything possible.
Yeah.
That FBL, you know, as a partner, would work with us to do.
Yeah, and it's very different than putting it on a building per se, when you have that huge, huge load, energy load that is required for the refrigeration, and we have to have backup to that load. We cannot let that refrigeration go down. So it isn't, it isn't a simple decision, but certainly I believe that it needs to be looked at. If it makes sense, it'll be installed. It won't be because someone comes to every single meeting and tells us that it needs to happen, it has to make economic sense. I also wanted to address the lobbyist. You know, I heard Commissioners say, yeah, why haven't we done this before? Well, we bring it up every single year. And that Commissioner was actually Chair of the port. If that's what she wanted, she probably could have brought it forward. But the reality is, the reality is, the lobbyist was with our attorney, it was with our firm, and that's the way that we had debated, I believe, on a yearly basis, we talk about this. And we've chosen the lobbyist that we've chosen, we chose to go a different way. That recommendation came, I believe, from Dave Sanford to do that. So I know, Vanessa, I just, you did call out, yeah, well, I don't, you said that. So I was hoping maybe you'd engage in that, and I know what you're going to.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
So I think that, I think it was totally done above board. I think that it was done with a recommendation from Dave Sanford that we have a change. I believe that change was supported unanimously by this Port Authority. So I don't, I agree that there was nothing done in secret, that this was a discussed item, and that we all agreed that, yeah, it's time to make a change. So I just wanted to say that, because I know people love to come here and stir up stuff. Glenn loves to come and stir up stuff, and maybe that's the way government should be, we should all get stirred up. But we got to set the record straight, so that's what I'm attempting to do.
And I want to have Vanessa comment, and then we're going to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say that, you know, I said what I did only because of conversation that had been had when I was Chair. So not about the lobbyists that we selected and ended up going with, but there were issues at the time, and it was discussed, I believe it was discussed with all of you, actually. So I am excited about the new lobbyist, I think it's a step in the right direction for the port at this time. There was no reflection, I don't think I said anything about anyone on this Board particularly, but, you know, I just think that sometimes we look back and say, maybe we should have done it sooner. And I think that that's a conversation that Carlos and I have actually had, and Dave Sanford, and we all agree that, you know, we're so much better, in so much better shape right now than we've been in the past with our lobbyists. So that's what I meant. But thank you for calling me out, Madam Chair. I always expect it.
Anytime, I'm sure. Mickey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make the point that your lobbyists are more often than not associated with a law firm, oftentimes they are lawyers, and your procurement code exempts the hiring of outside counsel from the competitive bid process. So for example, when I retain an outside lawyer to assist us, I am not required to go through a competitive bid process. It is the type of service that is unique and professional in nature, and so most of your local government purchasing codes, to include this government, exempt the hiring of outside counsel from the competitive process. I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you, Mickey. We're going to move on. Carlos, you have anything to say about the consent agenda items?
No, Madam Chair, we just, we can have you consider approval of the consent agenda.
Okay. With pleasure, the Board. A move approval? I have a motion, I have a motion by Commissioner Banack, seconded by Commissioner Bellamy. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion passes. The personal policy revision?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. It's been a while that we have been working on this. We wanted to align the port's personnel policy with the county's personnel policy to facilitate any decisions or actions that you might all want to consider, so you didn't have to wear, you know, a different, totally different hat on something that is really a common issue, both for the county and for the port. As such, then I would like Jennifer maybe perhaps to review some of the highlights, some of the points, key points. But essentially what we have done is we have harmonized the county and the port essentially into one policy.
Good morning. The Port Manatee Personnel Manual was adopted, the latest version of it was adopted in 2005. So it was very much in need of an update. And that update was really to do three functions, one of which Carlos has just explained, which was to bring it in line with Manatee County policies, to the extent that it was applicable. The next was to reflect the changes that have occurred in the law during that time. And the third purpose was really to make a more comprehensive manual and cover some topics that previously had not been covered. There was no changes to the benefits, you know, no changes in like a leave accrual or holidays or any of that. Some examples of the changes include clarification to the process in both hiring and promotions, revision of the military leave policy in accordance with state and federal law, revisions to the sexual harassment policy to address all illegal discrimination or harassment, revision of the tobacco use policy to address current changes. Also, there were inclusions of sections for communicable diseases, intellectual property, employee communications with law firms and media relations. Those topics had not previously been covered, so those were incorporated as well. There was removal of sections dealing with labor management relations that were not applicable, revision of the employee complaint procedure. And that was done to clarify the steps and to demonstrate that it ends with the executive director's review, and to provide for name clearing hearings in accordance with liberty interests, and to codify the employee recognition program. So those are like nine basic changes that were done in there. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended personnel policies.
Aye, we have a motion by Commissioner Whitmore, seconded by Commissioner Servia. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion passes. All right. Port security access control upgrade.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. As a result of the increased business, as a result of the increased activity at the port, we need to make the port's gates larger. The front door is not big enough anymore. We need to make it bigger so we can get a higher flow of business, both in and out. You know, to the shipping industry, a speed from door to doors, you know, with Amazon and so on and other, is essential. You want to see your things faster, and you cannot have the port be the funnel that restricts the flow. And this agenda item, with your consideration, would go towards making sure that we keep up in terms of the speed and velocity to market to and from the port.
Any discussion? Not? With pleasure, the Board. Move approval?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Banack, seconded by Commissioner Servia. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion passes. And last but not least, resolution for the fiscal year, Manatee County Port Authority budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Once again, we bring you next year's, next fiscal year's budget for the port. As you know, the port, like the county, is overseen financially by the Clerk's Office and the Financial Department, so we have a Finance Director, the county has a Finance Director, and we manage those daily operations and finance with the oversight of the county, sorry, of the Clerk's Finance Department. We have today a budget that reflects what's going on in the economy. The news is good. As you heard before, certain ports are, pardon the pun, way underwater. Their cruise industry has affected them, you know, very, very hard. They're letting, having to let go of people throughout the state of Florida. It's very sad, but a reflection that, you know, you can't put all your eggs in one basket. So these ports, you know, are making changes. We fortunately don't have to, and in fact, the port continues to look, or the tenants of the port continue to hire people and look for people. So it's very good news in that regard, and our budget reflects that. Denise Stufelbein, our Director of Finance, is going to be presenting the budget to you for your consideration.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Denise Stufelbein, Port Manatee. Before I begin with our proposed 2021 budget, I wanted to discuss the COVID-19 impacts on our revenues for this year. We have experienced a decrease that can be attributed directly to COVID-19. However, we are very fortunate. We've been able to maintain business as usual for the most part. Our August this month has been really strong, and September's schedule looks busy as far as the vessel scheduling. But we are expecting about a $2 million decrease over last year's revenue, yet we're still going to finish. going to finish the year strong, considering. So for our 2021 budget, I have a short video followed by just a few slides. The video was Abby Lindikamp's idea. This is our 50-year anniversary. So we take a look 50 years ago to today, and Caitlin Mullen in our Communications Department, she's here, if you can raise your hand, Caitlin, she did the video. She did a fantastic job. So Ray, if you'll pick that off. So as you saw, we have had many changes in 15 years. Now we'll move to the, the slide portion. It's just a few slides, followed by one more video. So we are proposing $17.3 million in operating revenue with nearly 60% budgeted, or operating revenue, 60% for waterborne revenue. So I thought what I would do to explain waterborne revenue, instead of just putting a figure on the screen, is go through our top five customers and tell you what they bring to Port Manatee. So we'll start with TransMontane. October through July, 173 ship calls with 7.7 million barrels of petroleum. So this includes your gasoline, premium gasoline. It comes into Port Manatee, and then it's trucked to 11 counties in the Southwest and Central Florida. It goes to Racetrack, Wawa, Speedway, 7-Eleven, and that's just to name a few. Martin Marietta, they import crushed granite and limestone. It comes in from Nova Scotia and the Bahamas. For Martin Marietta, the granite and the limestone is used basically for road constructions. So they have customers throughout Florida. It comes in to Port Manatee, and then it's trucked out. Rural direct shipping, I think it would be easier to tell you what they don't import from Mexico. This is truly a success story. WDS's first shipment in late 2014 had 13 containers with fruits and vegetables. Fast forward to July, one vessel, 427 containers, with everything from limes to corn chips, dryers, and refrigerators. Del Monte Fresh Produce, they have had a weekly service, it now just comes from Costa Rica, for over 30 years. They've never missed a sailing. They have bananas, pineapples, avocados, and melons when they're in season, from Port Manatee. The fruits and vegetables are trucked to grocery chains, with Costco and Walmart being their largest customer. And G2 Aero Terminals, those shipments come in from Brazil, include lumber, plywood, wood pulp, and aluminum. Most of the lumber is distributed to Lowe's and Home Depot distribution centers. The wood pulp and, well, wood pulp is used for paper towels and toilet paper. And the aluminum is used in various industries. They have many main customers from Florida to New York. So what do these companies have in common? And the answer is not much, and that is a good thing, because it's our goal to diversify, and we've been pretty successful at that. The next revenue item is, going the wrong way, is our lease revenue. We have many tenants on the port with leases from five years to 50 years. And as far away as 50 years sound, we had one tenant renew this year, a 50-year lease, and next year, we have another tenant that will renew a 50-year lease. Storage revenue, you might have noticed in the video, there is cargo all throughout the port. Not all cargo goes from ship to store, so the cargo that stays on the port generates storage revenue. Our security revenue, these are fees assessed to recover the cost of the port's facility security plan as mandated by U.S. Customs. So our other revenue, we have state-certified scales, seven miles of track, and a few other revenue line items, and we're budgeting 1.4 million for that. Moving on to our operating expenses, we are proposing $10 million in operating expenses. Six and a half million is for salaries and benefits. We have 71 full-time employees, nine part-time employees, no, back that up, 71 full-time, eight part-time employees, and this budget does include one new position. It's in the maintenance department, a general maintenance position. And it also includes a 2.5% increase. I almost said 2.5 million merit increase, but we wish. Okay, utilities, I, Carlos commented on it, and I need to also. We have met, myself personally, along with the Director of Maintenance, with many companies that offer the solar panels and various other, other green items. FPL being the most recent one, it is very cost prohibitive. It's a lot of money upfront, the payback is 20, 25 years. But what we've done to kind of keep the utilities costs down, I should correct something, we have seven warehouses, seven or eight warehouses that we own. So when the roofs go, it's on the port to replace those roofs. And we've been very, very fortunate with FDOT. We've got grant money. We're in the process of replacing four or five roofs. They're old, and so they're black roofs, and we're replacing them with white roofs to help bring down the cost. And we have seen a reduction in, in the cost in the electric bill. The other items, contracted services, you're talking about your pest control, your electricians, attorney fees, professional fees, these are just all costs of running the port. We did increase the budget in maintenance so that we are able to keep up with our maintenance plan. Okay, I'm, and then finally, we have travel and promotions. Everything's been on hold this year, so we're hoping that everything gets back to normal for 2021. So we did budget with that hope. Moving on to our capital improvement plan, we have many projects that are either going to commence or finish in 2021, so I just included those projects. In the back of your agenda books, I think it was requested last meeting, that we provide a map of the projects, and, and they have been added. So we have $21.2 million in capital improvements for next year. All of them are funded 75% or 50% by FDOT or Homeland Security. So the port's cost on $21.2 million is $7.5 million. The, we have a video to show the, the projects, which is much better than the map. It gives a great visual, and that was also done by Caitlin Mullen. Do I need to get rid of that?
Port Manatee is a leading economic engine and a diverse global gateway. The following projects will enhance the port's terminals, industrial property, roads, and more. The goal is to enhance the port's business lines, support jobs, trade, and commerce. The quality of the port's roads has been a challenge for portgoers. The port road improvement project will involve asphalt repair and design. Road upgrades will enhance the safety of truckers, employees, and portgoers. Cost: $4,060,000. Security is a top priority at Port Manatee. Our efforts to enhance the safety and security of the port is critical. Security upgrades include updating and expanding the port's video system, replace outdated fencing, and upgrade equipment and more. Cost: $1,084,120. As the port continues to grow, so does our truck traffic. Northgate expansion will double our exit lanes from two to four. This will cut back on exiting traffic and include software upgrades in the system. Southgate will be transformed into a full-service complex with four configurable lanes and capabilities for handling registered, temporary, and visitor transactions, as well as more software upgrades. Cost: $1,900,000. An additional 4.4 acres will be paved near the already 10-acre container yard. This will allow us to store more containers for transporting before they make it to the final destination. This project includes lighting and installing refrigerator plugs. Cost: $8,075,000. Ship sizes have increased since the port opened 50 years ago. Extending berth four will allow two vessels to use berth four and five. More ships equal more money and cargo. Cost: $40 million. Our 50-year-old berth needs to be upgraded and repaired to improve safety standards and accommodate larger ships. Berth six, seven, eight, and 10. Cost: $3,500,000. Our railroads provide us direct cargo access to the national rail system, and they play an important part, helping us move cargo. The railroad track rebuild will consist of new railroad ties, tie plates, bolts, tie anchors, spikes, and heavier rail.
I forgot to mention that the table in the PowerPoint did not include the road improvement project, because it is scheduled to be completed next month. But we wanted to include it in the video, because the roads were such a huge issue at the port for many, many years, and wanted to show a completed road. It's, it's a big difference. So, any questions?
Thank you. Just want to say what a tremendous job presentation everybody did. Betsy?
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to say also, Denise, you and Caitlin did a fabulous job. Caitlin, probably loving this job. It's so much fun to be involved in such a growing, exciting, I just, I think of myself as a young person, about how much fun it would be to be involved in something that is such a positive for this community and growing, and doing a great job. So I also want to thank Carlos. As I look at this capital improvement plan, and I look at what we're able to do now by being fiscally responsible for so many years, to have the funds, to have the partnership with DOT, to be able to make these investments, it's amazing. It doesn't happen overnight. You had to plan long. You had to keep those reserves to be able to do these major projects. So I want to say thank you for doing that. It's really important for us to make these investments now, because even though we know we're probably going to go into a little bit of a slowdown, so I appreciated that, I was thinking about what the state is experiencing right now, what the state of Florida, we know, as they go through their budget conference and they look at the revenues, they're looking at some real, you know, reductions in revenues. But the state has an $8 billion reserve, so they're able to keep things whole. And I think that's really important as well, that we, we're fortunate, we have them as a partner. But I wanted to ask you, so when you put this budget together, is that something that you projected, possibly a slowdown in investment from the state level, or do you think they're going to be able to continue at the level that we've had? And I don't know who I'm asking that question, either one of you.
I think that the state, if I may, Denise?
Yes.
I think the state will continue to fund us, and these, these investments that they're making are in recognition that, of the employment levels that the ports create for the entire state of Florida. Not too many counties have a port, we're one of the lucky few, because it adds that additional employment. And the thing, FDOT, which recently, we were on the call on a weekly basis, they were monitoring situation on the ports, and also from the perspective that all of the fuel that Florida consumes comes through the ports. And on any, let's say hurricane event or weather event, the most interested party in making sure ports are open and funded is the governor. The particular issue here is that the fuel needs to flow. And during many prior hurricanes, at 5 o'clock, the governor would get on the phone with all the port directors and say, how's the fuel? Learning from prior lessons, that one of the most critical infrastructures we provide to you is to make sure that the gas stations have fuel, and that you're able to move after and pre, you know, hurricane events. So that, I think that will continue. To answer, I think, to answer your question.
So you didn't see, you didn't see any reduction in revenues moving forward, were able to program pretty much at a same level of investment, you think?
For the grants?
Yes.
Yes. We've already, well, today approved, it's a project that goes into effect, well, today, after today's meeting, then we can commence once we get the agreement back from FDOT. But we've already submitted for 2021, and there is no talk about that amount being decreased.
Decreased, okay, great.
So far, so good.
Okay, thank you.
Carol?
Denise, I can remember our finance person left unexpectedly, and maybe seven days later, you had to present your first budget. you had to present your first budget to the board. And of course, it was during the recession.
Yes.
So you gave really, really nice presentation, and I miss your levity because usually you have something. I was waiting for something today, but I guess we're getting a little bit more professional. I guess Carlos made you do it, but I missed it.
Thank you.
So consider it next year.
Okay.
We need a little levity in our world, honestly, Carlos. But I, I, I remember at one point, we put all our eggs in one basket, just like you said, and we've all learned for us that we're there. It was rough. I think our reserves were down to 400,000, 500,000?
800.
800, okay. And now they are at almost five, 4 million?
Well, no, they're 20 million. The reserves are 20 million.
Reserve for contingency.
Well, that's the mandated.
Oh, so they're at 20 million?
They're at 20 million.
Oh, my God. Okay.
Yes.
I remember we stopped the train. We had gotten a grant for two trains. So we actually rented one out, correct? Or we were going to.
We were going to. We did not.
Yeah. At the end, we did not.
And Logistech, Madeline from Canada, are we, do we own those two cranes now?
We've always owned them.
Well, we were, there was, they gave us the money because during the recession, we could not afford them, and we had to pay them.
Right. They operate the cranes, and we are paying, we have a loan.
So we still haven't paid off yet?
They are not.
I just have a question, why haven't we?
It was a 15-year loan that we got, and there's two cranes. One is paid off in 2024, and one is paid off in 2025. So it's nearing.
All right. And Arthur Savage, I think I would ask that you explain a little bit, Arthur Savage, we went to Ebor.
Yes.
To meet with him one day, but he's our concierge service for the ships. And a lot of public doesn't, doesn't know all the people it takes to bring a ship in. And he has a fascinating history because he actually helps the Port of Tampa, and his family's been doing this for many generations. And I would like somebody just to explain what that company does.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. The ship agents, as they're known, are essentially, as you mentioned, concierge contacts for the ships. Whatever the ship needs, whether it's fuel, might be medical assistance, might be food and services, throughout the world, these agents provide that. They're ship agents. And so Arthur Savage and Arthur Savage Company, which has been around for many, many years, provides that service. There are others who do it too, but they're the best known. And so it's an essential part of any port operations. The ship owners contract with the services to make sure that they get the supplies they need when they stop at any port.
It's really fascinating, all the logistics that take place. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. A lot of public doesn't realize that they just, they think they go, I mean, even the linemen, correct?
Correct. We handle the line handler, the linesman, as a service.
Right.
But the port is, you're right, Commissioner, the port is open 24/7. You know, Christmas, New Year's, every holiday. We do not want to impede anyone from entering or exiting the port to do business. And if they're there to do business, the port remains open. And so as such, those agents play, and Arthur Savage plays a critical part in the functioning of the port.
Thank you.
Vanessa?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Denise, you know, I, I too remember when you gave your first presentation. And, and I got to tell you, in my years of, of being able to work with you, you have always been so professional and on top of everything. I don't know how you've managed to do that truly. But I wanted to remind the board that I believe it was last year, a year before, I bet Steve Johnson remembers, we asked the port to check to see if anything happened and we lost some of our revenue, how would we be able to move forward? And as I recall, you guys did that, and the report came back, and, and it was with flying colors that we would.
Correct. And, and that was in 2018.
Okay. I knew it was somewhere around there because I, I think at the time I was still chair. But you know, here we are. Who would have thought that we'd come in today, you know, with a pandemic, and, and you're looking at what we might need to do? And, and basically, I've, I've been really happy that you've been at the helm on finances because I knew we were in good hands. And now I look at the budget that you've presented, and we're still moving forward with the improvements that need to be made so that we can increase our business. We're kind of almost, I know we were getting to the point where we were almost stuck because we were having to really maneuver with ships trying to get in and out of the port. So I'm excited with the budget. I think that you are to be commended for, you're a tough cookie. You hold on to the money, and that's what we need. You know, that is exactly what we need. So I'm excited that we, we are spending some of the reserves that we have to move forward to get things done for the port, which increases our business. From a business standpoint, you've done a fantastic job. And I just appreciate you, and I wanted, I wanted you to know that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Carol? Where on the budget does it show that additional reserves? Where, why am I missing it?
You'll see it in the statements from the clerk's office, but we don't budget the reserves because it changes.
But shouldn't you have it in your, I mean, we, in our budgets at the county, our reserves, we know where they are. They're a line item. I'm just asking, because I don't see it except for the 4.4 million.
Yeah. No, I just have never budgeted the reserves, to be honest with you. I, I mean, I think.
I think the public and me and port authority would like to know, I, because when you said 20 million, it's like, okay, where in this budget does it show that? Because that's, to me, would be more transparent.
Right.
Maybe we haven't done it that way. I know at the county level, Sherry, do we do that? Everything's transparent, and it's, you know, and we always, I mean, it would just be cleaner to me, maybe in the future, or?
Yeah. We can add just a line item that shows the reserves as of, you know, we present in August, we'll show it as of July 31st.
And do you have, like, we do unrestricted reserves and restricted?
The unrestricted, or the restricted is the 4 million.
Okay.
And I think that's what, yeah.
I think we need to see that.
Okay. We, we can add it very easily.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Okay, am I there? Okay, there we go. Yeah, I think Carlos and Denise, great job on the budget. I know, you know, we talked a lot over the last several years about the port was getting pretty tired, the infrastructure was getting pretty torn up because of the good job you guys have all done getting more business to come in. We know those trucks are very heavy, and I think, you know, you know, the fact that we're now going to sit there and start spending some of the, these 20 million, and, and, you know, I guess we, we need to really acknowledge Keith at FDOT, along with, you know, Congressman Buchanan, if I could say that word, and, you know, the people up in the Army Corps of Engineers. And I know we have a lot of other great projects on the drawing board there that if we can get the funding, we can continue to grow the port. And I just, you know, again, I, I'm really excited because I think it's going to continue to grow and be a fabulous revenue source and a job generator, you know, for the county. And, you know, bless the Lord, that, you know, we didn't get into the cruise business like some of the other ports did that are just getting decimated right now. And I know we're going to be fighting the government to get, you know, they're going to be, having to keep those ports probably financially alive. And yet, as we, I think as Vanessa said, you know, we did that stress test several years ago on the port and thought, well, what happens if we lose a lot of revenue? And we, we were able to demonstrate that, you know, it was going to be not a problem. We could handle it. And we have very little debt out there, a debt coverage ratio on our bonds are, you know, over the top type of thing compared to what the covenants and the bond issues are. I think with the new lobbyist that we've brought in, from what, I don't know him that well, but his reputation is superior, and so I think he'll be successful in continuing to help us garner money from both the state and the federal government. And, you know, there's no reason why the port shouldn't continue to just keep zooming up with its revenue. And once we get these capital improvements done, you know, they should be good for, I don't know, 20, 25 years type of thing. And then we can look at other possibilities there as far as expanding the port and expanding the berths. So, you know, I take my hat off to you and your staff for the great job that you've done, and certainly look forward to seeing the success grow over the next five years. So good luck, and I think it's a great budget.
Thank you for mentioning Keith Robbins with FDOT. I meant to. He's watching. And we do appreciate everything he does.
Thank you, Keith.
Yes.
Carlos, before we make that motion.
No, when you're done, Madam Chair.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval on the budget?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Benak, second by Commissioner Servia. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion passes. Carlos, whatever comment, plus your director comments this time, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I want to add something else, that a port can experience a COVID-like event by the pure fact that all of the port's revenue is at risk. The key here is both to grow the port without losing customers and adding customers. That's the secret. Because without this recession, without a pandemic, with one fell swoop, somebody can come in and take two or three of our customers. It's happening throughout Florida ports.
Sure.
So part of the, you know, the success of the port has been its ability to retain and grow, which we're aggressively doing. We can't really sit, rest on our laurels and expect that other ports will not come after us. Ports in Alabama, ports in Mississippi, even some Florida ports might try to lure away some of those customers, or the customers will want to leave on their own. So that's really the success of this port, and has been in the ability to do that and to keep the customers happy and to go out and grow the business and keep it competitive. So from that perspective, I think we're in good shape in regard to the budget, and the reserve will be very happy to put the full reserves there. And as Commissioner Whitmore said earlier in the ball, is that at some point, we were not just at 800,000, we were literally underwater because we had a debt of 2. How many million, Denise?
Yeah, that's right. Forgot about that.
2.8 million. Really, we owed 2.8 million dollars. And at that time, when Commissioner Whitmore was here, you know, we had monthly meetings, weekly meetings with the county because the, you know, the port was expected to go under at any time. The port, the county would have to bail it out. But I think the, the port has done the turnaround. We're in solid ground, and so we're very happy to present this budget to you this year, which again reflects, I think, your efforts, your direction that you have given us to do whatever we need to do to keep the employment growing, to keep the port going, and I want to thank you for that support.
Are you done with your executive director comments also?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair.
Like to open this back up for public comment? Would anyone wish to speak? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close public comment. We have commissioner comments. Commissioner Johnson, do you have any?
No, none, none at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, Betsy? I, I just wanted to say to Steve, yeah, thanks for, I know that was something that you asked for, Steve, and I think that made a lot of sense to do that test. I remember you asking for it and, and us coming through it with flying colors. And again, just thank you for, Carlos, for everything that you're doing. This is always so exciting because it is a, much more of a private market-type approach that we have to take. It's not government. We are in competition. We understand that, and we have to be nimble. We have to be ready. We have to be able to provide. We have to show that our revenues exceed our expenses. We're able to do that. We're able to make a profit, unlike in government. We don't do that in government. We don't shoot to make a profit. But I think it really makes sense as we talk about growing the port and how that means for this community. It's, it's always exciting to think about how the port can grow and how it can serve our community by creating jobs. So I think you've done a wonderful job. Just thank you again for getting us through another year and look forward to the years to come.
Seeing no other comments, we'll close the port meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, I have a conference call that starts at 11 for about an hour, so I'll be stepping out of the meeting for that hour.
Okay.
But I'll be back as soon as it's over.
Okay. Well, we're going to take a break. I just only have one person signed up for future agenda, citizens' comments on future agenda, so I wanted to take them, and then we're going to take a break. So Glenn, are you here? I don't know.
He's in the other room. I just saw him.
Okay. Glenn, this is future agenda items, time for public comment. So if you want to come forward, Glenn, it's your opportunity to address the board on future agenda items.
Did you write a letter to apologize to Carlos? Maybe not.
He, no, well, I just saw him when I went to the ladies' room. I don't know.
Yeah. Thank you for your email.
For the record, Glenn Jabalina, taxpayer voter. First of all, I want to publicly apologize to Carlos on the lobbyist. I've been corrected by Mr. Palmer that he did not even have to put it out to bid, and he did. So thank you very much, Carlos, for that. You are doing a great job out there. So I was mistaken once again, and I'm trying to better myself. So maybe when I get done with my book from Trey Gowdy, I'll, I'll be nicer. I suggest everybody get it. It's great. Okay, so I just wanted to bring up, again, future agenda items. Perhaps we should consider a workshop for solar, not only for the port, but for the county as well. I heard a 25-year, year payback. That simply isn't the case. And I hear this time and time again that it's not cost-effective. I'll go back to what we get paid for our bonds. You know, we go out and get bonds, we get paid like a half a percent. If we can invest money with a higher percentage, we should look at it. I mean, if, if solar panels pay off in 15 years, 10 years, that's eight to 10% back on your money. You are not going to get that anywhere. And what the presentation also failed to mention that if you do put solar panels on a white roof, it will extend the life expectancy of that roof. Those are simple facts that, you know, I think we need to consider. The other thing I want to talk about is bonuses. You know, I went to the definition of bonus, and something in addition was expected or strictly due. Money or equivalent given to addition. Government payment to war veterans. Bonuses may be dangled as incentives. This is from Webster. The sum of money that is paid to a corporation exceeds the interest the royalties charged for granting the privilege of that bonus. All I am saying is, we need to negotiate tougher on any type of increased density on any future projects from the developers. They are not entitled to the bonuses without some type of consideration from the board. Okay, you want, you're, you're zoned for 200, you want 300? Make 50% affordable. If they're not willing to come to the table, then stick them with the 200. That you got zoned for, and if you don't want to negotiate how we're going to use those extra bonus units, then there's a failure of, of communication with this board. I think we can do a better job of that, and I think we should. I just want to talk about, oh, the port, by the way, just, just for your record, Port of Houston has renewable, Port of LA, Port of Long Beach, Seattle, New Haven is 100% renewable. So those are just a few ports that I can think of at the top of my head. I did want to bring up Governor DeSantis's, was that it? I thought I had 10 minutes. Okay. I'll probably call in. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna hang out, but you guys are doing a super job. Thank you so much. Get the book.
Thank you. And of course, we do, are available on these non, non-land use stays. We do have the availability to call in, and I understand we have someone who has called in today. John, you're, you're running the show back there for call-in, or, oh, excuse me. Please.
Yeah, we do have some calls, but I don't know if anyone has virtually raised their hand to address any issues. But again, we're taking public comment through phone and the Zoom application. METV can perhaps pull up the phone number and the meeting ID on your screen so it's easier?
Well, that's a great idea. Finally, we get that slide.
And once you're in the call, you'll just press star nine to virtually raise your hand. And Madam Chair, I do not see anyone with their hands raised at this time.
No one has their hand raised. Okay. All right. Well, then, I'm going to close public comment on future agenda items. We're going to take a 10-minute break and then come back to our agenda. So we'll be back in 10 minutes. We're recessed for 10 minutes. We're recessed for 10 minutes. All right, we're going to reconvene. We're going to move to item number 45, so that these folks can go back to work. Authorization for county staff and the county attorney's office to work with the East Manatee Fire Rescue District and the Mauckah City Fire Control District to begin the process of a merger of the two districts. And, okay, we have a motion?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, but I think they want to say a few things, but we'll go ahead and.
You know what they say.
Jake?
I brought the experts here, because this can get very convoluted real quick. But, you know, in the grand scheme of things, this was put out in the primary election for those residents of Mauckah to change their taxing authority to more align themselves with East Manatee Fire Rescue. There's a lot of other things that need to occur between now and 2021, including some legal matters with the county, as well as with the state legislature, to move the Mauckah City Fire Rescue Control District under an independent taxing district, East Manatee Fire Rescue. So, talking to the two chiefs that I do have with me today, they can answer any questions that you might have. They really feel more comfortable if the board gives the blessing that they move forward with all these blocks that have to get put together with us, as well as the state legislature. It's going to be a long process, that we do believe is going to move fairly smoothly, but it is a long process, and we don't want to start that process without the board's blessing.
Okay. Well, I don't know if either one of you guys want to talk, but I do want to say congratulations. We all know this makes, well, I think we mostly, all of us agree this makes a lot of sense going forward, and you were able to make it clear to the voters who gave support for this. I congratulate you on a great campaign, and able to make it clear to the voters why this was a good idea. I don't know if you want to say anything more, but I have all the faith and confidence in the world that you'll be able to get through these steps. We know it won't be easy, and you got to cross the Ts, dot the Is, but we know you guys are working together, so that's what's important.
Thank you very much. It has been a strenuous year, especially with COVID, and trying to get all of this done, and public meetings and so on. So, we're pleased with the outcome. It's going to be, I think, very, very huge for the taxpayers of the community. So, it's going to be a big savings for them. I want to thank this board for, over the years, all the support that you have given the Mauckah Fire District. Without your support, we wouldn't have been able to do any of the things that we've done in the past. So, we've got a year ahead of us. To get this planned, and with your support and your help, we can make it through this. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Carol? Just a question. Do you have Maggie as your legal?
Yes, she is.
Good, good, good. She's good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Chief, do you have any?
I don't want to get Danny's terms. That's for sure.
No.
So, it's been about a year, I think, since we addressed the board before about this concept, and a lot has happened, as Chief Caggiotti alluded to. We've been talking with Bill in the green room today, and looking forward, getting him and Maggie in touch, and all those little steps that Director Sauer was just talking about. But we're ready to start moving on some things that is going to take the entire year, you know, to get it to Tallahassee, and so forth and so on. But we're looking for that October 1 date, when that would change, which we'd have to come back before the board again for the last final act of dissolving the Mauckah District as a county dependent district, because the legislature has approved the merger. So, if there's any questions for me? Good morning.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion. I think Commissioner Baugh made the motion, I think Commissioner Whitmore seconded.
I did not.
Commissioner Whitmore made the motion, and Commissioner Servia seconded. Oh.
But I do have a comment.
All right. Vanessa?
Okay. I just want to say that it's been a real honor to work with both of you and Jake on this endeavor this past year. I'm looking forward to October. You know, it's unusual that citizens actually get a decrease in what they have to pay, and most in Mauckah will see that. And so, they get a decrease, plus they're going to see more activity as far as staffing, and we're going to have an ambulance out there, an actual ambulance in Mauckah. And I remember going to a meeting before, Jake, you were the director, I think. There's one or two commissioners sitting here that might recall it. I think, Betsy, you'll probably recall it, because we were running for office at the time. I'm sure Carol recalls it. She was there. There was a meeting held in Mauckah where they actually, the administrator had put in the budget to remove a paramedic that was out in Mauckah, because that's all they had, really. And so, it's come a long way. I'm looking forward to what is going to take place, and I'm just very proud of both of you with the jobs that you're doing, and the results that have come forward. So, thank you for all your hard work on this. Thank you.
Yeah, and I was talking during the break about how I had so much information on the history of the fire districts, and how they were set up. That history was actually provided by Joe McClash.
Joe McClash, yeah.
And he left it in the office, and I actually utilized a lot of the information, when, as you all know, I came forward with a recommendation that we look at mergers, and I'm, you know, certainly not the cause of this, but I certainly am supportive of it, that we're able to do this. You know, Manatee County is unusual, the fire districts being separate districts. You know, I understand not everybody understands that fact, but it is true that they are separate taxing districts, and that gives folks an opportunity to participate in those districts, have a voice, and I think they took advantage of that in this vote. So, I think it's going to be really good, as Vanessa said, for the taxpayers, they don't always get this opportunity to see the consolidation of government, but that's what's happening here. So, congratulations again, guys. I'm going to open this up for public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to make a comment on this motion? Which is basically just directing them to move forward to complete this process. All right. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close public comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, motion passes. All right. Thank you. Guys got a lot of work, but we'll know you get it done. Okay, at this point, I'm going to go back to the consent agenda. I'm going to open citizen comments on the consent agenda. Is there anyone that would like to address the board on any of the consent agenda items? Don't know if Glenn is still here. He wants to.
He said he was leaving.
He was leaving. He didn't sign up for any of them, so. And actually, just to clarify, it is the consent agenda where you can speak for up to 10 minutes. If you speak on three items, you get three minutes per item, and then that's all you get. It's not on future agenda items. I think he had asked for 10 minutes. Oh, he's here. And I was explaining to you, while you don't get 10 minutes on future, but you get it on consent if you speak on three separate consent agenda items.
I got it. Thank you so much, Betsy, for your clarification. So, I can talk about item 40, correct?
I don't know. Item 40, nope, item 40 is on the regular agenda.
Okay.
So, okay. Thank you. All right. Seeing no one come forward on the consent agenda, I'll close public comment. Carol?
Yeah, I went over, I take pride, I go through the entire agenda, every item, and I went over with Sheri yesterday. First of all, the tree trust fund, item number three on the consent. It seems like it always goes to Robinsons. I can't believe there's not another need for trees in Manatee County. I know, and I asked her, and there's only 16,000 in the account, but I wish we would look at other places, too. I mean, we can get grants for Robinson and stuff, but, you know, we wanted to do something on Cortez Road, on the mediums, or something, and other areas of the county, and we haven't been able to. So, just look at that for the future, please. It's nothing against Robinson. It's just I know there's a great need for trees in other places of the county. We used to have a robust fund. We don't anymore. And then, item number 16. We are spending, we are spending 500,000 for IT replacement, and that came out of our general reserves. And I'm bringing this to everybody's attention. This was the budget amendment, sorry. This came out of our reserves, and I got Jan here to verify it. So, you know, when we hear people come up, and we have all this money in reserves, this is something that, it came out of various departments, because I've asked Jan if you want to make comments, but there's three items that I went through that I think the public needs to know. So, that's 500,000, half a million dollars, to keep up with our IT department, and what they've done during this pandemic, and everything's gone virtual, really needs to be recognized. So, Sheri, is it okay if Jan makes a comment on that?
Yeah, I've spoken with Jan. She can.
So, just for clarification, Carol, we're actually on the budget amendment. We're not on item number 16.
I know. That's what I said after.
Item 15.
I said that after. I said budget amendment number eight.
Item number 15, and it's item number eight.
Eight.
Eight, right.
In the budget amendment. In the budget amendment.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nice to see you. County Attorney, Madam Administrator, Jan Brewer, Director of Financial Management. The $500,000 budget amendment has to do with technology. As we entered into this era that we're in right now, a lot of the computers where we normally had lives of four years have now been shortened to three. A lot of the programs, due to cybersecurity, due to increased program technology, we had to ramp up another level. As you know, we're going through the CARES Act, and any of those items that we can apply to the CARES Act, we will for that, but otherwise, but again, remember, it's reimbursable. We have to spend first and then get reimbursed, so.
And I had, I hadn't been able to get Zoom or GoTo meetings on my desktop. Come to find out, mine was an old one. It was like a 2013. So, I had to get upgraded, so I could be able to do that. So, that's just an example. Number 17, regarding the bid that we let out for the paving. We're letting out bids. We were going to use these vendors, and we have $45 million we're putting out to roads and bridges. And I'd like Jan to mention that, and tell where that money's been coming from, because you hear we're hiding or we're holding all this money. There's a purpose for it.
I think what Commissioner Whitmore is referring to is that part of our requirement when we have CIP projects is that you have to have all the funding upfront. So, a lot of the projects we have right now, we're holding that funding, going out to bid. So, anytime you see a bid let in Manatee County, we already have the money, we're ready for it, and when it comes in, it will be bidded. I believe that one is over time. It's a maximum not to exceed. So, that would be programmed into several departments. They access it, and that is so they do not exceed that amount. If they do, it has to come back before you. But the funding will be in each section as it's needed.
And as you see, the various companies were awarded that bid that they can use, that have their, you know, specialties that they do. Some do better on bridges, some don't. Okay, and then the next one was item number 18, which, I don't know why I've never missed this, I've never seen this before, I'm sure I have. The uninterrupted, uninterrupted power system, static transfer switches associated with power distribution units, 515,000. So, explain where those monies came from, and what exactly, if you can, what those monies will go for.
The item that is before you is actually a system, a routine agreement that we go through. It's for uninterrupted power switches. The program has been programmed into the operational budget, I believe, and if it's not, I will come back and clarify, but I believe it's in the operational budget. It's a normal, ongoing activity. This is the agreement that they have to put in place.
And just my other last comment, which would probably just be on number 22, the inter-local agreements with all the various agencies, and I noticed one city wasn't in there, and come to find out, there will be more coming before us in the future. City of Homestead Beach wasn't in here, and so you'll be seeing other cities come up in the future. Other than that, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, but Jan, I wanted to ask, since Carol brought it up on item number eight, under the budget amendment. So, you have all this money coming, BA from salary reserves, BA from cash reserves. So, it's actually 5.3 million to offset attrition changes in personal budget. So, what exactly is that money going to?
Okay. That is a very good question. Historically, in Manatee County, when we bring you the budget, every year, we put 97% of the salaries in everyone's line item, and then the remainder is placed down in a reserve. The theory behind that historically is if you don't need it, they're not spending it. So, you look for the attrition to see how it goes. And then, at the end of the year, financial management has always provided a budget amendment to make it whole, what that each department or each line item needs to get to the end of the year, and then that is how we allocate it. The one before you, you ask another question. We put it in salary reserves, but if there's any department or fund that goes beyond that, and it goes into cash balance reserves, those are additional items needed. One in particular, I know that was the largest, was utilities. A lot of that is due to turnover over time, that's gone beyond, because they can't get the people in there. But that is what happens, is that's the overall mechanism. We go through all the salaries, and then if any of it goes beyond, we clarify and tell you where it's at.
Well, I applaud the transparency of this. I think we talked a little bit about that when we were talking about the port, but it is confusing. So, I hope the new Commissioners, as they come in, will take the time to understand this, because it is complex, but I, from a taxpayer standpoint, I think it makes sense to have this transparency, to not have the funds all automatically budgeted and spent, so that we can see what it is costing, and have it broken out like this. So, I think that's a good thing, but it isn't easy to understand just from reading it. So, thank you for explaining that. All right.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. I've already closed public comment. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion passes. That includes the changes. There are a couple slight changes.
I want to say 6-0.
I'm sorry?
I want to say 6-0. Vanessa didn't vote.
Oh, excuse me. Yes, it was approved 6-0. Vanessa stepped out, as she indicated that she had to step out for a conference call. Okay. All right. Then, moving on to our Advisory Board Committee appointments. We need appointment designation, the chairman member and alternate member for the 2020 Value Adjustment Board. And I just have to say, I thought we did this already, so.
We did, however, let me, Madam Chairman, we did. Commissioner Trace was appointed, and we have an email from Commissioner Trace, who is withdrawn, wanting to be the chair, and then we are bringing this forward, so you can readdress.
Okay. That makes sense. Shoot, I'm sorry I asked. Okay. All right. We need to ask for volunteers who would like to serve on the Value Adjustment Board as chairman. We have.
I'll volunteer.
Carol is volunteering to serve as chair. And then, I would need, so Carol, you're going to jump up from alternate to member?
To chair.
To chair?
And then we need.
Then I need an alternate.
Correct. Commissioner Servia is a member, and still remains a member.
All right. So, I've got Whitmore nominating herself, I guess, as a Value Adjustment Board appointee. Are there, is there anyone else who would like to serve on the Value Adjustment Board?
It's not fun.
I'm already on.
Reggie, I hate to tell you, but you're being drafted, Bud.[1746.41] Reggie, I hate to tell you, but you're being drafted, bud. You're going to be the alternate.
Because nobody's here.
Whatever I need to do, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you.
Madam Chair, I brought this up yesterday because.
Thank you, Reggie.
Of the fine tradition of voting for who's not here.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I, I brought this up because Priscilla told me she, even if she went tomorrow, or when the meeting is Thursday or tomorrow, she wouldn't be here in February. So then I went to the administrator and said, we probably need to clean this up.
Thank you. Yeah, that makes sense. You know, I will tell you too, I just kind of, it is, it is related. But I talked to Charlie Hackney last week about some of the values and people not understanding. You know, the Value Adjustment Board is the opportunity to talk about your, what your property's value is, what, what it's been set at, what your property value is. So people are reaching out to us right now regarding taxes, and this is, the Value Adjustment Board is the proper venue. I would suggest, though, you call first, get a complete understanding of how the property values are set. I asked them specifically about agricultural designations, how they get set ahead of time, because I, I really did not understand that at all. I have to admit, how a property gets designated for agricultural use when it's not zoned for that. So, but in terms of property assessments, if you really think that you need to appeal that, that's who you appeal it to. And it is a sunshine board.
Right.
So we can't talk about cases. The cases have to come before the Value Adjustment Board. But as our clerk knows, usually it's pretty much worked out. We don't have a ton of them, right?
It is, yeah. The vast majority, sorry, the vast majority of the petitions are usually withdrawn. The property appraiser works with the, the property owners. So just a few go before the Value Adjustment Board. The special magistrates actually make the recommendations prior to that.
Yes. So the process. Carol?
I was on it years ago, and I swore, and you all know I fought hard for years now not being on it again. And I know the rules have changed, and everybody said it's a lot more cleaner process than it used to be. But I remember Joe McCloskey and I were on it, and there were so many threats and stuff that I just couldn't do it. I think even somebody was going to come in with a gun at one point. And I just said, I can't be on this board. That's nothing compared to how it is nowadays, but, but still, I just didn't want to deal with it. So I've heard in the last few days, it's more clear, and it's not like it used to be. The rules had changed. You follow a process, and that's it. Where before, I remember, we used to say, well, we don't agree with that, you know, and we would make changes up there. I don't think we can do that anymore, right?
The rules of the Value Adjustment Board are very strict per Florida statute, and, and also the, there, there's rules of procedure as well that must be followed. So the, the attorney and the board do follow all those rules. They're all posted on the clerk's website. So petitioners are aware of, of the process.
And I've seen on MyAKA Facebook page, some people were complaining about their values. I think we got an email from somebody. Yeah, I know we did, because I responded, and actually staff said I answered correctly on everything, so I'm proud of myself. But I think we raised his taxes, and I said, well, maybe it's your values have gone up. But MyAKA was having some issues too. And I did see somebody posted where they could go to apply to come before the board.
Yeah, I, I responded to that person too, and I haven't heard back, but I should have copied staff. I should have copied staff to have my response tested as well, because I did my best. But I agree, I've served on the Value Adjustment Board. It has been pretty clean. And I think the property appraiser does a great job of responding to people. You know, yeah, it's a big job, and, and maybe things get missed, or maybe things do have to be adjusted, but usually it happens before this, because the rules are so strict in being able to get something, an alternate approved by the Value Adjustment Board. Can I get a motion to close nominations?
We don't need to. We don't nominate anybody, do we?
I have two people.
We would need a motion to close nominations and to confirm Commissioner Whitmore as the chairman.
We had a motion by Commissioner Trace, seconded by Commissioner Servia. I don't think we'd have to take public comment on this, right?
You can. We should.
Technically, yes.
Okay, I'll open it up for public comment. Anyone who wants to address the board on the Value Adjustment Board? And the representation? Okay.
Madam Chair, if we can, we'll just remind the callers to press star nine if they're doubting on the phone to raise their hand.
Thank you for reminding me of that. So is there anyone on the phone who wanted to make a comment on the Value Adjustment Board appointees? All right, seeing no one come forward, we'll close public comment. All those in favor signify of the motion to close nominations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, all those opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion passes six to zero. Thank you for Commissioner Whitmore serving as the chair of the Value Adjustment Board, Commissioner Servia as a designated member, and Reggie stepping up to serve as the alternate.
We only have two meetings, so don't worry. We only have two meetings, I think.
You'll learn something. It'll be good. It's always good to learn something, right? Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. Madam Administrator, would you like to take item 41 before 40?
Certainly.
Why don't we do that? So we're going to go to item number 41, which is an update on the Healthcare Services Section and approval recommendations for indigent healthcare services.
Thank you. Well, staff is coming towards the podium.
Good morning. Eva Edie, Neighborhood Services Department.
Hello, County Administrator, County Attorney, Palmer, and our County Commission.
We have a really great team, as you know, with healthcare services.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I am so sorry to interrupt you. I missed an item, and I know he's hanging out here to do this. So I apologize. I missed item number 39. It is not even, it's a presentation upon request. I'm going to open that up. Item number 39 is adoption of ordinance 20-32, regulating engine compression release braking on Masters Avenue. Does anyone need a presentation on this?
No, and I'll make a motion to approve it, a recommended motion. I know you've got to open it up for public.
I will. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone who would like to address the board on this regulating engine compression release braking on Masters Avenue? As we all know, something they want, and something staff is in agreement with. So anyone who wants to address the board? Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close public comment. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion passes. Sorry, I saw you hanging out.
Good job, Michelle. Very impressive. Very impressive presentation.
I'm sorry, Michelle. I wondered why you were hanging out on the healthcare thing, but, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Trace, for pointing that out. So now we'll go back to 41. Please.
Good morning once again. Eva Edie, Neighborhood Services Department. We're here to present our healthcare update, and Joshua Barnett, our Healthcare Services Manager, along with his teammates Pascal Edward and Stephanie Seifert, who has just recently joined him as well, make up a very small but mighty team that represent a lot of our indigent healthcare work in the area. So Joshua, take it away. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joshua Barnett, your Healthcare Services Manager. We're very pleased to be before you today, giving you an update on the healthcare services. This is timely because the health services that serve the vulnerable residents of Manatee County are currently being affected adversely because of COVID. So we come to you with some recommendations to continue to augment our services as part of our responsibility, and also introduce you once again to this team. So before I go any further, I'd like to bring up Ms. Pascal Edward to introduce herself to this board.
Pascal.
Good morning. As Joshua mentioned, my name is Pascal Edward, and I'm the Healthcare Program Services Manager within the Healthcare Section team. I've been in this position for about a year now. My background is in public health. I'm a doctoral candidate at the University of South Florida's College of Public Health. And previously, I've worked for the Health Department for six years, three in Manatee County, as well as three in Sarasota County. Thank you.
Glad to have you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Stephanie Seifert, and I am the new Patient Healthcare Advocate Program Coordinator. I am the newest member to the Healthcare Services Section. I recently joined the first week of July, so I haven't been here that long. I recently relocated to Manatee County from Philadelphia area. I have over 25 years' background in public safety and public health. I have a graduate degree in public health from Drexel University, and a certificate in injury prevention from Johns Hopkins. I've worked a lot in public safety. I've been a critical care flight paramedic for over 25 years. I've worked in transplant medicine, and I really look forward to serving the residents of Manatee County in my new role. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. As you can see, we are very happy to have this team helping to really help manage and support indigent health services funded by this board, and to provide a critical lens about how we do that. The functions of the Healthcare Services Section are relatively narrow, but the impact of those services is much more broad. And so this presentation is to provide an overview of the functions of our section, also give you a minor status update about the services, and then also bring back forward some topics that have been discussed in the past. So we have three primary functions within this section of Neighborhood Services. The first is to manage the indigent services funded by this board, and that includes activities of contract management with area providers. We measure and monitor the services of how they're utilized, for which reasons, and by which frequency people access services. And then to coordinate different health plans, such as your state Medicaid or federal match programs and other grants that come to this community, to find out where these dollars can most effectively be spent to advance the quality and access of healthcare for those who do not have ready access due to being uninsured or low income. We also develop community partnerships to improve the safety net. The safety net serves those who are low income and uninsured, who might access public services, or work with them to get them to access public health services, and then also provide recommendations to this board with respect to policy and financing, what we're doing here today as well. We'll be giving you how we engaged with the community over this past fiscal year, the services in general, a brief overview, bringing back some topics that have been of question in the past. You may have seen me use my hands a lot to describe how a low-income pool brings money. I'm not going to use my hands this time. We've developed some charts to help more fully communicate that, Commissioner Benak. And also, we keep in mind the administrators' results-first philosophy at the forefront of all of our services, and we want to give you a sample of what that looks like. And then also request of you some recommendations, and to come back with a more data-informed year-end update. We engage in a multitude of community forum to facilitate conversations about how we improve the health status of those who may not have a primary care provider or may not have insurance, and we do that by serving on a multitude of boards. Here's a small sample of how we function, serving as chairs on multiple committees who work closely with law enforcement, other policymakers, state officials, and other officials of the county, including community providers, and on other subcommittees, including doing research-based work with the University of South Florida, such as the sequential intercept mapping, which was one of the primary goals of Administrator Corrie when she was a Department Director of Neighborhood Services, and then also serving on health planning councils as liaisons, and of course, a liaison to this board's healthcare advisory board. In terms of other community health engagement outside of indigent care, realizing that how we manage indigent care affects the community at large, and how the community at large addresses health impacts indigent care. So we are at the forefront of those conversations, having engagements and participation with groups such as the Brain Health Initiative, which is out of Harvard University, serving or being members of other boards, such as the Florida or American Public Health Association. Ms. Edward serves as a board member of the Area AHEC, and also working with certain groups like SEDNET or the Black Caucus to make sure we're receiving information from communities who are interested, and also receive benefits from indigent care. Sticking with the idea of results first, our section has accomplished many things just in the FY 1920, both during and before COVID. This is included work such as Manatee County, from this board becoming the third county in the state of Florida to have an infectious disease ordinance for syringe exchange, working to eliminate and prevent adverse childhood experiences, which over time cause increased burden of physical and mental health problems for adults due to childhood traumas, and putting in place our Patient Healthcare Coordinator Program, which augments current efforts of public safety's community paramedicine to continue to manage people, to ensure that they're continuing to follow up with those strategies for people who are at high risk of accessing the safety net and may not know how to navigate a complex health system as an uninsured individual. I also noted some of the work we did regarding opioids, including partnership with the Department of Health and their success of procuring grants with the CDC, and also working with Attorney General Moody under the state's statewide task force of opioids, where Manatee County was hallmarked as the county with the most effective reduction of opioid overdose over a period of time of any Florida county, and is continued to be hallmarked as a best practice. And so we continue to work and learn of how to advance those practices, knowing full well that the problem is not yet solved. One of the things I want to bring to your attention, again, outside of indigent care, is during COVID response, Manatee County government staff were interested in how they could find an additional role in helping to solve issues related to COVID. Because we work in the area of healthcare and behavioral health, we found a natural fit to work with Neighborhood Services and Director Edie to find out how staff could be repurposed to help ensure safety regarding mental health and physical health during social distancing measures. Our department during hurricanes usually contacts special needs individuals to find out how we can transport them to safe, alternative housing or shelters during the storm. The COVID has been a different type of storm. Because of social distancing measures, people were told to stay at home. If you are elderly and not having family contacts, contacts, this increased the burden of loneliness, which results in other physical and mental health disorders. We quickly assembled a group to contact hundreds of elderly, special needs, and veterans in our community to find out what they were doing to cope with social distancing and COVID, not how, but what. And this is intentional to remind people that we are resilient and capable, and we believe that effort helped to reduce the mental burden associated with dealing with this pandemic. When we spoke about this, Harvard University's Brain Health Initiative wanted to take part, and that program has been replicated and expanded, where now we have 27 faculty and students of Harvard University working specifically for Manatee County to do the same effort for law enforcement and first responders and their families, as first responders are often pulled out of the field due to contacts or being potentially exposed to COVID, and we've offered that resource to families as well. So we continue to look and see how that effort can be improved. We often come before you to speak about how we can fund services, but I don't know if we've actually talked about as the number of people that would perhaps qualify for these services. When we think about the uninsured, that number can be broad, including children and adults. It can also include people who are in correctional facilities. And so what we're here to bring to this board is parameters around who is uninsured as a result of benefit or potential benefit from this board. About 13% of all Manatee County residents between the ages of 18 and 64 are uninsured. If you break that number down, it tells you a little bit as to why. About half are uninsured and unemployed, meaning they're looking for work. 20% are uninsured and employed, so they're working and still don't have employer-provided coverage. And about 40% are uninsured and out of the labor force due to some disability or some injury, or taking care of somebody with a disability, so they're unable to have a work schedule. And this compares to 23% of Florida adults who are uninsured, and between 100 and 200% of the federal poverty limit. In Manatee County, in order to benefit from indigent care services, we align our program to the state's program of being below 200%. What we have found, and in partnership with those who do eligibility, is oftentimes, people don't realize that they could qualify for some sort of health benefit, such as Medicaid.
I'm going to ask a question here, because I just want to know how recent this data is. As we know, the unemployment rate has.
Gone up.
Gone up significantly. So it's, it said 2018. How recent is this data?
So that's a question that we've also looked at. There's different sources. So this is based on a couple things, such as census, which we know is about to be redone and recalculated, so the data will be more accurate in coming years. Also, we have learned that from the Department of Redevelopment and Economic Opportunity, they've been monitoring it. They're telling us there's about a 20% increase in, in unemployment. So the effect of uninsurance goes up. That does not necessarily mean that their income has fallen below the 200% of federal poverty limit. So those numbers are a bit ambiguous at this time, but we're continuing to monitor that as well. And we've been working under the CARES Act, such as with the Medical Society, to find out how we can manage that more effectively, even if temporarily, and think critically about this system, about how we can more robustly address it moving forward, which is part of our recommendations at the end.
But that was 2018.
2018, sorry. Yep, 2018. And so most of the data comes a few years later. 2018, sorry. Yep, 2018. And so most of the data comes a few years later, so we're really looking retrospectively. So I mean, with population change, that number can fluctuate a bit as well. So in order to qualify for indigent health services, we do have parameters. It's not an open network where people can just access and benefit. There, we have eligibility criteria that are applied, and people must produce documentation to participate in that. In terms of meeting the early eligibility criteria, you must have be considered low-income, meaning you make less. Your household income is below 200% of the federal poverty limit, meaning if you're two working adults and you have two children, you can make more money than a single adult with one child, because your household income is affected by the number of individuals in that house. And those calculations are provided to us by the federal government, which is a common approach for counties and the state in terms of calculating federal poverty status. You must be uninsured, meaning you cannot qualify for CMS benefits, such as Medicare or Medicaid. So if you access healthcare, one of the things that's done is finding out if you're eligible for those services, and usually getting a denial letter, knowing full well that sometimes that process can take months. We work closely and depend upon health providers, such as the hospitals, to determine if that person might be eligible and to submit that application. And then, of course, this is for adults age 18 to 64, because in Florida, you may qualify for CHIP services if you're below 18, and certainly once you're over the age of 64, you would qualify for Medicare benefits or other private benefits. So if you apply that, our number goes down in terms of who qualifies for that service at that age range, at that income bracket. We're talking a little over 5.1%, but as Commissioner Benak said, we expect that number to change. Manatee County in our Suncoast region ranks sixth lowest in terms of uninsurance. Sarasota rounds us out at the bottom at 11.2% of uninsured, and Hendry County is at the top of our region at nearly 25% of uninsured. And this is just to show you where Manatee County sits within this particular region, knowing full well that the bulk of uninsured reside in southeast Florida. A common misunderstanding is that all folks who are low-income are uninsured, and that's simply not true. So looking at of Manatee County residents who live below 200% of the federal poverty limit, we're talking about 35% of individuals who are both low-income as being under the FPL of 200 and being uninsured, meaning that a bulk of residents who are considered low-income below 200% do have some sort of insurance coverage. Again, that could be the Medicaid benefits, such as disability or low income, because they're living below 100, or they could be getting some other assistance elsewhere or purchasing one of the metal plans under the Affordable Care Act. The way in which our section measures and monitors services is, over the course of four years, we have continuously developed a dashboard that allows us to monitoring our effect and the dependency upon these services, and how we can bring about changes administratively to enhance access. We've presented in past years some marked success. We are here to tell you that that success is beginning to flatline, based on our procedures, and COVID is probably going to present ourselves with a bit of a spaghetti plot model of not knowing where this hurricane's going to go. So we share that knowing full well that we'll be monitoring and being cautious about what those numbers are post-March. So I spoke about how you qualify. In the purple bracket, that is, with our parameters of being a Manatee County resident, being uninsured, and being an adult, the purple bracket is the number of folks that we never hear from. They're not accessing county-funded services, although could, if they applied. The green bracket is the number of folks who have actually applied. So fiscal year to date, this data was pulled just two weeks ago. We've had over 2,300 applicants apply for the indigent healthcare program in Manatee County. When we apply our criteria of eligibility and obtain the documents necessary to support their application, not everybody is enrolled. Again, because they discover they do qualify for Medicaid, and so we move them onto a more permanent solution, where this program is only available to them for six months. And then you can see in the red, those are people who we approve, and then just below that is the number of people we actually pay for. And so for year-to-date, we've paid for, at this point, over 930 individuals, since this is two weeks old, and last fiscal year, we paid for just over 1,300. So this is really to demonstrate that in order to qualify for these services, there are many people who could benefit. Many people don't access this benefit at all. Of those who access it, not all people actually receive care, and of those who receive care, we don't, we only pay within the budget for certain services. Now, I will tell you that we've been very good about managing the influx of claims, where the Neighborhood Services fiscal department, or fiscal section, based on procedural changes, we are paying those claims much faster. So we're able to monitor this and inform the physicians where we are, so they know whether or not they can expect payment. In the right section of this slide, you could splice and dice your parameters of what's most important. Some people like to look at the top 5% most costly. Some people like to look at the top 100. We've elected to look at the top 10. And this is to show you that over the course of time, where there has been substantial decreases in the cost of our 10 most costly patients with Manatee County who benefit from this resource. In FY 17, you won't see an orange column, because at that time, the county was processing all claims provided, with services provided at the hospital. But because of the change in low-income pool investment, it doesn't provide us comparative data, so we scrubbed it out, and we began comparing from FY 18. And you can see the average cost, I'm sorry, the total cost of those 10 patients was a little over $120,000 for 10 folks. When we average that cost, the decrease is not very strong, but the total number does go down. And so we've been monitoring to find out, as we continue to expand services to community providers, as we continue to work with MCR in terms of the federally qualified health center, when that money was available, this helps reduce the dependency upon the hospital, and also keep people out of the ER where it's more costly, so we can begin to bring those costs down, meaning people are getting the same quality of care in a more managed setting at a reduced cost. Another way that we monitor this is by taking those top type 5% of highest utilizers and top 20. In the orange bar, you'll see this is the top 5% of all their costs combined. So in FY 1617, half a million dollars is attributed to our top 5%, and over $900,000 for our top 20. You can see the 20% remains pretty stagnant. The top 5% remains pretty stagnant. In this FY 20 year-to-date, we're coming to the near the, near the end of our fiscal year. So this is a bit promising, in the sense that those costs have substantially dropped. What is an important takeaway, though, however, is that orange line at the very top, that shows you that although the average costs have continued, or the costs of care have continued, the number of patients served within those costs have gone up, meaning we have more patients qualifying, which we're providing more care to more individuals with stable costs. To further reiterate that, we've also looked at the cost of care and the average cost of care of these same percentiles. So in the blue column on the left, that's the average cost of all patients who access indigent health services. Although it doesn't look like much, if you're looking at the average cost of all folks, that number has gone from over $1,000 per person on average. In FY 18, it's a little hard to see, but it's below $1,000, and in this year, we're hovering around $890, $880. That's a pretty significant decrease, when you're talking hundreds of dollars for about 1,300 people. And so this is, this is an indicator that what we're doing and what this board is allowing us to do by moving funds to lower-cost, more integrated settings, such as federally qualified health centers, such as expanding our network of community-based physician providers, so that people can go elsewhere, as opposed to just going to the ER, because what we know from a public health perspective is, when you're afraid that you might get an ER bill that you know is going to be costly, they're going to delay care, and by the time they show up, it's going to cost much more today than it would have six months ago. Also, the ER charge, as we all know, in terms of the updates we've received from Human Resources of this department and probably any HR department of any employer, is that the ER costs more than going to your general practitioner or a specialist. So the more we can augment that safety net and move care out, the more people we can serve with the same limited dollars, and likely provide managed care versus episodic acute care. And again, just to substantiate the earlier slide, you can see that the number of patients in the top 20 also increased. So we're serving more folks when you look at FY 1819. And once all of our data is in for FY 1920, since that's only year-to-date, we expect that number to go up as well. I'd like to then circle back around to low-income pool. So this is to demonstrate, based on questions we've received, is how do we know that the money that this board allocates actually brings back a return on investment? This, there are many facilities or multiple facilities who receive low-income pool that don't necessarily receive investment by this board. So just because this board hasn't allocated funds does not mean that those providers or facilities haven't received a benefit either. I went back, looking at the reports from the Agency Healthcare Administration, to find out how much money was brought to Manatee County from the state's low-income pool. In FY 1617, this is my first year here, we, this board allocated $500,000. We were asked to augment that, make it $505,000, and you can see the lofty return brought to the facilities listed above. That was a huge return on investment, around $8.2 million to Manatee County from just over a half a million dollars. In FY 17, we came back to you and said, we need to fully invest. If ACHA is going to be able to bring this amount of revenue, and it depends upon county-level participation, which is optional, this brings more money to the county. The investment wasn't as great, but it was seriously, it still was a serious return on investment for those providers. In FY 18 and 19, we came back to you with the same request. The orange is what this board approved, and the blue is what ACHA invoices us for, realizing that they're asking all counties to participate. Some counties participate, some counties participate at different levels, not always at the level of the request. And you can still see a return on investment from ACHA that benefits MCR, Manatee Memorial, Lakewood Ranch Medical Center, and Blake. In FY 19 and 20, we saw that return go down. There's a few scenarios, and in the next slide, I'll show you where. But the low-income pool, at this point, is nearing its approval end. We don't know if ACHA or the state will get that re-upped. It is a demonstration waiver, and so they're usually time-limited. Florida was very successful in extending that with CMS. And so we look to find out, what do we need to do to get ahead of a response should this program go away? This board approves an amount primarily for two facilities in county. That is for Manatee Memorial Hospital, which serves as the safety net acute service provider, and also with MCR, once the state allowed federally qualified health centers to participate. We attribute this change to a change in leadership with the new secretary at ACHA. And what I provided to you here is, looking at Manatee Memorial, the red bar is what we came to this board for approval, based on ACHA's request. So you can see that number went up in 1718, and then it went down in FY 1920 of this year. It went down substantially. And the orange amount is what was actually invoiced. So in 1819, what we asked you for is exactly what ACHA asked for and actually invoiced us for. And then in 18 and 19, we got approval from this board for 1.1 million, and we were only invoiced a fraction of that. And so the return to this county, of this county, was much less than in prior years. Conversely, MCR received a larger return on investment. And so you can see in the purple, that's the amount of new money brought to Manatee County from the investment. So in FY 19 and 18, this board approved a little over $1 million to participate in the low-income pool for MCR. They invoice us for that amount, as indicated, and that brought $2.8 million of new dollars to Manatee County for a total funding of over, just around $4 million for MCR, to provide services to those who are uninsured and below 200% of the federal poverty limit. What this shows you is a change in the approach in how the state is investing in indigent healthcare, meaning they're putting their money at the more accessible, integrated, lower-cost settings to reduce the burden on the ER, where it's more costly. And so our strategies have been in line with that effort, and we're now seeing that even in the low-income pool. And then also, just the slide to reiterate, that the money that we, that this board invests does indeed come back to the county at a greater value. I'm now going to transition to results first. This is simply to show you that this section wholeheartedly accepts the results-first philosophy, and it's integrated that philosophy into all of our contracts. We have results-first benchmarks built in contracts, both in the Behavioral Health Section and also in medical care, and these providers have been very good about developing benchmarks that really monitor the quality of their care, monitor the access of their care, and also have provided benchmarks that they may not achieve, because they want to know if they can land there, to help communicate the chronicity or the complex needs of those that they serve. Pascal is going to come up and give you a single example of how results first has allowed to us to improve our management of a single
So in my role, we not only track the data that the agencies that we fund provide to us, but we also look at the trends that the data speaks to. And so for this particular example with the Behavioral Health Agency, one of the things, one of the things that we've noticed this fiscal year is that for fiscal year 20, there was an increase of 90% of detox in patients who remained in the community for more than 30 days, which was up from 10% from fiscal year 19, which to us indicated a positive trend, because one of the things that we want to see is that we want to see patients not being, returning back to facilities for detox services on a consistent basis. So that was a positive trend that we noticed with the agency that we fund. The second thing that we noticed for this particular year is that there was a 75% increase of detox outpatient who met retention, who met the retention target for four of six months in the initial reporting period. However, there were unmet targets that were identified and corrected within the subsequent months. So we picked that up. So in my role, also, one of the things that we do is that we provide consultations as well to the agencies, as far as, once we notice a discrepancy, we tap that agency to figure out, okay, what's going on, and how can we improve that measure or that target. And for the last example for fiscal year 20, we noticed a 75% increase in the post-acute treatment follow-up that was observed, but it fell rapidly from January to March, and we're currently monitoring that to determine whether or not COVID-19 had an impact on this particular indicator. So these are just some, like, really quick examples of how we look at the results-first data and to determine whether or not we're either on track, making progress, or there's something within the system that we need to address. And now I'm going to turn it back
So in summary, of indigent health services through this various monitoring effort and how we're utilizing results and receiving data and continuing to work with our community partners, we continue to see a decrease in the average cost. However, that decrease and the amount of the decrease, we anticipate will start to decline, meaning we're about to level off. We've pressed the system in various ways to continue to enhance access to affordable services. And so we're looking to find out what our needs are for the future to continue that trend in our current system. We continue to expand the community-based care options to help achieve that benchmark. We work very closely with the Medical Society and other providers of the community to find out how we can onboard them onto our program to help avoid unnecessary use of the emergency department, which is all too important in this current landscape of reducing potential effects and spread of the COVID virus. We see that the follow-up to treatment from those who do go to the ER for necessary or unnecessary reasons is increased. That's primarily because of the investment with MCR, who functions as the federally qualified health center. That provides a significant amount of funding to allow for that access to care to occur. And also, with the systems they have in place, if they have somebody who's in their system, they get an alert just as if it would occur with us. they get an alert, just as if it would occur with us, to say, "Joshua is in the ER," and they provide follow-up within a number of days, and that's one of the results that we manage. So, we're very happy to see that continuing to occur. However, because of COVID and people's fear, we're not quite sure if that trend's going to continue. So, this is all to allude that we continue to be mindful of the economical effects, the environmental effects, and the way in which people access care in the various systems, even though those diversions continue to remain. We anticipate that state-level funding will continue to decline, as it's already been observed in this year's low-income pool. And we're also pleased to report that in order to help improve our patient-level monitoring of the population of those that we serve, we have worked closely with Manatee and MCR to get them on a shared platform to report claims data, utilization, diagnostics, so we can see who went to each facility, at what time, for what reason. And now, that has been expanded to include Centerstone. So, we now have a repository of understanding how people, the same person may access somatic or psychiatric services, which may be linked to the same condition. Our request of you is to come back to this board with a year-end statistics-focused update to provide you an update of the program that's being spearheaded by Stephanie Seifert of the Patient Healthcare Coordinator. Those positions are posted in partnership with the Department of Health, so we can intercept those highest costs, including the top 10, to find out how we can continue to improve their care and the quality and access and reduce costs. We're also conducting research on the safety net in general. Because of the economic effects and the effects of the low-income pool, we are really looking forward to these relationships we're building with other counties to find out what it is they're doing and what those benchmarks they use are and what their eligibility standards are to exchange lessons learned. And so, with that research, we look forward to bringing those results back and then also recommending changes to the indigent health plan itself because of the new knowledge that we've learned. Our recommendations to you for board approval, as noted in the agenda packet, is a number of things. To continue on these trends of enhancing care, reducing costs, and still maintaining quality, we are looking for this board to approve six items. The first is, allow us to provide compensation for providers of healthcare beyond just physicians, but to include advanced registered nurse practitioners who work within their scope and physician assistance. We're not seeing a high number of physicians partnering with this program for non-specialty services. So, we believe that augmenting this provides those physician-owned practices or physicians who have nurse practitioners to provide care and still expand access, keeping people out of the hospital who don't need to be there. To reimburse the hospital-based emergency department services after all community-based physician claims are first paid, historically, this county receives a bulk of claims from the ER, but because this board invests in the low-income pool, this, those funds can be tapped from that resource first. And in order to help manage this budget, we would like to provide compensation to all physicians to provide community-based care. And then, when there's revenues remaining, we would use those funds to reimburse the ER after the fact. That's also to increase patient access and to support ongoing access and management of health needs. We would like to mandate that all facilities who receive low-income pool invested by this board do, in fact, conduct eligibility determination for those services. We also would like to expand radiology and laboratory reimbursement to non-hospital-based providers. Currently, if you are to need labs or x-rays or blood draws, those are provided at the hospital, which usually costs more. We would like to begin to reimburse community-based providers who do those same services to do that at a non-hospital-based rate. And we also just don't want to flood the hospital with patients unnecessarily, so we'd like to be able to provide those providers. We also look to find out how the HIE has implications for population health and communication of information. So, if I were to go to one facility and access care and then go to another facility for the same reason on a different day, we want to make sure that that information is flowing from one agency or one provider to the other, particularly if somebody's coordinating care from specialty post-acute. And what we have found is that HIE is a requirement for reimbursement, but common use of the HIE is not required. And so, we're not asking this board to set a threshold. We're asking this board to be cognizant and aware that we would like to investigate the common use and see how often providers are, in fact, using the HIE. Come back to this board with our discovery and then work with you all to establish a minimum threshold. Knowing full well that this board approves 100% of Medicare reimbursement for indigent care services, that's because the HIE has a cost associated with it, it has a time component, and it has a quality component. In order to help maintain the budget and improve quality, if physicians have the HIE but don't elect to use it, we would like to reduce reimbursement below 100% of Medicare. And if they demonstrate use above the minimum threshold, we want to pay them that full 100% as we always have. And this is really to maintain and optimize quality and coordination of care, because if you're uninsured, you don't have an insurance agency to call upon to find out what the true medical history is. You're really depending on the historian themselves, which is the patient. As I wrap up, I just want to acknowledge a few people. There's a lot of work that goes into the management of indigent health services and certainly in the data reporting. We've got some powerhouses in the county who help make this occur, starting with the fiscal services section of Neighborhood Services Department. Angie Wilson helps tremendously in this effort. She is a close confidante in helping make sure that my numbers are right and that I know what I'm talking about. Jennifer Torres, who has joined with us today, she does all of the patient claims entering. I don't know if they often get the recognition that they deserve, but this is a labor of love for all of us, and so, we've really enjoyed seeing the effect and measuring the effect of these services. And of course, other staff with the Neighborhood Services who help hold each other accountable. And then, also, with our multiple agencies, such as the Department of Health and Medical Society, et cetera. And once again, you have your healthcare services section, the three of us, and we're happy to answer any questions you all may have. Thank you very much.
All right. Great presentation. Carol?
Well, I have a lot of comments, and some of them could be easily yes and no, Josh. So, just Joshua, so just come up. Isn't it not true that Medicaid, that really the only time a male between 18 and 64 can qualify is if they're disabled? There is an income one, but it's only for, it's not, they can't go, they can't get Medicaid. Am I right? I know I'm right, but I just want to make sure the public knows that.
I'm thinking there's a parameter about child in the household as well.
Right. And, but if you're a female, single and have kids, the kids have Medicaid and the mother, but not the father. Well, okay, and that's, okay. Just want to clarify that. I'm glad, I know it's still 100%. I still work in this world, and where I work, five out of seven people had COVID, so I've been working a lot in between this and I audit charts. So, I see a lot of the situations that's going on. We have many nurses that call the doctor, a nurse, home health company, call the doctor from the home and say, "We need to, this patient needs to see a doctor right away," to prevent an ER, because it nicks us as well as the doctor, as well as the hospital, if you readmit them. They, they won't see them. They say, "We can't, we're too busy, it's not like it used to be, and you have to go to the ER." And I'd say 95% we send them. And, or, you know, or the patient will call and the doctor says, "Go to the ER. Don't come to my office, go to the ER." I have concerns on your recommendations. Let's start with the, and I'm glad that Valerie's here. I don't know, I mean, I guess this affect, this affects the doctors of Manatee County. I've talked to you all before. I was there in the audience as a nurse when we sold the hospital from county to private sector. And I've also been involved with the indigent care since day one, from afar, and then when I've gotten involved with this, to expand the provider network, to reimburse ARNs, APRNs, and PAs. I do not support that at all. We spend up to 1.2 million reimbursing physicians every year. Most of the time, we use every bit of it, two physicians. Now, you're, this money was meant for physicians. I have no problems if these, if a nurse practitioner works in the doctor's office and a doctor is on-site working in the office. I went and saw Dr. Aloka yesterday, and he had an ARN and a PA in his office. I have no problems with that. I do have a problems when we're trying to dilute what the money was always intended for was for physicians. And it's an incentive for them to get indigent care because we pay them 100% of Medicare. We all get Aetna. They pay 80% of Medicare. So, everybody's, you know, so you do have an incentive to take an indigent patient, which is usually more complex. So, I don't support paying an ancillary practitioner out of this fund at all. Reimburse hospital-based emergency physicians only after all other physician claims are initially paid. I don't agree with this. Every hospital has a contract with a company of doctors. They don't work for Manatee Hospital, they don't work for Blake, they don't work for Lakewood Ranch. Lakewood Ranch and Manatee same, share the same ER doctors. Blake probably has a contract, because they have trauma doctors, too. They have to bill their collection rate. I know Manatee, a couple of years ago, they were seeing 60,000 patients in the ER. Their collection rate for those doctors was 18%. So, I don't think anybody in business would agree with that. I don't think they should be paid last. I haven't talked to anybody at the hospital, I don't even know if Valerie knows about all this, but they're, they're physicians, too, and they deserve to be paid. And I expounded, I talked to Sheri Saturday, I wrote it all up, and then I talked to her yesterday. Hospitals own doctors' practices now. Blake HCA owns all the Pinnacles, Walk-in Clinics, all the doctors that you see that work for Pinnacle. Manatee owns Manatee Physician Alliance, all the practices like brain and cardiology. Blake owns a neurology group, Manatee owns neurology. So, you have all these private physicians that actually work for the hospitals, and they're getting paid. And actually, I'm sure the hospital is billing for them. So, it doesn't seem fair that you're singling out the emergency room doctors, and I don't support that at all. Eligibility determination mandatory for all Lip receiving agencies. Blake doesn't get Lip funding because they don't, they don't qualify or they don't get that much, right?
They receive and they do not get that much.
Right. Because they don't do indigence, and they don't do a lot of the low income, and they don't participate. Plus, they don't participate with HIE, correct? They signed up for it, but they don't use it.
I've, I've not evaluated it personally, so I do not know, Commissioner.
I've, ever since I've been here, they haven't used it yet. I don't support, well, I'm, I can think about that one later. I mean, I'm okay with it. Expanding radiology and lab for other non-hospital Philly, I'm fine with that. MDC, other labs, why not? Of course. It's cheaper, I agree with that. Establishing a minimum threshold of HIE, which is health information exchange, for those that don't know, used for full reimbursement. You're getting penalized if you don't use it that much. I called Jimmy from EMS, I've talked to Sheri, I use, I talked my company into using HIE. So, when we get a referral from the hospital, we can go on the HIE, type in the patient's name, get all the notes we need, progress notes, social case management notes, lab, surgery notes, everything. So, that is wonderful. But I can't talk to another doctor that belongs to it. For instance, urology partners, the big urology group, they're on it, but you can't see their information, and you can't, and neither can our EMS. So, I was there when this first started, so to penalize, I mean, it costs these doctors monthly, as you know, between $50 and $80 a month. Urology partners has maybe 10 or 12 doctors, and they have to pay per doctor every month. So, this is not like it's free. I think Manatee Hospital about four years ago had to pay $80,000 a year for HIE, and I'm sure, I don't know what Blake paid. And they still have to, just belong to this HIE so they can get indigent care funds. So, we've got to look at like that. I don't, I think we should keep the payment the same. And also, I was going to, I don't support this today, I want this to come back to us. Commissioners, I know what I'm talking about, I work very closely with this. I, hopefully, you'll respect my opinion. I do not want doctors, what, this whole indigent, we used to pay $9 million, now we pay $5 million, and now, MCR gets paid more than the hospitals. And yeah, they, their costs are more, but how much are they writing off? I've been in the ERs, as you know, and what, you know, I saw a guy fell off a ladder, landed on top of a snake. You know, I mean, I, they see everything. They are very, very high-risk. I, they fell on top of a snake, and he was right in the room next to me, I'll just never forget it. I think, I think that I want this to come back. I want to have dialogue. I do not support at all not reimbursing the physicians the 1.2 million. The nurse practitioners and PAs, I don't have a problem if they're billing, if they are physically in the office with the doctor. In my home health company, we have nurse practitioners, we don't, the community does, that have companies, and they work in all the nursing homes, independent livings and assisted livings. They have a contract, they, the nursing home lets them go in there to take care of their patients. They have a doctor in Lakewood Ranch that's never even been in to see a patient, and they sign their charge for them. That's not what I want to happen in Manatee County. So, I would respectfully ask that we bring this back and maybe Sheri and Josh, we get together. I work in the actual real world, so I know what's going on. And I don't want to jeopardize these people that are actually taking care of these patients any more than they are now getting paid. Sorry, Josh, I, it bothered me all weekend. I talked to Sheri, and I told her I was probably going to ask to have this pulled and brought back in the future with you addressing some of these issues.
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, I think we're going to probably end up talking more about this. I, I just think we do need some context. I mean, I really appreciate all of these proposals, because in my world, I see that we are going into a situation where we're going to have way more people that are eligible. And we're not increasing the revenue, right?
No.
We haven't talked about what the revenue is. I assume it's still in the $5 million, I don't, we're not talking about the budget. So, the reality is, either we're going to have to budget a whole lot more to be able to do this, or we're going to have to make some cost-cutting measures. So, I, I, I do think this is appropriate. I, you know, I was going to ask about the hospitals. The hospitals are, you know, first of all, the Lip is going down. That's the reality. We're not going to have that funding. So, before, where we put this money in so that we could get more back, that's going away. So, we've got to deal with reality. Everyone is looking at healthcare and how to make cuts. I appreciate that we're doing this. We don't have a dedicated revenue source. We cannot, we don't have anything. We've always kind of had this money that we set aside, you know, and it's always been subsequent to the loss of the funding, and we knew that was going to go away. You cannot sell a property, you know, how many years ago, and put money in a trust fund and then start hitting the principle of that and expect that money to still be there. So, that's not even worth discussing. We're talking about a different scenario. So, I, I do think we need to continue this discussion. I've not heard from anyone regarding this issue. No one has said, "Oh, you better not do this, or we're going to be hurting." So, I don't know the reality of that. I get that, Carol, you're really close in, but, I mean, everyone is moving to, you know, we're moving to telemedicine. So, why wouldn't we move to somebody who is a...
Only temporarily, per Medicare. No, it's, it's the truth. Medicare, the federal government is allowing it temporarily. Telemedicine, just so you want to get a fact straight.
So, a lot of people working at home temporarily. Things are going to change in our world based on COVID. We all have to accept that fact. So, I don't know where we're going to go with this. I, I appreciate you bringing these forward, but it's just going to become more important that we look at these cost-saving measures. So, you know, I appreciate this discussion. I wanted to talk about the hospitals because, you know, I know of some people that have been in the hospital on a vent for how long? How long, Priscilla? Over a month? Months?
At least three weeks.
I don't know. Do they have healthcare? I don't know. Who's paying for that? I don't know. I don't know the reality of a lot of these challenges. I do know that our healthcare system is very challenged. I know our hospitals are challenged. So, it's hard for me to put that in context to these changes. You know, listening to the presentation, I'm thrilled that we're so focused and have so much information. We've come so far from where we were. We really, really have, and that's a testament, Joshua. So, it is a big picture. I appreciate Carol's perspective, because she's in the world. But to say that, that doctors are the only one that should get paid...
It does say physician.
It doesn't make sense to me, and I get why we're going to pay the doctors first and the hospital second. I get that. I don't, I don't know why we wouldn't do that, but certainly, we know from all of the studies that have been done on indigent care, that we've got to get it out of the hospitals. We know that. Carol brings up a good, a good question, though. So, if these people are going to the doctors, and the doctors are telling them all to go to the emergency room, we've got a problem.
They are. It's 100% accurate. I've never had one yet that said, "Bring them to my office," and I've been there seven years.
Yeah. And that's, that's an issue. So, I just want to just make sure we know that, Carol, I appreciate you saying that we all should just go with you. So, I just want to just make sure we know that, Carol, I appreciate you saying that we all should just go with you. I'm not there yet, I'm not, yeah, I get that, you can say that.
You won't go with me, I know that, but that's okay, I did ask Valerie why she was here, and I guess she agrees.
I, I'll go ahead and turn it, does anybody else have a perspective on this?
I just have a couple comments.
Okay, and then we'll go back to Joshua.
You know, I think Joshua, he's going to go back over a couple of these, but I think that, you know, to say that all six of these are not appropriate is not what we're looking for today, because there are some things here that we need to proceed with. So, he'll make a couple clarifications, and I hope that, that'll allow you to move forward with a couple of these. Also, you know, the, the charge that you gave to us, gave to me, you know, as we said, as a director, and you now have a healthcare advisory board as well. So, you have another outside group that looks at this information and follows along. So, it's not just coming from staff, it's coming from a professionally appointed group by this board, is to allow for better access for individuals that are in the indigent care category. So, what we're trying to do is connect people to primary care physicians. That's the overall sense of what we're trying to do here. We see that improving, you've seen that from some of the slides. And also, to have people to make more frequent contact with their doctors, so that they're not coming to the emergency rooms. So, as we move through continuing to work on that, that takes a lot of time to refocus people into how to access healthcare. And what Stephanie is now come on board to do, and working jointly now with the Department of Health, is that step we've been working on for over 18 months. And you'll see more of that neighborhood-type connection within, with people, and they start to feel comfortable with their physicians. And so, that is, that's the, the true essence behind a lot of these changes. And I truly appreciate the hard work on behalf of the healthcare staff and neighborhood services to bring you the financial data. And one of the things that we're going to have to watch is, we found out last year that the low-income pool program might not continue in '21. So, we are looking at that being something that you become more aware of, so that you, as a board, can advocate for it to stay if it needs to, but that's on behalf of the state. And they're going to have to see that locally, what that impact is, is, and you've started to see some of those numbers. So, you can see what that has done. And then, of course, when we first started out with this project, there was really not an involvement to the link that it is now of our federally qualified health center, man, or MCR services. And so, you're starting to see that local impact. So, we appreciate all the questions, no doubt, this is a very important area. We don't have a problem with bringing it back, and I, I think if you let Josh answer a few questions, it may narrow down the specifics of what, what we're uncomfortable with, with recommendations.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. I think, too, I'm not sure if there's ever been disagreement about how to manage healthcare, so this is a new one, right?
It's not that we disagree.
No, but there, but you're going to have difference of opinion and different strategies. There's a multitude of strategies to do this. The charge we have is to help maintain good quality access, reduce unnecessary costs, and make sure the community gets healthier, especially for this population, that's, that's our charge. We've taken up the fourth charge of connecting folks to care intentionally, with the Patient Healthcare Coordination Program. I want to circle back to a few of the comments. In my mind, when I think about how to provide access to care, I have, I have seen in my life where a, a nurse practitioner may provide the services under the license of a physician. And that care is provided by a nurse practitioner or by a physician assistant, but we can't pay that nurse. We have to pay the doc rate under which it's billed. So, we're paying a doc rate for care that's not necessarily provided by a physician, which means we're, we're putting more money into the care. I also think back to, in terms of standards of care. We, we usually go back to our agreements, and part of our efforts have been to go back, not just as a funder of services, but a funder of quality. And we've put in metrics in place that say, in order to receive this full payment, the patient must see the following staff within a period of time. We do that for acute medical services, for withdrawal management. We had a requirement that we added that people who treat addiction should actually be certified in addictions medicine. Like, those are things that we've put in place. So, we would be very, we would respectfully, Commissioner Whitmore, make sure to add those provisions to ensure that this board knows that it's not just investing taxpayer dollars in healthcare, but it's investing in care that provides high quality and maintains the standard that we enjoy as insured. And so, we will be looking to find out how we can improve that spread and make sure that we're paying for the services provided. I also reflect on documentation standards. If you're treating a beneficiary under Medicare or Medicaid, you have to do certain things to justify that what you did was appropriate and in the best benefit of the patient. The HIE is what we have to ensure that. So, if a patient who has multiple morbidities, who has chronic health conditions because they've lived a life of being uninsured and low income and not having access, the best solution we have is the Health Information Exchange only when it's used. And so, we want to optimize its use. The research has shown us that HIE's, above and all, from physicians to say, it's the best solution for communicating and coordinating care, but only if the information's available and it's uploaded and/or accessed. And so, we want to optimize that. From what I've gathered, Manatee County is the only county in the state of Florida that has a health information exchange that is shared between corrections, behavioral health, and medical health. There's no other county, the state's HIE, under ACHA, explicitly prohibits the use of participation for behavioral health providers and correctional health providers. But we know that these people navigate the system, so Manatee County has a leg up. But we need to optimize its use, and this helps improve community health, not just the way we're financing, but what we're financing. So, that's pretty, that's part of our recommendation. We have certainly had these conversations over the years with different groups to find out as a barometer of palatability, is what we're proposing fine? Our obligation is to come before you of strategies that achieve your vision. And so, these are strategies just to consider as opportunities to help advance and respond. I do want to talk a little bit about the, the, the emergency department doctors, because I do agree, and we know full well, that there are many people who go to the ER, and we want those physicians to get paid. Historically, 40 to 60% of your physician set aside is absorbed from the emergency department physicians. Also, historically, millions of dollars are going into that, going to that hospital to pay for that care. That's the intent of the Medicaid Match Program. Low-income pool is a Medicaid program, given to the hospitals to compensate for uncompensated charity care, and where those people access care primarily is, the emergency department. I, I appreciate the Administrator's comments, because this idea of the emergency department payment, not that we don't want to pay, we just want to pay the community physicians first to keep people out of the ER, and if there's those funds, the 40 or 60% still remain, we will 100% provide that back. The advisory board took this up as an issue, and they, they voted and agreed that this was the methodology that they proposed. We actually have the vice chair of the Healthcare Advisory Board, your Healthcare Advisory Board, on the, on the line. But they took this up as a vote, because we asked them of, is this an ideal strategy? And they said, "The money should follow the patient." And if the patient's accessing care in the community to reduce the burden on the ER, the fund should follow the patient. We did something very similar with the pharmaceutical assistance, patients moved. And so, we want to make sure those funds are available. So, these strategies are really in line with best practice. They have been discussed with different community members, and it's our obligation to bring those forward for this board to make those decisions. And so, I, I appreciate the comments.
Madam Chair.
Okay, Carol?
Okay, and I want to, I really want to, I'm trying to whisper, but I can't hear her. I don't really know why Val's here, but I'm thinking maybe for how I feel, I'm not sure. But I had somebody here in our paramedicine look up me on the HIE, because I go through some of the docs that are on HIE. I went and had a x-ray that's an HIE provider. And so, this morning, I had him look me up, and I gave him my information. I had a CT scan recently, they don't have anything on record since January at Manatee Diagnostics. I went and saw Urology Partners, which is like 15 docs, they can't have any access to it. So, the HIE is a great thing, Joshua, and that's why hopefully we can all talk about this, not here. But we need to get the doctors to allow their private information to be put out to you guys, EMS, because that was the whole purpose of this when this started. Now, docs in the ER do not work for the hospital. You're saying that all these millions of dollars should come in the hospital. Those ER docs do not work for the hospital. Their collection rate is 18%. You've got many groups that, that work for Blake, many for Manatee, they get paid by the hospital a salary. And yet, they're allowed to, but you won't let the emergency room docs who do not work for the hospital. And that's where, you know, maybe the hospitals, because these patients do go to the emergency room, you're not going to get, if, in the real world, we need more docs in Manatee County. You cannot get a patient in. Even I can't get in to see my own primary care, and I know them pretty well. I can't, I have to wait, and one, a couple of times, I've had to see a nurse practitioner. I thought I was seeing him, and then, no, he's busy, you're seeing this one. I respectfully do not agree that we should be paying a nurse. I understand the, the reimbursement rates for the nurse practitioner, the PA, and they're having to get paid a doctor rate. Well, you could change that, and you know that. We could change that in the payment rate on how you pay, because this is our plan, what we're paying for indigent care. We don't have to pay the full 100% of a doctor rate if a nurse practitioner is saying that. That would be carving out something different that we normally don't do. So, again, I'd like to have this come back before us in the, in the future, and I'd like to hear what the Medical Society has to say, because I don't, when it's time, Madam Chair. Just remember, the ER doctors do not work for the hospital. In fact, I think they dissolved them not too long ago, and they formed another group. It was...
It's a new name.
Yeah, it's a new name, and some of the doctors got let go. Lake, Sarasota Memorial, same thing. That happened. Dr. Colgate can tell you about that, I mean, I mean, it happens. So, anyway, I just want to be clear that they don't work for the hospital. They are contracted by the hospital, and they have their own billing company, their own administrator, everything.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open this up for public comment at this time. Is anyone like to speak to this issue?
Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Valerie Vale with Manatee County Medical Society. Commissioner Whitmore, my conversations with Josh, and he did bring this to me before it was ever put on this proposal, and our conversation was exactly what you said, as long as a nurse practitioner is under the purview of a physician, then that would be okay, because they do get billed at a lower rate. Some of you may or may not know that the legislature this year voted to allow nurse practitioners to practice independently. And that became in effect on July 1st. However, the rules are still being written. It's sort of like the PPP loans, everybody submitted for their money, but the rules came after the fact. And that is in process now. But the details are that a nurse practitioner is supposed to work in a rural community, primary care only, and do that for a period of three years before they can work independently on their own. The physicians fought that vehemently, because it is a lower level of, of training. But we all know that physician practices employ nurse practitioners and physician assistants. And so, I felt that it would open the door to allow people to see a nurse practitioner when a physician can't see them, and be billed at the appropriate rate, but that physician also reviews those medical records. It was, my intent was never like nursing homes or a nurse practitioner that practices, and we all know this happens in the esthetician world, where they'll have a practice, and they've got a medical director who's three hours away and never looks at those records. That is not what, what this intent is. This intent is to open the door to a local medical practice who employs a nurse practitioner under the supervision of a physician, who also reviews those records, and open the doors a little to allow people to get in. As far as the emergency room, Josh and I did not discuss this, but, please correct me if I'm wrong. I agree with, with the recommendation to pay them last, even, because they are sort of a primary care collectall, but they also are charging at a much higher rate than community physicians. They get paid a higher rate with Medicare than a community physician, to my knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board on this issue? We do have somebody on the phone.
Madam Chair. We do have a caller on the line, caller with the last three digits of 734. I'll allow you to talk. You have three minutes, please state your name for the record. Hello?
Thank you. For the record, this is Jill Sherbow, the Vice Chair of the Healthcare Advisory Board. Can everyone hear me?
We can, thank you.
Okay, great. First, I just want to thank Joshua for his excellent leadership and direction to our board. It's his passion that keeps us to task. I think the big takeaway that is very evident today is that without access to affordable healthcare, the greater the risks of poor community health are. And also, as just mentioned, the COVID epidemic is exacerbating the situation, and more and more Manatee residents are now newly uninsured and finding their new financial situation, ill-equipped to access healthcare, and sometimes without any safety net. I'm wondering how this moment may serve as an opportunity to readily address this growing problem in a more robust and effective way. I'm wondering if perhaps the county commission would like the healthcare advisory board to begin to explore options of how this could be accomplished beyond what is currently in place. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else who'd like to address the board on this issue? All right, I'm going to close public comment on what's on us today on the agenda. Sherri?
I have two comments, and then one for the, thank you for the Chair of the Healthcare Advisory Board calling in. And I just have two updates. In our Manatee Cares Act funding, we did receive two requests to assist with offsetting payments for the uninsured or underinsured from 100% of, to 200% poverty level. And so, we were excited to see that, which will help expand for during the COVID period. Those were approved, and we're working right now to contract with those two entities to clarify that. So, there'll be some individuals who are in those categories that will be able to continue with healthcare. Secondly, we have no problem with coming back, doing a little bit more information, coming back to the board for a more robust discussion, and doing some briefings in between. And so, I would suggest that we, we do that at your September 29th meeting, just before the end of the calendar year, to give us plenty of time to get with each of you and answer any questions. If that's acceptable for the board, that's what staff can do.
Okay, well, if that's what the board wants to do, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to present this back in our September...
29th?
29th meeting.
To continue to the 29th?
Bring this back.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on continuance. Does anyone address the continuance motion? All right, seeing no one come forward, close public comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All those opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion passes. All right, thank you, guys, for being here. It was a great presentation, lots of issues. All right, we're going to take a half-hour break, is that long enough for y'all? Okay. We'll take a half-hour break, and we'll be back in a half hour. All right, we are back in session. We're on, what item is this? Whatever, it's the COVID.
Item 40, Madam Chairman.
40, thank you. I'll turn over to County Administrator.
It's just the COVID.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Director Sauer and myself are here to provide you with the... Director Sauer and myself are here to provide you with the next update for our COVID-19 response. I'll start off again with being in Week 18 of the response and the reopening strategies. Diane Volmer is going to help me move this along quickly. So, next slide. Again, just to reiterate, the basis of our response and responsibility is to continue to follow the governor's executive orders that are listed here, also to be in compliance with the Safe, Smart, Step-by-Step Plan for Florida's recovery, and then to go over the current status of our Manatee County timeline. Next slide. As a reminder, we brought this up in the past, but just as a reminder to those, these are the seven guidelines in the Governor's Task Force report that was released back on May 1st of 2020. This set the stage for all counties in the state of Florida to be able to assess their ability to respond to the coronavirus pandemic. The state implemented that full phase, full phase of Phase 1 openings on May the 18th, and they moved to Phase 2, of which where we're at currently, on June 5th of 2020. Our responsibility, as been mentioned before, is in three primary areas for Manatee County: the syndromic surveillance, epidemiology, and the outbreak decline, and the health care capability. These are the three main areas. We've consistently reported to you on these since Week Number 2. And I'd like to go to the next slide to begin talking about the mild range, the range of flu-like symptoms and COVID cases. All of this data, for those watching and for the board, comes from the Florida Department of Health Dashboard that's updated on a daily basis. You, as a citizen, can see this information by going to F L D O H and looking for the COVID red bar at the top of that page. You can click on the dashboard, and you have access to every report that we, as staff and the county commissioners, have. So you can see that since about mid-July, you can see that decline in these areas for the flu-like cases and the E R visits and COVID-like cases. However, you can see how high we were prior to that, and so, we have a role in our syndromic surveillance. The next slide is to go back over that. So we've been in that mild range, and item number one, ending August 24th yesterday, by trending downward over the last 14 days, both in the COVID-like illnesses and the influenza illnesses. Item number two, under epidemiology and the outbreak decline, if Diane will go to the next slide, shows you the 14-day running table we provide. And what's important to see is that this goes back 14 days, so back to August 11th, and we always compare every day for you the state of Florida and Manatee County. Now, originally, when the White House put out their guidelines for the coronavirus, they indicated that being at a 10 percent or below percent of total positive cases was a safe area to be working in. And so, if you recall, we were much higher back in late April and early May, as a matter of fact, in the 14 percent range, but we spent a period of time leading up to May 21st, a 14-day period, lowering our percentage below 10 percent. Consistent with the rest of the state, the numbers had gone up in July, in June and July. However, as I indicated, this is your 14-day look. If you look back 30 days, you'll see that on July 28th, right around that time period, our percent positive was 10.7. So we've kind of fluctuated between this small 2 tenths of a percent change from 10.7 up to 11 percent. And actually, today, because these are yesterday's numbers, when we get this information to you, we're always about one day behind. But today, we went from yesterday at 10.99, rounded up to 11 percent, but today's report shows 10.98 percent. Now, what's significant about that, Diane will go to the next slide, is that in this secondary area, we have that 0.2 tenths percent fluctuation, but this has been a flat pattern. We had not seen that before. So this is a good sign, I think. It's a flat pattern that we've been in at least 14 days, but however, this, as I said, goes back to the very tail end of July. Now, another important aspect that I believe Director Sauer will mention, as well as myself, is that the running weekly total, so the past seven days, we have been at about a 5 percent or just below. So that is very good. That means that we should start seeing, hopefully, if the trend continues, we should start to continue to see this inching a little bit downward. The state, however, it shot past us at a certain period of time in July, but they are reflective of the same thing we're seeing, and they're just barely inching downward. The next slide is our total overall report that we've started. This is our new shareable report. We've been using it for about two weeks now, and it provides the community with sort of an in summary report of various areas that are important. Here, I think part of the importance is that when you look back, I'm sorry, Diane, I'm going to have you go back on. If you look at item three, under the health care capability, we monitor the three hospitals, and we've seen a minor downward trend of COVID E R visits and of COVID ICU admits. It still fluctuates, because obviously, the E R visits and the ICU are not just for COVID patients, but you're seeing that correlation between that very slow downward trend. And then, again, one of the bright spots, at least, that has been for Manatee County was the early action that this board took to enhance the testing locally. And you are at now, as of yesterday, at 22.5 percent of the total population of 411,000 tested. Now, also, a new recent event here locally was antibody testing that's come to Lincoln Park and to U T C. And again, I'm sure Director Sauer is going to go over some of that. So, moving on, and you can move right past that shareable. Manatee County moved from being the 15th, we are the 15th most in population. We moved from 12 overall in our positive cases to 13, which was two position decreases since August 1st. So I checked that last night. We're still in that position. In Manatee County, we're still 10th overall in the number of tests completed, and the past seven days, as I mentioned, the rate has been going down. So, next slide. This is our reopening strategy, and I just want to focus you to August, which is highlighted. And I'm only going to cover a couple of things here. You've seen this numerous times. It's available online for anybody that would like to look at it in more detail, but our goal is to get to 23 percent of the community tested by the end of August, and to continue that 2 percent additional each month as they go along. We partner with the Department of Health in passing that information along. We are still doing as much as we can to maintain county staffing. We are at about, a little more than 75 percent of our staff have re-entered to their work sites. We have a lot of people in the field, and we're still obviously doing a lot of online work. A couple of things this week that we're planning to implement when we speak to the directors tomorrow is to open back up our outdoor recreation, which has, in most cases, all except for the basketball courts, been open. However, we'll move up to opening those up over the next seven to 14 days. However, there'll still be indicated signage for all the participants that they must not gather in more than groups of 10 on those courts, and that if there are spectators, they need to social distance or follow CDC guidelines for face coverings. And then, the most important parts that we've actively been working on have been the Manatee Cares Act responsibilities, and we have been reporting to you weekly on that. But just as a reminder, we are in the round two of all three areas in the categories that are listed here. The Manatee Cares Act for your community health and well-being. This is primarily your nonprofit agencies that have been doing work on behalf of citizens that are in the categories that need assistance. We're in round two of our Cares Act for the housing assistance, or what's called the HAP program, that's administered through redevelopment and economic opportunity, where individuals needing assistance with housing and personal areas can apply on their own through our neighborly portal online. And then, the other exciting area is our economic recovery, and we're in round two of that. It opened up on the 17th of August, and we are developing a dashboard, which you should see. If it's not up even today, it'll be up by the end of the week, where you can follow along with the applications approved, the amount of funds approved, the amount distributed, and the average length of time it takes for an individual to receive the assistance personally in coordination with the clerk's office, from the time we, the county, complete the eligibility of their application and submit it for payment. So that dashboard's ready to come up. We've been reviewing it to make sure that that data is positive, and I'll just throw out a number right now in the economic development area. I know we've had requests for over $8 million worth of assistance, and in our community health and well-being, we're, I believe, right around $6 million. As you recall, we have to, we've front-forwarded the 17.5 million, or one quarter, of the Cares Act money to be able to disburse. Our financial management department is working with all of the municipalities and the constitutionals that are under the government category, which is just 10 percent of the Cares Act, and those are starting to roll in as well. So, as, by the time we get to mid-September, you should see a considerable amount of that money back out in the community, and it will allow us to move on to the second area in October, where we can access the other $52 million that is available for Manatee County. Onto that next slide. On just in summary, I wanted to be quick and give you plenty of time to spend with Director Sauer. These were the three areas I wanted to cover. And our recommendation today on the next slide, again, would be to extend the local state of emergency for seven additional days. We'd like to continue to stay in line with the state of Florida, the governor's office extension that runs through September 8th at this time. We haven't heard of any changes at this particular time, but our requirement is to look at each seven days. Any questions?
Questions for Sherry. Carol?
Okay. So, the governor's extended till September 8th, and I guess he's also extended the bars being closed also, right? And yet, restaurants can have bars in them, and.
He's still under the Phase 2 guidelines.
So, we're under Phase 2, and maybe after the 8th, we could go to Phase 3? Maybe. So far, we haven't, but, okay. I like to get out information, and the food banks is really important to me. I talked to somebody here. Forgot. Was it you, Karen? Okay. No, no, it wasn't. It was Ava in the restroom. And last week, we had to turn the people away from Feeding Tampa Bay at the DeSoto Mall. We'd already served 2,000 cars there. This week, they worked till 7:30, and they got 2,000 out. Parish has something, Meals on Wheels has something. I know we got an email, and to me, that's not shareable on social media, or it's just an email. Is there any way that we could get some kind of better format to share these kind of things? Because these people are coming, and as we know, our unemployment went up a little bit. We're going to, we've said right along, we're going to start seeing some more issues in the next six months. So, I just want to keep the information out, and that would be you, correct?
Yeah. So let me, let me try to clarify what you're, you're wanting the information to flow out to the community about where they can go to receive food assistance, or you're concerned about a lack of food?
No. Food assistance and what days, because all of them are alternated, what times? Even if you, I guess if you put it on Manatee, your Facebook page, you can copy and paste it to everybody, or share it.
Of course. And, you know, we can continue to even expand more. We use all of them, we use all of our social media outlets, but we also use Nextdoor. We work with our neighborhood associations. We work with the newspapers, but we can certainly can look and see if there's any more extension to that that we can do. Flyers, we put out a lot of information. We have all the partners of individuals that we work with in the community, but we can continue to try to do a little more, certainly.
And just in one spot, like if you're going to do food banks, just if we could list them on what days they're going to be there, and.
Those are listed, and that, I mean, and you're going to say, not everybody has the access to the website, but yes, those are listed on our COVID page of Manatee County, and also the testing sites. You got to find that and click on that, but we'll take a look and see if it can be expanded.
Younger population uses, as you know, Instagram and Twitter. So, you know, Facebook page for Manatee County, I know I see them once in a while on Instagram, just so we can get it out to the young families and stuff.
Okay.
Thanks.
Certainly. Sherry, I wonder about the number of tests that are going on, and this is my assumption that the number of tests are going down, and that more people that are symptomatic are getting tested, but that's, tested, that's what I think, but I don't know the facts. Do we have any facts about the number of tests? Is it decreasing?
I think Director Sauer will go over that, but I'll make a comment before he walks up, and that is, and again, we're at 10,132 tests in our community, but, you know, also think about the weather. There's been a lot of problems with rain and hard to serve and get to places in the last few weeks, but Jake has some more trends to talk about specifically about the testing.
I didn't realize you were going to speak. I should have known better. All right, Jake? Go ahead.
Vanessa's.
Vanessa, did you want to ask Sherry something?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sherry, you mentioned about the governor and September the 8th, and that's coming right around the corner. I have not heard that the governor plans on extending the state of emergency. Maybe he is, but I haven't heard that. And you said that you didn't know anything of that either. So are we prepared, then, as a county, for September the 9th to turn around with no state of emergency?
Well.
What are you looking at there?
Well, we'd have to look, what we're suggesting, and what we've been trying to follow, is that the percentage, our total percent positive, needs to have significantly approved over a 14-day period. So when you think about the timing right now for the 8th, we're coming, getting closer, but we have not started that drastic downward trend, you know, the 14-day trend. We might be in it. Like I indicated, we're just a tiny bit less today than we were yesterday. We're seeing that overall seven-day average reducing, and that tells you that we will reduce, so it could happen. I don't know, the governor's office, in the past, we were not informed when things were going to change. We were, just like everyone else, we would get the executive order. So, we watch each day. We stand ready for that. I can't really give you anymore. I apologize. That's about as far as I can go on that.
Well, what I was going to say, and the reason I ask, is because it seems to me that we really don't have a criteria in mind about what that figure needs to be for this board to release the state of emergency and all the other things that go along with that. So, that's why I was asking, because, you know, what is the number? Is it 10 percent? Is it going to be 9 percent, 8 percent? I mean, you know, you guys need to decide, not you, Sherry, I'm talking about the board here. You know, y'all need to come up and have a plan for the residents as to what we're going to need in order to feel that we're at that number. And Sherry, that's why I was asking you, because I know that, you know, I realize in conversations that I've had with you where you are on this, but it is something that I think is going to be happening fairly quickly, and so, we need to have that discussion sooner or later, because sooner or later, we have to let go of this. That's what I meant.
I'm just a little confused, because I want to make sure I can clarify then.
I'm not surprised.
So, we, you just presented what the governor's plan says we have to achieve, which is this 14-day reduction, and that's what the parameters are that we're weighing this on. So I don't understand your question.
Would you like me to be a little bit more explicit? I can, if you'd like.
I want to make sure that I can get out clear what I think it is. You said you don't think there is one. She just said there was one. There's a 14-day that we're looking for this trend to go down. Isn't that what you just said? So that's what we're basing it on.
I do realize, Madam Chair, that according to what we have been going through with this pandemic, that the governor did come out with a plan, and actually, it started from DC, actually, is where it came from originally. And then, the governor went along with it, and so have we. But that's not to say that when the state of emergency expires, that we are still having to continue on with these phases. So that's why I was asking the question. I didn't know where this board was on that, because it's not something that we've discussed. So I understand, Madam Chair, what you're saying, but I don't think you understand where I'm taking it. My reason for asking.
Let me just ask, so I can clarify. So what you're saying is, even though the governor said you're going to meet this 14-day, and. and now the assumption is the governor's gonna change and have something different, and we're gonna follow that? Or we're just gonna do our own thing and not have this?
Well, I think the way you worded it is very, very, to me, that's very clear. That is my question. If the governor does not renew the state of emergency September the 8th, where are we going, where are we, as a county, going to be? And that is a decision that this board needs to decide. And I really haven't heard any discussion other than to try and continue on with the phases that the governor has had in the past and that the president had in the past. But come September 8th, all that kind of changes, doesn't it? Perhaps. If he doesn't renew it, is what I'm saying.
I don't know.
And let me just add one more thing before Director Sauer comes up. One of the concerns we did have prior to coming in today was that the school district was opening and going to have, you know, some options, a hybrid options for the students. And so we're about a week into, just over a week or so, you know, with the school district. And we're watching that as well, to make sure that doesn't have a local impact. We get statistics on the pediatric and youth and children numbers. And so far, it seems to be going pretty well. So I think, you know, if you're asking staff from the staff standpoint, what we've tried to do is stick with the original guidelines, which, as Commissioner Ball mentioned, in the governor and in the White House's initial coronavirus guidelines was if you're at 10% or below in your total percent positives, then you should be doing pretty well.
And since you brought up the kids, because I was gonna wait until after Jake spoke. Because we do know, I mean, I only know what I read in the paper, that many, many schools have cases. So my presumption is those cases that have been identified positives, I assume, that they're, in fact, part of this overall number. And I don't remember what the number was.
They are. And Jake may have. If he doesn't, I, back at my chair, I have the specifics on the pediatrics. But I can tell you that on yesterday's call for pre-K through 12, or excuse me, let me start with daycare. On daycare centers, we, the Department of Health had reported four cases so far. Got it. Thank you. On pre-K through 12, there were five cases as of last week when school started. And then the overall, the overall post-secondary group was an area they were studying. They are doing contact tracing. And they didn't have a good number on that yet. But that's also now where things have started. So again, I think over the next couple of weeks, you'll start to see more happening in those areas.
And also, it could be teachers, even though the article doesn't say. It says cases in the paper, but it doesn't identify whether they're kids or they're teachers or workers at school. So that could be...
The ones that I mentioned were PD, or, I'm sorry. I'm talking about younger kids. But they were, they were the actual child cases. But as you indicated, the others, I do not have numbers on those today. Jake might.
All right. And do we happen to know how long it's taking? How old is this information? We know school's been back in for...
That information was from yesterday, the 24th.
But do we know how old the tests are? Because, so my question is, so school's been in place for a week. Do we really know what the impact is with schools being open? I mean, does it take, I mean, it was taking more than a week just to get results back, so.
Right. I think that's, those are important questions. I couldn't answer the exact number of days, although they've been back to school a week. Doesn't indicate whether it was on the first day or the last day they reported.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I can step aside. I can stay up here. And Mr. Sauer?
Go ahead, Reggie.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I'm clear where Commissioner Ball is going as far as our criteria that came from the president's office and the governor. The 14 consecutive days of 10% and below, am I...
Of a down, a trajectory of a downward trend, but at 10% or below.
So let me just clear up from my understanding. We're, let's say we're at 10%. And now we have to have 14 consecutive days of a downward trend?
No. No, we need to get to 10%.
I know we're not at 10%, I'm just saying, for example. But once we get, we have to have 14 consecutive days downward. Right now, we're steady. From what I see, is at 11%.
Right. We're close to being flat. Like I said, just a twinge of hope that we're starting the downward trend. Because as you look at the last seven-day average, I think it'll be right around 4.7%. So that's gonna start to impact our overall percent positives. And I think you're just sort of starting to see it at both the county level and at the state level, you know, as you watch that. That would, we would go back and we would start our downward trajectory. But if we hit 10% before it was 14 days, we would have met that other criteria.
Right. And that's where we are. We haven't hit neither one of them just yet. I think the reality in respect to what she's saying is September 9th comes, what's next for this board?
Yes.
And I think that's the discussion that we may need to look at. I know we didn't set our own criteria. And I'm not necessarily sure are you expecting or requesting for us to set our own criteria. But I do think we need to have something, because the community is going to want to know, okay, now on September 8th, if the state of emergency is lifted from the state, what's next for Manatee County? And that's the way. Am I looking at it the wrong way, Madam Chair?
No, I, I mean, first of all, we're talking two weeks out, right? So we got two weeks. Do we have a meeting?
No.
September?
We have, our next meeting, we have a work session on the 31st and a meeting on the 14th, which is the first budget hearing.
That is where I was...
And a regular meeting on the 15th.
That is exactly where I was going, Madam Chair.
That's why I was trying to figure out timelines.
Just looking at the calendar, just looking at the calendar, we are about to run into a gray area after September 8th if we don't kind of get in front of it a little bit.
I mean, best-case scenario, September, is it the 7th or the 8th? Best-case scenario, we do have...
Special meeting.
A special meeting? And we can follow the governor's directive? I mean, that's the best-case scenario, right? And we have the trends following? You know, for the next two weeks, things are improving? You know, that's certainly a possibility that that could happen, right?
Thank you, Reggie.
Well...
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Reggie.
Just, just... Okay, and I want to, and maybe Jake is gonna answer this. But are we still at a point, what's the testing turnaround time?
That's what I asked, too.
Did we get an answer, or we don't have an answer?
Not yet.
Okay, maybe we'll wait for Jake to answer. We'll go from there.
Carol.
Okay, Sherri. Sherri, before, well, thank you for wiping it down, though. My, you know, as my city's been doing it for ages. And they, they're overboard from what we're doing. And then I think Braintree Beach is following our ordinance. Annanaria is doing whatever they're doing. City of Braintree just makes you put a sign up. Palmetto is following ours. Okay. So when we do this, then the cities either, the ones that are following us will do what we do, or they will do their own thing, correct, for home rule?
Correct.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because, you know, it's, I've been doing this a long time, unfortunately. Mine was the first one. So, okay, thanks.
You might want to just clarify, because Carol was a little, I mean, she was talking about the mask ordinance. She never said it.
My city of home speech has its own...
People might not have known what you were talking about.
Let me finish, okay. Has its own ordinance. The city of Annanaria has their own resolution. I think their resolutions. City of Braintree, they did something, but then they just decided to follow us. So they're under our resolution. Palmetto is under our resolution. And Braintree, City of Braintree did their own thing, correct? Jake, you know that.
Yes.
Okay. So, but they are all home rules. So they can do whatever they want. So they could follow us or not, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so September 9th, if whatever changes, I, I mean, September 8th, you said? Whenever it is, the day after, I ask to have a special meeting to get all this resolved, one way or the other. Unless he keeps it the same, then I guess we should wait until the next meeting to decide what we're gonna do.
Commissioners Jake Sauer, Director of Public Safety, for the record. I just want to clear some things up with the local state of emergency, the governor's declaration of emergency, and a mask covering resolution.
I meant resolution.
Okay. The mask covering resolution uses a vehicle as the local state of emergency that we have in place. You can do whatever you would like with that local resolution regarding mask coverings. I can tell you in talking to the state, Florida Department of Emergency Management, I don't suspect the governor's declaration of a state of emergency to go away. But that's, those two are not tied together. You can do whatever you'd like with that resolution. I would recommend you continue the local state of emergency. Even, even a week ago, we used the local state of emergency to make emergency purchase powers. And that's what we keep that in place for. PPE for our first responders, hospitals, and such. Okay, so I'll get started. Next slide. So, good afternoon, commissioners. I'm here to provide you with an overview of how the COVID-related data and trends and what has changed with my last update 14 days ago. And while at that time, we had started to see signs of a decline or flattening in some of our trends, we have since seen the positive benefits of a mandatory face mask resolution, which, as you know, was passed on July 27th. Our numbers have continued to move in the right direction since then. And with the past presentation, let me remind you that all the data is prepared based on the 11:00 AM data from the Florida Department of Health produced yesterday. The state of Florida now has 596,511 total positive cases and 10,397 COVID-induced fatalities. This is an increase in positive case counts by over 59,550 people and an increase in deaths by over 2,120 people since I last reported out. Next slide. The percent positive rate continues to decrease from levels in July. And the number of new hospitalizations has also decreased. EMS reports six calls per day in the last week related to COVID-19, which is down significantly from the peak. Eight people have now utilized the non-congregate sheltering shelter to date. The Manatee County Emergency Operations Center remains at a Level 2 activation for COVID and will remain in this posture for the foreseeable future. Next slide. And talking about positives and fatalities, as you'll see on this slide, the graph shows the number of cases per date, as well as a seven-day average, which smooths out outliers in the data to show a trend. If we look at data from July 11th onward, we can see a noteworthy decrease in positive cases. We had just begun to see the early signs of a decrease or plateau around the time of the resolution to approve a mask mandate. And since that day, we have continued to see a steady decline, which we hope to attribute to the mask mandate, as well as other diligent hygiene and social distancing behaviors of our residents. And this is a welcome change to see. Manatee County now has 10,100 positive cases and 248 deaths. And this is an increase in positive case counts by approximately 855, or eight and a half percent, and an increase in deaths by 21 persons, or 8.4% since I last updated you. When looking across the whole state, Manatee had maintained the 11th position in the state for much of the time since the COVID-19 outbreak began, but fell to the 13th place on July 26th. And we've remained in that position since. Those counties with more cases than Manatee include Dade, Broward, Palm Beach, Hillsborough, Orange, Duval, Pinellas, Lee, Polk, Collier, Osceola, and Escambia. Next slide. When looking at fatality data by date, it is clear to see that there have been two distinct surges in fatalities, with the first peak occurring in mid-April and the second beginning in mid-July. While numbers have dropped off recently, it is important to note that the death reporting often takes several weeks or longer to make its way into the Florida Department of Health database. So the data for the most recent weeks will likely be updated as new deaths are added to the database. Next slide. As shown on Slide 6, the county's overall median age has held the same at 39 years of age, while the state's median age has risen to 41 years of age. The age group with the most positive cases in Manatee County continues to be people 25 to 34. The male and female positive cases continue to be fairly similar, with females making up approximately 53% of local cases. Of the positive case count where the patient's race is known, Caucasians comprise 66% of the total. African-Americans comprise 14%. And all of the races comprise 20% of the total cases. Next slide. As we look back over the past two weeks, we saw no significant change in the case counts coming from the three highest-hit ZIP codes. As in previous reports, 34208 accounts for 17.6% of the total cases. 34221 accounts for 15.1%. And 34203 accounts for 11.8% of the total positive cases. Again, making these three ZIP codes dominate the total number of overall cases. Next slide. This graph, as well as all the following graphs, provide us with an opportunity to look at data for the date since the resolution regarding face coverings went into effect, which was July 27th. Here, we can see a sharp decline in the normal total number of cases reported each day, as well as the seven-day running average of new cases since the resolution went into effect. We can contribute this to the mask resolution, more public awareness of masks, and more acceptance of wearing a face covering when out in public. Next slide. In the graph on Slide 9, the bars represent the percentage of local tests that are positive for COVID-19 each day since July 27th. And the line is a seven-day running average. The goal is to keep the percentage positive below 10%, which is represented by the thick red line. Manatee County continues to see a decrease in the percentage of tests that are returning positive positive, and remains below this benchmark, another sign of improving conditions within our community. As of yesterday, there are ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and three Manatee County residents that have tested positive for COVID-19, and that's over twenty-two percent of our estimated population, which exceeds the Florida Department of Health goal of testing two percent of our population every month. I'm sorry, ninety-two thousand residents that have tested for COVID-19, not positive. The overall percent positive test rate, when viewed since March first, is ten point nine nine percent. When looked at from an overall testing period of the last sixty or so days, we have gone from a positive testing rate of nine point six one percent at the end of July, climbed to twelve point four percent by July ninth, and before starting to see a steady decline beginning around July twentieth. Three weeks ago, when I touched upon testing numbers at each of the state and locally-run testing sites, I mentioned how we had started to see a slight decline in the number of people being tested each day. This has continued to become even more of a trend. The testing demand we saw in previous months has waned significantly in the recent weeks, so please continue to promote the different avenues for testing that are being provided locally. And this slide provides data surrounding the environment at our local hospitals in recent days. A peak in the number of persons hospitalized with COVID-19 occurred in late July. Looking at the graphs, we see that since July twenty-seventh, when the mask ordinance was enacted, we see a significant decrease in the number of COVID-19 patient, patient positives, both in the county hospitals and intensive care units. On July twenty-seventh, there were a hundred and forty-two people positive for COVID-19 in our hospitals. Yesterday, there were only forty-three, with no new cases added for that day, one of the first times ever since the beginning of this. While one case is too many, the signs have been trending positively in our hospitals as well. At the peak of the COVID-19 outbreak locally, the situation was very grim, and as the available hospital beds quickly dwindled down to zero. The next line. We see that since the beginning of August, the number of hospital beds and ICU beds have not approached zero once again. That is also a sign of things improving in our local hospital system. As with other data points covered already, our hospital system continues to reap the benefits of the mask resolution that was implemented a month ago. Manatee County has seen a total of seven hundred and twelve hospitalizations associated with COVID-19 since March first, with seventy-nine new hospitalizations since my last update. There are a total of five fire EMS personnel with different levels of exposure, none of those two are in self-isolation or are being quarantined. And additionally, EMS is reporting a downward trend in the number of average calls per day related to COVID-19, and we hope this trend continues. Excellent. A number of testing sites, both drive-through and walk-up, remain available for residents to utilize. Lincoln Park and Pomado offers a walk-up site that operates from seven AM to four PM daily. MCR Health has done a marvelous job at providing testing for residents, with over twenty-three thousand people being tested at their facilities across the county. And the Florida Department of Health continues to provide testing at mobile home parks, migrant camps in the area. Excellent. The drive-through site at the UTC Mall that is operated by the National Guard, and the state-sponsored walk-up site at the Home Depot on Cortez Road also continue to operate as well. It's important to note, we're in talks with the state right now, and Elliot Fauchon and the CVB to move the Lincoln Park site over to this area in the northwest corner, because construction will soon start at Lincoln Park, so we're making forward plans, and as that occurs, we'll definitely let you know. Next slide. As we have now seen for a hundred and seventy-five days of the EOC briefing activated, this slide is a reminder of the efforts of the emergency management team in coordinating resource requests from partners across the community. As I mentioned before, each one of these items, which totals almost seven hundred thousand logistical items, has come through our public safety department for distribution by the emergency management team, including over twenty new missions since I last spoke to you fourteen days ago. Excellent. Going forward, especially with the start of the school year next week, or this week, our goal as a community must be to continue our efforts towards increasing education on effectiveness of masks, proper hygiene, and social distancing, and especially for our younger populations. And the Mask Up Manatee Coalition is working on new messaging this week, as the school board has found those that are sick or exhibiting signs of COVID-19 are still coming to school. So we're asking, we're pushing that out to our partners, that if they are sick, feel sick, they should stay home from school. Manatee County will continue to test two percent of our estimated population, and we will continue to work with Manatee County Department of Health to identify targeted testing needs in local underserved areas, and work closely with the Florida Department of Emergency Management, and the State Department of Health to determine best methods to test those areas. Emergency Management Division, along with PIO Nickazera, and our Department of Health Manatee Team continue to find ways to increase targeted messaging where available. And as we begin to see a light at the end of this tunnel, the public needs to remain vigilant with following all CDC guidance regarding proper hygiene, social distancing, and you continue to wear face coverings when in public and unable to socially distance. Wearing a mask remains the number-one way the public can help stop the spread of COVID-19. With that, I would recommend to the chair to continue the local state of emergency for another seven days. Questions?
Thank you. Questions? Carol?
Good, I saw it on the news last night, and it's the first time, well, I guess it is the first time that we've had zero admissions, zeros deaths, maybe not zero deaths, but admissions together, so I, I was very happy to see that, because obviously, whether you believe it or not, some, we've done something right. But I have a question, the antibody testing, and I see that there's two sites doing it. It's like a false sense of security, because that test just shows if you've had COVID, which is great, because then you can give plasma if you want. But if you're, if you're COVID-positive, and you go get the antibody test, and that test does not show that, correct?
It could possibly show antibodies. It does not tell you when you have it, or if you actively-
Right. So, I mean, you could have it asymptomatic-
Correct.
-and be giving it. I, at one point, they were recommending, because they were saying it wasn't, well, it isn't that accurate, to show if you have it presently at that time, that you recommend you get the nasal swab either, but you, have you heard anything from the, the state emergency operations on that, to make that, it more accurate? So that if you're going for an antibody test, also have the nasal swab?
Yeah, so if, if, at the state testing sites, if you test positive for an antibody test, and they put you through the gold standard swab to also test you.
Oh, so there, they'll do the nasal swab?
Correct.
Okay, because our news person didn't say that, thus, so that's good to know. I actually, my job, I have to get it every two weeks, so, because around patients and stuff. And that, those results come back in, like, thirty hours. They send it off FedEx somewhere, so there are private labs that are doing it also, and hopefully, everybody's reporting it like they're supposed to be doing to the state. I, I'm very, very happy that we're finally starting to see, you know, whoever thought we'd get this high in positives? I remember we were all, like, freaking out when we had a hundred and fifty positives, and that, that was in May, so it's so good to see that there's a downward trend, and I'm, I know we're all relieved from that. Where I work, seven people in an office, five of them were positive, and three just returned back yesterday. They've been out for two weeks, very sick. Two, one's asymptomatic still, but it's still positive, and the other one's been real sick. So, not, none of them required hospitalization, but they were all medical people. So, and that's just down the street here, and they're a medical provider, so, you know, but I am hearing less people being positive, so that's a good thing. Thanks.
Okay, other questions? Comments? All right, Misty?
Yes, hi, thank you. Jake, great presentation, once again. I have a question about when the deaths are added to our numbers. Is it at the signing of the death certificate? Is that when the death then becomes tracked?
No, ma'am.
It does.
So it is at the time of death?
No.
Okay.
So, it, it's gonna, it's going, they just changed the guidelines, and I, I am not the expert to speak on that. But now that the, the state has changed the guidelines, in some cases, a hospital will indicate whether it's a COVID-19 death. In other cases, it's the primary physician, and then cases where neither one can make a determination, it goes to the medical examiner. Now, when that goes in is dependent upon when they make that determination.
So it varies.
It does.
Thank you.
Carol? I was gonna bring this up. I serve on the State Medical Examiners Commission, and we're the ones that changed that policy, and I was gonna, the, the news is aware of it, kind of, but what has happened since this has been declared an emergency by the state, it falls under FEMA's, which is the Emergency Moratorium Operations Response System. So anybody that was related to a COVID diagnosis, a medical examiner had to sign the certificate. So when you heard Dr. Vegas asking for help the other day for staffing, we had our state medical examiners meeting a couple of weeks ago, and like Miami Dade had six hundred and fifty cases in the, that were in the morgue, that couldn't be buried, because they were waiting for them to sign off. Five hundred and ten in Palm Beach, hundred in Broward, a hundred cases in the Panhandle, and many more, plus us. So what the state medical examiners did, they don't take those cases. Now, a physician, like Jake said, in the hospital, can go ahead and sign the death certificate now. And the state medical examiners, I mean, the medical examiners throughout the state have to finish those cases, but after that, it won't go for this one event, this one state of emergency, because it lasted so long. Actually, the physicians can sign the death certificate, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, and I got the actual motion, I'll send it to all you guys.
So-
Okay.
So, so basically, yeah, that's-
That was the backlog.
So basically, what's being said, if we're at two forty-eight now, we're not necessarily sure whether that number could be higher, because there's a process to identify whether or not individuals have actually transitioned due to COVID. So it's possible we could be looking at more.
You'd see a spike, but then eventually, it drastically go down, like, just think, Miami Dade has six hundred and fifty in the morgue that hadn't been buried yet-
Right.
-and haven't had that death certificate.
Okay, do you have our count for Manatee County?
We have, Dr. Vegas has help now. He, he hired a retired, because you had to be a certified, they went and brought medical students, but they weren't certified pathologists, they couldn't do it. They could only answer the phone, which was ridiculous. So, once this all gets, you may see a bump. Remember, we saw like thirty-five one night, we all freaked out. I don't know how many he had in backlog, but it's all, it's a, it's a problem all over the state. But it will be resolved.
We do not know where Manatee County is, as far as the number-
So-
Maybe Jake does.
Typically, deaths are a very late lag indicator. What we look for is a spike, and then with, with the spike, we know deaths are coming later. We've hit our spike, we're on the downward trend. So when we look at deaths, we've brought most of those up in current, and now whether he has a little bit of a backlog left, I do not know, but our spike occurred much earlier, our deaths have, have since accounted for that.
They just haven't caught up yet.
So, we really don't know, but there might be more. We don't know how much, we don't know when. It is, it's a number, I mean, it's just very difficult to track.
And it's been pretty much that way all along.
Yeah, I think you're probably right. We don't really know, it's a number. Let me ask about schools, because this is, again, just to clarify the situation. So we have a mask resolution. Our mask resolution doesn't apply in public schools?
Yes, ma'am.
So our mask resolution is being-
Wait a minute, the county attorney's saying no.
Yeah, I don't think so. I, I asked the county attorney that, so I'm sorry, I should-
They did their own.
Do, do they have a mask requirement? Yes.
Yeah, I'm sure Scott Hope did.
Our resolution, because I asked this question, I have it in writing, the answer from county attorney, does not apply to public schools, as I understand it. Now, public schools, I don't know, honestly, I don't recall exactly what the school board adopted, but I believe the school board, and, and I'll ask you this question, Jake, does the school board require, in public schools, that kids wear masks?
Yes, with, with some exceptions.
Okay. How about private schools? You know, we all got that email about a private school. Are they required to have masks by our resolution?
No.
Okay. So a private school does not have to have a mask?
Not pursuant to your resolution.
Okay, okay. All right. So do you know, at some point, if the schools, you know, again, I just, I just know what I read in the paper, schools are having all these cases, or all these, I shouldn't say all these cases, all these different schools, there was a list, I don't know, Reggie, how many, but I'd say about ten?
Nine.
Yeah, about ten that I saw in the paper, nine, ten, are having cases. Will they do something about that? I mean, do they, does it not make any difference? Do they say, if the schools have a, if every school has cases, does it matter? I, I don't know the significance of this.
So the school board has done a, and I, I don't want to speak for the school board-
I know, I'm, I'm just looking for information.
But I've seen how they've, they've approached this, and it's been pretty remarkable. They have an, an emergency operations center themselves-
Right.
-set up at the school board-
Okay.
-where they monitor who has tested positive, who has come in contact significantly for an exposure to that person, that child, or staff member, and then they take those out of the play. So, and that's, that's been working fairly quickly. That's how, within the week of the school's been open, you've seen these schools with positives. That emergency operations center is getting those positives, finding out who they've been with, they're doing their own contact tracing to eliminate them from the school board system.
Okay. All right, so we don't expect to see a big community spread from schools. Is that a fair statement, or do we not know?
I don't think anybody can comfortably say that.
Okay, okay. It, it just, you know, we're, we're one week into schools at this point. We know they've been identified cases, we know a lot of people are in schools altogether. You know, they're doing the best they can, I get that. I just don't know what kind of impact, if we're trying to look ahead, whether we should be looking at something, but I guess the answer is, none of us know. Vanessa?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I mean, we can sit here, and we can talk about the schools, and what's going on at all the schools, but the bottom line is, we don't control the schools. Our, our resolution has nothing to do with the schools, that's the school board. And, and I think Jake is right, I think so far, they're doing an excellent job, they seem to be controlling things fairly well, and, and I think that right now, we need to concern ourselves more with the average resident, you know, that, that we work with, and let the school board do their job. I mean, I think they're doing a great job at this point, so I'll, I'll be honest with you, I'm glad we're not the school board. I would hate to have that responsibility-
I would agree with you a hundred percent there.
-at this point, so, and that's why I'm kind of like, you know what, let's, let's let them be. They're doing a great job.
I, I'm just trying to figure out, and I, the answer is, nobody knows, but I'm just trying to figure out what kind of impact that might have on our community, but from what I've heard, we have no idea how to tell. Reggie?
Well, I, I think the reality of it, the reality of it is, we do not have any jurisdiction over the school.
Oh, where?
However, the individuals that attend the school are still our constituents, and people that we serve, and I'm obviously quite clear, I'm very close to a lot of teachers and a lot of students, and there's a lot of concern out there, and people are scared, for whatever reason. I mean, everybody have their own thoughts and everything, and reality of what's going on, but people are very, very concerned, and no one wants to, you know, walk in that area and, and, and address what's going on with the schools, with the teachers, the administrators, and I know we shouldn't, and we couldn't, because we are, that's not our jurisdiction.
Have anything to do with it.
And we don't have anything to do with it, but I do have a lot to do with, with, with students and teachers that are neighbors and friends. So I, I, I understand that the political part of it, but I, I don't think we walk around acting like we are in a, in a bubble, and that we do not have friends, I mean, just adopt a teacher, love a teacher. There's still, we, we have a sense of responsibility for them, but I, I agree with you, Commissioner, but we can't do anything about it.
No, it's sad.
Right, it's very sad.
I mean, it's sad, but it's the truth.
We got parents, and we're in charge of the, the parents are over us.
Well, I think, I think, you know, who's in charge of the schools has been made pretty clear in the state of Florida. But, uh, Misty?
Was that political?
It might have been a tad.
I'm not gonna touch that. So I, I just want to share something with you that Dr. Hope's shared with me, and as you know, he is a school board member, he is an epidemiologist, and what he said to me is, we have fifty thousand kids in the school district, and each one of those kids has touches, physically touches, you know, five to ten people in their daily lives. So that's why Manatee County should be concerned about the school system, not because we regulate them-
Right.
-but because they are, those children are very much a part of our community, and, and this virus could spread from them if it wasn't really controlled well at the schools, but hopefully it is.
Okay. Sherry, you ahead on-
I just wanted to clarify for the board that on August the eleventh, the school district revised their policy eighty-four fifty that passed, which covers face coverings. It goes through their original policy, and they made some revisions to it, it's outlined in that policy. Like, we can post that, but it does provide for breaks for students wearing, and teachers wearing face masks, or persons who may be unable to wear them, and so they got a little bit deeper into their clarification, but they have their own procedure, or their own policy, it's eighty-four fifty.
Okay. All right, thank you for that information. All right, we have a request from the, to extend the state of emergency for a week. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. I have a number of people that I presume want to talk to that a little bit, at least closely related, so I'll take public comment at this time. I'm gonna call your name as they were signed up and given to me. Kevin Caldwell was the first person signed up to speak. Please go to the podium, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to address this item. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kevin Caldwell, I'm a thirty-five-year-old resident, lifetime resident of Manatee County. I was born in Manatee Memorial, graduated Pomado High, and I grew up in Pomado Point, and I now live in parish with my wife and our four daughters. And I'm not here today to discuss the validity of wearing a mask or its efficacy, but I'm simply here to offer a different point of view. As you know, Manatee County has a history of being somewhat of a hotspot for drug usage, overdoses, and deaths, especially those under the age of forty, and from the time I graduated high school in two thousand and three, until October of two thousand and nine, I was heavily addicted to prescription pain pills and alcoholic myself. I accepted my first invitation to attend a church service in August of two thousand and nine. I came to church, and I was warmly greeted by people, we sang, shook hands, and worshiped God as a family, just as the Bible intended us to, to do so. On October ninth, in the second pew of Suncoast Baptist Church, I heard the preaching from the word of God that transformed my life, and that night, I realized my condition before a holy God repented and became a Christian, my life has never been the same. Had COVID-19, social distancing, and mask mandates been a reality then, I can tell you beyond a shadow of a doubt, I would not have attended that, that, that church service. I would not be standing here today, the thirty-five-year-old husband and productive resident of, of Manatee County. Instead, the only information you would have of Kevin Caldwell would have been just another Manatee County youth who became another drug-related death statistic. The twenty-three-year-old me would not have attended church if I had to wear a mask, I would not have been able to have the personal counseling from my pastor, which guided me to the truth. I would not have watched church online, I would have brushed off the invitation and continued to my, my destructive lifestyle until it overtook me. For me, being in a physical church surrounded by people, not wearing masks was essential to my life. I'm not downplaying COVID-19, or assuming that your intentions are ill-willed, but I'm saying a church is not a retail store or a restaurant. There needs to be a provision in the ordinance for houses of worship. Why? Not because I'm inconvenienced or I'm uncomfortable, but because there are other twenty-three-year-old me's out there who need the truth preached to them, not behind a mask and in person, and counseling that is not separated by six feet or plexiglass barriers. Do I wear a mask in Walmart? Yes. Do I wear a mask to walk into Popee? Sure. But a church isn't a retail store, and a church is not a restaurant. I'm merely asking you to make a provision for all houses of worship to peacefully assemble in the free exercise of religion, as protected in the First Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Zimmerman, to be followed by Robert Lombardia.
Thank you. As stated, my name is Richard Zimmerman, and I'm residing in Pomado, Florida. First, I'd like to say that I fully understand that we are living in a seemingly difficult
Thank you. As stated, my name is Richard Zimmerman, and I'm residing in Palmetto, Florida. First, I'd like to say that I fully understand that we are living in a seemingly difficult time, and all of us are trying to do what is right for Manatee County concerning COVID-19. Our county commissioners and public officials are being asked to make tough decisions and impact all of our community. I believe in local government, and I pray for their wisdom. With that being said, I believe we have missed the most important principle when making these decisions. That core principle is how we as people view our religious institutions and our right to freely assemble. To tag places of worship onto the end of a list of businesses, along with no provision for the right of those to assemble to protest, is inappropriate and lacks the priority to which our founding documents deemed them. When considering any law, mandate, or resolution, religious institutions and the right to freely assemble should always be the first priority, not because of one's belief or religion, but rather the impact these rights have on our society. Freedom of religion and the right to assemble is what protects the rights of those who worship and those who assemble to protest. There is a reason it is the very First Amendment. Our founding fathers understood it is the single most important right and freedom given to us by God. This freedom has shaped our country, our state, and the cities of our county. Our places of worship and our rights to assemble should never be an afterthought, but rather the foundation of our governing. This is not about an anti-mask movement, but rather the protection of houses of worship and the freedom to assemble. I am requesting that the mask mandate be revisited to establish an exemption for houses of worship and public assemblies. In closing, I'd like to say to all of us, but especially to those who have the responsibility and privilege to uphold personal freedom and choice, the steps taken have not lessened the effect of COVID-19. What you have done is given those who hold your office in the future an example on how to infringe on our rights, such as taking a late-night walk, a family boat ride down the river, or the choice whether or not to wear a mask. The stars have aligned this time for giving you the power to mandate these things, but I ask you, what happens when the stars align for those who have animosity towards religion or freedom to assemble? We do not want this for our county, we can and do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Lombardia, to be followed by Jamie Gardner.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Sean Lombardia, and I am a pastor of Sunrise Baptist Church. I stand here today representing the church and the people of Sunrise. The congregation and I of Sunrise Baptist Church stand behind Pastor Joel Tillis fully in regards for the religious exemption to the mask mandate. If I may recite a passage from the Book of Hebrews, chapter 13, verse 17. Obey them that have the rule over you, and submit yourselves, for they watch over your souls, as they that must give an account, that they may do it with joy and not with grief, for that is unprofitable for you. This verse deals specifically with the pastor and his role and authority within the church. The verse states that a pastor will give an account personally as to how his church was led. More importantly, the authority is his and his alone. Commissioners, the house of God is not a, is not and should not be lumped or gathered with other businesses. The house of God is not a business, nor is the role of a pastor a job. The role of a pastor is a calling put on a man's heart by God Himself. I have no doubt that you are trying to do what is best for your county and the people that live in it. I am very thankful for that, and very thankful for you, as I am a resident of this great county. We have and will continue to pray for you, that you will hear the words from the people today and do what is right in God's eyes and in the best interest of the people you serve. The house of God is not a place where you go to purchase goods, eat a nice meal, but a place of refuge for people. The house of God is not a place where the same mandates apply as to Walmart. It says in Hebrews, chapter 9, verse 27, "And as it is appointed unto men, once to die, but after this the judgment." This verse simply states that I, myself, one day will give an account to a righteous and holy God of what I did, what I said, and what I decided today to do for the cause of Jesus Christ. This verse also states that you too will stand and give an account before a righteous and holy God of what you did, and what you said, and what you decide today for the cause of Jesus Christ. I am deeply honored to stand here today in front of you, Commissioners, and I thank you for your time and your service to this great county. I am asking that you will apply a religious exemption to the mask mandate. Thank you again for your time, and may the Lord richly bless you.
Thank you. Jamie Gardner, to be followed by the Reverend Joel Tillis.
Hello, my name is Jamie Gardner, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I appreciate your consideration of our objection to churches being included in the mask resolution. To be clear, I do not agree with mandating the use of masks in general, but that is not why I'm here to object to. It is the mandating of anything that affects the way that the church is allowed to operate. The First Amendment of the Constitution states, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion, or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the right of the people peacefully to assemble." The inclusion of the church in the mask resolution is a clear violation of our First Amendment rights. The word of God commands us to assemble as a local congregation. It commands us to worship the Lord with singing, to lift up our voices, to make a loud noise. Congregational singing, choir specials, public prayer, preaching, counseling, breaking of bread and fellowship, communion, all of these things are affected by having to wear a mask. While the mask may be a good idea, and our people may choose to wear them, it is not the government's place to dictate to us what we will do in our worship services. Most importantly, it sets a very dangerous precedent. If we allow the government to tell us what we will wear, I have no doubt that they will one day try to tell us how close together we can sit, how many people can attend, how we can sing or not sing, and if we can even hold services. All of these things are taking place in our country right now. With all due respect, I stand here today to make it known, we will not comply with your mandates. The Bible states, "It is better to obey God rather than men," and that is what we intend to do, but I am here today to humbly ask that you not put us in that position. We are thankful for the foresight that our forefathers had to recognize that the church is not a business, and it is not to be regulated as such. We are thankful that Governor DeSantis deemed churches to be essential early on, but I contend that we are essential whether the state recognizes that or not. The Bible says, "He that believeth on the Son hath everlasting life, and he that believeth not the Son shall not see life, but the wrath of God abideth on him." The only hope for mankind is the gospel of Jesus Christ, and all we are asking for is the freedom to exercise our religion without government interference. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Joel Tillis, to be followed by Kevin Wright.
Honorable Commissioners, my name is Reverend Joel Tillis, I'm the senior pastor of Suncoast Baptist Church, and I represent today the people of Suncoast Baptist Church, a church and a people who today, because of the mask resolution, have less right to meet and worship than they do to eat at a Hungry Howie's. I do not call into question the intent of your mask resolution. I truly believe you want safety and what is best for our county, but I do call into question the unintended consequences of the decision, consequences that have inflicted unnecessary difficulty and strain on one of this nation's most sacred institutions, and that is houses of worship, be it a church, a synagogue, or mosque. The resolution redefined houses of worship fundamentally to be no more sacred than a Walmart or a Wendy's. Surely, you did not intend that. Sadly, there was no recognition by the Board of Religion's essential service, nor of its sacred protection by the Constitution. You assume that the houses of worship were no more different than any other business, in fact, you lumped them together in the same paragraph. I do not believe that you intended this, but I do believe that this is the practical outcome of this resolution. The resolution is fundamentally unfair to houses of worship. One can reserve a table for 15 at the Cheesecake Factory and take off the mask for two hours to eat and drink, yet to do so in the house of God is to break the very resolution that you have passed. I say this humbly, but without fear, that the people and faith that I represent have, are, and will continue to defy what we believe is an unconstitutional and insensitive resolution. We ask for no more rights than those given to us by God, and rights that you have sworn to uphold and defend. Manatee County deserves a board that recognizes the boundaries of the First Amendment and the sacred difference between businesses and houses of worship. If you have made exceptions for friends and families to eat at a pizza shop, I implore you humbly to make exception for friends and family to worship at a house of God. I humbly ask for you to provide an exemption for houses of worship, anything less would reveal the true character of this board. Thank you.
Kevin Wright, to be followed by Maureen Gaffanti.
I'm Kevin Wright, speaking on behalf of the Manatee-Syracoid Republican Assembly as its president. The MSRA is neither chartered nor affiliated with the Republican Party. Businesses, fraternal organizations, and faith organizations no longer want to bear the burden of being the mask police. They're tired of the altercations usually directed at those peacefully not wearing a mask regardless of reason. This is the burden you've placed on our local organizations and citizenry. Our law enforcement and code enforcers do not need this burden either, they cannot and therefore do not enforce it, nor should they. The most telling comment towards the end of the meeting, which this body passed the mask resolution, was when your chair said, "What we have done today is send a message that this body feels that wearing a mask is important. You do not need a resolution or an ordinance to educate or make known the value of wearing a mask when appropriate." I saw a very disingenuous slideshow earlier, it said, talked about the mask resolution impacts. You don't know, you don't have a clue that the resolution had absolutely anything to do with what's going on statistically with regard to COVID-19, so don't present it to the public as this, as if it does. Two months ago, I emailed each of you inquiring about application of the governor's executive orders to fraternal organizations, which is why I had to sign this here, like several veterans organizations to which I'm a member. Response was that they should be able to open restaurants and serve alcohol in accordance to limitations stated in that order. If that were the case, I would not have been asking the question. None of you had any idea about the nature of the licensing for fraternal organizations, and only one of you, Vanessa, bothered to follow up on inquiry to our state senator. I'm part of an ongoing project with the Republican Liberty Caucus, to video interview business owners, faith, and civic leaders to tell their personal stories about the impact of state and local government overreach in the wake of COVID-19. The common thread in their stories is that they want government to educate based upon collection of all the facts. They want measures to be applied consistently and place government's primary purpose for being, which is to secure individual liberties, to the forefront. They do not want or need government to mandate. The progressive left's tactic is the faintest is being ignorant, misinformed, or uncaring about the health of citizens. The fact that COVID was a central theme of last week's Democratic Presidential Convention makes a mockery of the lament often presented by several of you when you say, "How is this political?" Politics is the process of determining what government will and will not do. Everything is political. On its face, it's not evil. Public and varied interest engagement is how we exercise politics in America, especially on contentious issues which make elected officials like you uncomfortable and subject to both encouragement and disdain. Last week, a mandate occurred in which I support, the huge primary election win by George Cruz and James Satcher.
Thank you, sir, your time is done.
...
Thank you. You're done, thank you.
Ruining it for everybody else.
We know how you feel, Kevin, we know how happy you are, thank you. You're welcome. Um, Maureen Gaffanti?
Good afternoon. I'm speaking today to ask you to exempt places of worship from the mask mandate or end the mask mandate entirely. It doesn't matter if you view churches as a business or not, the answer is still the same, no mask mandate for churches. It would make sense to not view businesses, churches as a business. Why? They are set apart in the First Amendment to our Constitution, they are tax-exempt, they do not require purchase of a product or service. And why were they set apart in the Constitution? Because one important purpose of the church is to provide a moral compass to government, and they must be free to do so. If you don't view churches as a business, but you believe in religious freedom, then exempt churches from this resolution. However, in your mask mandate, you include places of worship as business establishments. So, let's look at the mandate from that point of view. The board's mask mandate doesn't treat all businesses the same. As has been mentioned here today, you make an exception to allow people inside restaurants to eat or drink and not wear a mask, so it only makes sense to make an exemption for places of worship as well. And why is that? Because the First Amendment prohibits restricting the free exercise of religion, and Cornell Law School notes that includes not restricting an individual's religious practices, like singing in worship. If you do make an exemption for churches, you won't be alone. Texas Governor Greg Abbott took a common sense approach to churches and COVID-19 measures. In Texas, you can remove your mask when you enter a church. This is according to writer Kelsey Dallas's newspaper article about the issue. His article gives other examples, here are a couple. Phoenix's ordinance protects people with a faith-based objection to face coverings. Like Texas, in Nashville, Tennessee, no masks are required inside a church. Jeremy Dyess, special counsel at First Liberty, agrees with these exemptions and said, "In these and other places, government officials are respecting religious freedom to, religious freedom protections and enabling leaders of churches, synagogues, and mosques to make their own rules. Faith leaders can take recommendations from state officials and then, at the individual level, make their decisions they deem best." So, business or not, the answer is still the same, no mask mandate for churches or end the mask mandate entirely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the board on this issue, please come forward, state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to address this issue.
So, my name is Richard Tatum, and I just wanted to address the issue. I do know that you all have good intentions, but I've been here twice at the last time when you put the mandate forward, and also this time, and I, I keep coming back to this idea that all I hear about is the medical community, and I know Mrs. Whitmore works in that community, and it's very important, but I'm also working with Kevin Wright, we're talking to business owners, we're talking to fraternal organizations, and you have no concept of the continual fear that you're putting out there, this, this idea that we all have to stay at home, we have to stay away from each other, it's not good psychologically, it's causing, for instance, these fraternal organizations to lose hundreds of thousands of dollars of revenue. I know the state also has some things going on there with licensing and open and closing, but we really need to get all these people, the fraternal organizations, the Chamber of Commerce, the businesses here, and come up with a plan to how we stay prosperous and healthy at the same time, instead of continually just pounding and pounding and pounding about the health issues. Economists will tell us that there are no real solutions to problems in life, there are only trade-offs, and what we're doing right now is we're basically trading off fraternal organizations, businesses, their revenue and things like that, to save people from COVID-19, and we're just picking winners and losers, and that's not the role of government. I just reread the Declaration of Independence, it does say that governments are instituted to secure rights, not to take them away from people, such as people at churches, the right of businesses to use their private property and to operate at their maximum revenue possible. I know people that are, that are losing their businesses, that have had to close their businesses, you think you're doing good, but all you're doing is picking losers and winners, and you're not thinking through the second, third order consequences. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to address the board on this issue? All right, seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close, public comment. Carol?
Yeah, the VARs and the VFWs and all that, we have no control over, they've called me, and I've, I've double-checked with Galvano at one point, and, you know, that's in the governor's that's in the governor's hands. That's not ours. Even whatever we do today isn't going to help that. I know friends that have lost businesses. I know a restaurant that's been on the island for 50 years, and there are elderly ladies now, and they are having to close because they can't make it. So I personally haven't been in a business except for a restaurant three times during the day since all this. I get everything online, and because I have an elderly husband that's got Parkinson's, it's very high risk, and I'm not about to, you know, and I'm in the healthcare, and it's an admirable field in my mind, and I just want to make sure I don't give it to him. I want to thank everybody for coming today. I want to thank you for the respectful comments, except for maybe one. And I don't appreciate it because, you know, you can get more when you are working with somebody and trying to see where they're coming from and work together, and you don't get it when you're in your face. And, you know, I'm sure it'll be on social media before we leave here. But, good comments. Governor DeSantis has deemed that the churches are essential. What I learned today is that private schools are not included in this resolution, and we were told at one point that they were. The numbers are flat. I don't, and I did not know that private schools were not included in our resolution. So with the dialogue from the people that came today and the information that has been given to us today, everything's looking good. I'd like to change the resolution to deem churches that are, deem them essential, and that this ordinance does not apply to them. That's my motion. You don't have to second it, but that's...
I will second it for discussion. Yeah, I'm sorry. There is a motion on the floor.
What's the motion for the...
The motion is to extend the state of emergency. That is the only motion on the floor. Because I want to take public comment. I had no other way to take public comment, Carol. Now these people are here to talk, so I wanted to allow them to talk.
Well, if we could vote on that, then you've got my motion.
Okay. All right. Well, you hold off on your motion. Misty?
Can we vote on the other then, or no?
Yeah, but no, I want to complete the discussion on this before we vote, and then we'll take your motion up, okay?
Okay. Thank you. I do have a few comments, and I also appreciate everyone coming today. And I think the freedom of religion is extremely important. It's extremely important. And, you know, I want everyone to, all the pastors and ministers here, to lead their ministry in confidence, you know, freely, per the Constitution. I believe our resolution does not require masks inside a church if you socially distance. Is that correct?
Yeah.
County Attorney's Office?
That's correct.
Okay. So they aren't required if you can socially distance. So just maybe in the crowded lobby as you walk in, at least that's how my church is. Once you're seated, if you're socially distanced, you can remove the mask. So I think that's important. You know, we have to look at the science. The two biggest problems are singing and eating as far as spreading the virus, right? So that's why restaurants are a little bit dangerous, and that's why you have to put your mask on until you're seated, and those tables are then socially distanced so that everyone can remain as safe as possible. I think about regulations that churches, and all businesses have regulations, right? But churches do too. They are not exempt. Let's think about the fire code, okay? So the only way that churches and Walmarts are similar is that there's a fire code standard. I mean, churches have to follow that. It's a safety standard. And Walmart has to follow it too. But other than that, I don't see many similarities between Walmart and churches, but I did want to bring that up. You know, we've heard that we're beginning to see the light at the end of the tunnel and that continuing masks is the best solution for public health. I am interested to see which direction this board goes in. You know, do we want to exclude churches, and why would we do that? So when I'm making a decision like that, what I'm thinking of is I'm considering both options. I'm weighing the evidence. So if they, if people keep masks on indoors in churches and all places, we're seeing the numbers go down. But we should take them off, and I'm trying to understand why. Because you can still worship. My church does it. Lots of churches do it. So what are the consequences? What are the consequences if we eliminate churches from wearing masks? Well, I think just based on what we know about the virus is we can expect that there would be more positive cases. I think that's a pretty simple equation. So I don't know how I'm going to vote. I'm going to listen to more information, but our schools are opening. There's a lot that we don't know, and what I certainly don't want to do is put anyone's life at risk unnecessarily. That's it.
Okay. Just to bring us back. So we clearly, in my opinion, need the state of emergency to continue. We haven't conquered this virus yet. It's still out there. We need to keep working with all the resources we have. We're drawing those resources down on behalf of our citizens to help people that, we've heard a lot about people that are significantly impacted. So in my opinion, that should not change. I will tell you in regards, and I'm going to ask for some clarification from Bill Clegg because I think we've heard some misinformation here, but while he comes up, I will tell you, when this mask resolution first came to me to review, I said, "We can't do the thing with churches. We just can't do that." And I was told that, in fact, that was the way the resolution in...
Leon.
Leon County was adopted. And to be more legally protectable and consistent, we needed to include it. There was not a, there was a lot of opposition to masks in general. I know that. We heard it. We've all experienced. Kevin Wright, who I so rudely apparently said...
Thank you.
You were happy. That was not a rude comment. That was a factual comment. You can call it what you want, Vanessa, but I don't have to agree with you.
You were laughing.
Shh. I get to laugh too occasionally. So the fact of the matter is that I had a very, very bad taste about that line, which is a specific line in our resolution, that this would apply to churches. And I knew what the governor had said. I felt comfortable with the governor's said, but when I was told, you know, "You really need to just keep going with this as it's written," that's what I did. So I'll tell you that I've been, I appreciate y'all coming forward, but I've been very uncomfortable. Having said that, do I think you should wear a mask in church? Yeah. My husband sits on our, on our board at our church. We've had lots of discussions about how to do church, whether to do it in person, how to, you know, and initially, we were going back to church, but we have a very elderly population in our church. It's not a Bayside. It's not one of those big churches. It's a, the oldest church in the region. The oldest church. Because it was founded before any of these other churches were here, but also we have one of the oldest populations. So it's very scary to have folks that are very much at risk to come and do what people want to do. I agree with you 100%. I don't think any of us have ever been through anything like this where we're told to stay away from each other. You know, I have a daughter who is very, very, very concerned, and if I go out to dinner, she tells me I can't see my grandbaby for a week.
Boy.
I'm going to ask you to go ahead and talk.
Yes, ma'am.
My daughter would do that.
Madam Chair?
Please clarify.
For the record, Bill Clegg, chief assistant. If you recall, on July 27th, when I presented the resolution to the board, we did a walkthrough of it, and we talked about the various definitions, and we talked about the definition of business establishment. And I did say to the board at that time, "That is a definition that we'd be comfortable, the board could make adjustments to if you were so inclined." And that is still true today. Our advice stands on that. We don't have a concern that if you are to remove houses of worship from being subject to the resolution, that it creates a problem in terms of favoring religion, because this is not a regulation of speech. This is a health regulation. So it's something the board could do. I do recall our conversation, and I remember saying, "You can do this if you want to, but you should also be aware," because there are a lot of people out there pushing very hard for the resolution, "that there's some anecdotal information about the spread of COVID-19 in church services," and they could raise that. But it is something that the board has the discretion to do. I mean, it's not something where we have a legal concern that you have to include houses of worship in the resolution for the resolution to be legally defensible.
Yeah, and I should clarify. I was in no way blaming you, Bill, for that. In fact, I had had a very visceral reaction to that being wrong, and then you said that it was in that resolution that had withstood challenge.
Right. Carryover from Leon. Word-for-word carryover from Leon, but it doesn't have to be in there from a legal standpoint. I do think if you were to remove it, you should understand we are in litigation, and while that may affect the view of some people that are in the litigation, it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to go away because there are others that may want to continue in that litigation. So if you're going to do it, you should do it because you feel it's the right policy choice. That's why you should do it. That's the reason to do it.
Okay. And can you clarify the private schools, I believe, where there was a misstatement?
Okay. So there's been a lot of question about this. We were contacted by the school board's council the day after, or within a couple days, I guess the following Monday, of the resolution being adopted. And the first question is, "Does a private school fall within the definition of business establishment?" I think you could argue it one way or the other, quite honestly, but I think the board should remember, we very deliberately put very limited and restrained enforcement mechanisms in this resolution because we were concerned about employees who are in business establishments having to enforce, or as one individual put it, be the masked police for our resolution. And we said, "We're not going to do that because of some things we've seen happen in other jurisdictions, including some pretty scary altercations." So if a private school is subject to it, and ultimately, that's a call for the board, the most they have to do is the same thing Publix or Walmart or anyone else has to do, is to put a sign in the window, putting people on notice. It is not their responsibility. They're right about that. It is not their responsibility to enforce that within their building anymore, that it's, it's not the responsibility of Publix's employees to walk around and make people put masks on. We wrote it that way for a reason, because the board was concerned about the potential for overreach, and so that's one of the consequences of having a very tight and very restrained resolution. But in my view, it was the right decision from a legal standpoint. I think it puts us in a better position and it avoids some civil rights issues. We also put in their language, saying it's not grounds for arrest, it's not grounds for search and seizure. All of these things were intended to make it a very measured and restrained resolution, and so that's how that applies, in my view.
Thank you. Reggie?
Yeah. The irony about this is, I made a statement, I think yesterday or the day before. I miss going to church. And I have not, I have not been to church, oh man, in a while for two reasons. First, our church is actually having worship online, and there's communications between our pastors, whether or not it's via text or ways we could reach out if we need that support for things that may be going on. I've reached out to some pastors since you all have come up, and the majority of them feel that this is a public safety issue, and they're concerned on the ability for COVID-19 to spread. COVID-19 to spread in the midst of congregations, you know, if there is no social distancing. So now we go back to our ordinance, and we look at, you know, the six feet and the recommendations and the CDC guidelines. I do understand. I mean, I'm not taking nothing from no one on this board, the desire to want to worship. But anytime I make a decision, it's based on public safety. And I'm very, very concerned about churches congregating. And we've had countless amount of worship services, funerals, and things like that that just were not able to attend because you would not have the ability to be socially distanced. So now we are, we almost at a crossroad, and, you know, it's like a political swing going left or right as far as taking churches away. And me, I don't think churches have been taken away because honestly, I believe church is in the heart. And I honestly have had the opportunity on the individual basis to get closer to God because of that, me, I'm going to pray. Me, I'm going to read. I'm going to find a way to make it better for myself. Where I am with this is, I almost think, well, I do know there's some division. Some pastors feel one way and some pastors feel another. I can guarantee you that because I've checked some, and this is no disrespect to either side. And I've never been disrespectful to anybody and don't plan on it. The reality of this is public safety. That's the, that's the reality of it. And if we go to congregating, different churches have different level of amount of people that go to church. And now it's the risk of how many can come in and how many can go out, how many could potentially be exposed. And I heard about it from one of the biggest churches in Palmetto, and their focus was public safety, to be honest with you, is, you know, you have to make sure that we're doing what's safe for the parishioners. But you also have to make sure that the worshiping opportunity is there also. And a lot of churches are doing Facebook Live, and a lot of churches are actually, you know, TV, some are Zooming. It's a lot of different ways that they're reaching out. And I'm, on Sundays, I'm constantly going to different churches and listening to different services and things like that. I miss it, but I also try to operate with a sense of wisdom, and not only for me, but for the individuals in my family, within my friends, and things like that. So do I want to go around a large group of people and potentially get exposed and then potentially go around some family members, and next thing you know, we're at a, in a more difficult situation? And that's, that's just my comments and my thoughts about it. And I'm just concerned about the public safety aspect of it. And maybe we look at it. Maybe we look at it and do the exemption, but the reason why I'm torn is because I don't think we're denying worship. And the reason why I don't think we're denying worship, because I haven't been to church and I've had the ability to worship. But I do believe, you know, as far as the religious exemptions, I do understand that some pastors are torn from it, but we still want to look for that downward trajectory in whatever steps that we can take to make sure that our numbers continue to go down and we are not putting people at risk. And this is not a political thing. And God, if I'm saying it the wrong way, please forgive me. I think we have a responsibility to operate with wisdom with public safety first.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Steve, and I guess we've had a person that was, I'm trying to get everyone heard, a board, each board member get a chance, and Steve's been hanging in there, though he every once in a while beeps in. So we're going to hear from Steve, and then we do have a gentleman, or I don't know, somebody, two people that called in, and I forgot to ask for the call-ins, so we have to hear from those folks as well. So we're going to Steve first, and then we'll go back to the other commissioners. Steve, go ahead.
Can you, can you hear me?
We can.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. Just, you know, again, pretty quickly, you know, I'm having kind of this unique experience of getting to watch you all on TV and trying to put myself in the, you know, footprints of other people that are out there watching, and I can tell you, it's very, very confusing because if I'm not mistaken, we have two, two different things we need to do here. One is to agree to extend the governor's executive order, and then, secondly, to agree to extend our resolution on the mask-wearing thing. And we seem to be watching right now, is that we're spending a lot of time, you know, talking about the mask thing. You know, my recommendation is, I think there's a motion on the floor to go ahead and extend the governor's executive order for seven days, and I think we ought to go ahead and take care of that business and then get on with discussing the resolution on the mask ordinance and about extending it or perhaps making some changes to it, as Carol suggested. So those are, I'm saying, it's very confusing to watch as to, we're kind of bouncing all over the place here, so...
Well, Steve, let me clarify, and I...
Wrong, let me know, but I think that's, I think we have two different issues here.
Yeah, let me clarify. As I explained, the only thing we had on the agenda today was the extension of our declaration of emergency. It's not the governor's. It's ours, Manatee County's. It's not the governor's, it's ours, Manatee County's. So the governor's going to do what the governor's going to do, but we have a motion to extend ours. That because that motion was relative to the state of emergency, I took public comment. All of the public comment has been about masks. So it would have been kind of hard to ignore the issue. I didn't want to cut it off before we voted. And then there was a motion made, but we realized we already had a motion on the floor. So I'm going to try to clean this up. We're going to try to get through this. We will take the vote on the motion on the floor and if there's another motion. So that's where we're at. I'm giving everyone a chance to speak as much as I can. We have two people that are on the line that want to weigh in on this topic, which technically is extending our state of emergency. So we will, and of course, people have talked about masks, but it's all related. So we'll go ahead and if you'd like to call the first person?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. The first caller will be last three digits of 605, 605. I'm going to allow you to talk. Please unmute yourself. State your name for the record and you'll have three minutes, please. We'll come back to 605. The next one is last three digits, 445, 445. I'm going to allow you to talk. Please unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes to speak. They may be having some difficulty, Madam Chair. We can come back, maybe?
All right. Go to Vanessa? Yes? Do we have somebody?
This is Andrea, Manatee County. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so obviously, I'm going to be discussing the mask mandate versus the declaration of emergency that you guys have from Manatee County. I'm opposed to this mask. I think it is absolutely appalling that our Manatee County commissioners think it's okay to mandate a mask. The governor's order was perfectly adequate to handle this. If we're not within six feet, we need to wear a mask. The mandated in Manatee County does not need to be. I know you guys are going to still vote on it anyways. That's just the way you are. You won't listen to the citizens of this county. You guys think that you're right and we're all wrong, which is fine. But I do think that the exemption for the churches need to be included. And with that, that's all I'm going to say of today.
Thank you, I'm sorry, we did not make your name for the record. Please restate your name.
Andrea Johnson.
For the record?
That's what it is.
This is Andrea with Manatee County, Andrea Griffin.
And Andrea Griffin? Andrea, Andrea. Oh, I didn't know it was Andrea, that was Audrey. Andrea Griffin, thank you.
You don't think you guys would have went through one of these without me being here?
No, you know, I recognized your voice, but I'm sorry I got your first name wrong. Andrea, thank you.
That's okay.
Okay, did the other person still with us?
Last three digits of 445, if you're there.
You want to unmute?
Yes, my name is Melina. I hope to hear from you all again. And I should be able to get 10 minutes, is that correct?
Absolutely not.
Go for it.
No, I don't know. You need to reread the procedures. You're representing yourself, you get three minutes.
Don't pick your word for it, Betsy, that's okay.
Thank you.
I believe you. So I want to go to the governor's mandate on page four. And it says, "For the purpose of this order, Kentucky's essential activities encompasses the following, attending religious services." Essential activities, that's what the governor said. You, on the other hand, go off the reservation and go to Leon County. And they say the term business establishment also includes a place of worship. So you did not, by any stretch of the imagination, follow the governor's guidelines. And it's ironic because Tallahassee is in Leon County. Go figure that one out. So I think that needs to be rescinded. You do have a lawsuit against you, I sent you a copy of it. And Mr. Clegg, I can pretty much assure him, if you delete that word, that term, that the lawsuit will probably go away. And as a taxpayer, that's going to save us money. At the last land meeting, at the, you said, "We try to avoid lawsuits." Well, here is an opportunity to avoid a lawsuit. So I would strongly recommend, to save the taxpayer some money, go with the governor has stated, in essential services, and it's not a business. I didn't know praying was a business. And really, at the end of the day, do you want to get on the wrong side of God? It's unbelievable. And I will tell you that, most of you know that I go to 26 different churches every year. And in the last four months, 12, 15 churches I have gone to, not one has required a mask, including Sun Coast and the Source Church I was at last week, not one mask. Where is this big epidemic that we're supposed to hear from about the masks from these churches? It's not going to happen. It is not going to happen. So let's avoid the lawsuits. Let's delete that one little line that was a mistake to begin with, and let's move on. I mean, you think about it, you know, the flu, there's 45 million illnesses in the U.S. every year. 810,000 hospitalizations and 61,000 deaths every year for the last 10 years. Florida, we lose 203,000 people die every year. Car accidents, 3,000.
Thank you, Glenn.
All right, you got my two cents. Let's avoid the lawsuits. Let's reject the churches and I won't send you to purgatory.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Say that, okay. That's the last caller we had?
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right, we're closed, public comment now. Vanessa?
Yay.
Can we vote on this?
Let's finish the comments and we'll take the vote. Generally how we do it. Go ahead, Vanessa.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out. You know, I've been to church every Sunday since this happened. Generally at my own church that I belong to for 15 years in Sarasota. And in Sarasota County, they don't have a mask mandate. But you walk in my church, everyone wears a mask. They're not asked to, they just do it. Because so many of our brothers and sisters are elderly, so we do it out of respect for them. Our services are also done online, so people can choose either one. Every other pew is marked off so that it's closed, so you do have the social distancing going on. Bottom line, government has no right or business to tell a house of worship what to do. If you look back in the day when our forefathers were looking out for this country, making this country what it is, you've all heard about church and state. You keep them separate. Well, let me tell you something, there's nothing in there about the church. It's about the state not coming into the church and trying to regulate the church. It's not the other way around. So the bottom line is, I do feel that house of worship should have never been, and I didn't vote for the mandate to begin with, but you guys did. The house of worship, Betsy, I'm glad to hear when you saw it, you questioned it. I think it should have been questioned. I don't think it ever should have been done with the house of worship being included. That is truly getting into the personal space of us as individuals and with our right to worship. And I can tell you, Glenn and I don't agree on a lot of things, but when he just said, you know, you don't want God against you, do you? I mean, I was like, woo, no. I always try to do the right thing because it's the right thing to do, in my opinion. And I just think that, you know, I realize that you guys are going to do whatever you want. And I understand that. But for heaven's sakes, take out house of worship. Carol, I applaud you for making that motion. I hope the rest of you will consider it and do that. Reggie, I do respect you. You and I have had a lot of talk about the Lord over, since you've been on the board. I do respect you, but I also know that it is not your place or our place as a government to tell other people what to do when it comes to worshiping the Lord. That is one thing, that, you know what, you just don't have the right to do that. That's hands-off. It's just hands-off. So that being said, I think everybody that comes in here or calls in needs to be treated with respect. You know, we just had a primary a week ago today. People are outraged. We need to try and let people know that, you know, when it comes to the Lord, we do stop and think about it. We're not God ourselves. So I just hope you all do the right thing and take out house of worship. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and vote on the motion on the floor. All those in favor, the motion is to extend the state of emergency for one week. We could only do it one week at a time. That is the motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Steve?
He'll get there.
Nope.
You're not, okay, he's voting against the...
I'm also a nay.
All right, all those, well, hold on, guys. We do this in order. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those oppose, nay.
Nay.
Steve?
Nay.
Really?
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Four to three, okay. Carol? Five to two, excuse me, five to two.
I just can't understand when the governor has extended the state of emergency and we need to, for exactly what Jake said this week, where we had to put our hands in the pot to get some PPE equipment. And the only way you can do that is if you're under a state of emergency. So maybe some, you know, you can do whatever you want, I don't care. But, you know, we got to stop this rudeness up here. And, you know, we can talk civilly and nicely to each other and accomplish the same thing. But to talk down to everybody, it doesn't get anywhere and makes you look like fools. And, you know, I just can't tolerate people from the public or up here being disrespectful. And, but I do, Reggie, I got to, you know, I'm a person of science since 1977. This is a public health issue. It is public safety, but it's a major public health. It's an infection control issue. We have proven today that we're flat. And hopefully, our numbers are going to be going down. To me, the evidence that was presented by Sherry and Jake is the schools handling, and that's what I was worried about, I wanted to wait another week, you know, well, another two weeks before we decide what we're going to do with this declaration. But we need this, guys, to help pay for some of this stuff during the state of emergency. But the numbers are flat. The school's handling it. The church is not a business, I get that. I don't regret my decision at all the first time I voted for this. I'm a person that needs to see the science and the data. You know, I'm going to hear all this junk about science and stuff. I know what I'm doing. And I know that the masks mandates have made a difference. I don't care, you can look at the graph and you can see for yourself. And, you know, I'm 100% positive that what we did was the right thing. Cities, again, my city, you have to wear a mask outside, Mickey. I mean, you got to wear it even outside. And I got, you know, I lived on Anemone Island 50 years, I got tourists on golf carts with masks on. So the churches in that city will also have to comply with their city's resolution or ordinance, correct? I think they have an ordinance. So even though, no matter what we do, the cities that do have ordinances in place, this won't affect them if they included churches in their ordinances, correct?
Yes, if a particular municipality has a face-covering resolution or ordinance in place, it is their resolution or ordinance that will prevail.
Because no, in my city, I mean, $250 fine, the first fine, 500 thereafter, so, you know.
Did you make the motion?
I'm making my comments of what Reggie said, and then I'm going to make my motion. Pastors, I'm hoping that you will not discourage your attendees to wear a mask. And I don't think you will. But, you know, there are some people that aren't going because of that. I mean, the science is there, it is a virus. You know, it is worse than the regular old flu. I don't care what anybody says, anybody you ask. So again, Reggie, that's why I've changed my mind. I'm not there with the political stuff. I'm doing this because today was demonstrated that the numbers are flat. And in about another week, hopefully, things will go lower. So with that, I was going to prepare, I already made my motion, do I need to read it again?
Please.
Do you need it?
Yes.
To change the resolution to deem that churches are essential services, thus, this resolution does not apply to churches.
Madam Chair?
I'm the second there, and I'm going to ask you to just eliminate the sentence that says churches are businesses for purpose of this resolution.
Would that be cleaner, Bill?
Could I just make a couple of quick comments here with respect to the board?
Sure.
We are in court over this resolution. And so whatever changes you make, at some point, we're going to want to have a documented written resolution that says that, that we can file with the court. Otherwise, we're putting our courtroom lawyers in a very, very tough spot because they're going to have to refer back to a board discussion and try to explain to the judge what's going on. So I'd like to offer some suggested language. And the intent of it is, if the board passes it, immediately, houses of worship become exempt from the resolution, but that we are then responsible for bringing back to you a written resolution to formalize that at the next meeting. So I would suggest that you move to exempt houses of worship from the requirements of Resolution Number R-20-116 and direct the county attorney's office to bring back a written resolution reflecting the same at the next regular meeting.
So moved.
Thank you.
And I second that. And for discussion, I will say, I still think you should wear a mask when you are in a church. I definitely believe that you should wear a mask. I definitely believe that you should wear a mask if you can't social distance. You know, I think it's the same in a restaurant, I agree with you 100%. It's the same in a church. But I believe people should go to church if they feel comfortable. And I believe that they should worship the Lord. I believe that 100%. So I don't know if I need to say that. I've never said it before in my role as a commissioner, but I certainly do believe that.
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of comments. And I'm trying to stop people from going to church. I know someone that I love very dearly who has not stopped going to church. And she refuses to stop going to church. And I'm not telling anyone to stop going to church. I'm saying what Reggie did. And the reason why Reggie did it is because Reggie's around a lot of people because of his different responsibility. And Reggie wants to be responsible and not potentially put anybody at risk. So let's make this very clear, I'm not telling nobody not to go to church. I am concerned about the public safety. I do think when you go to church, please consider social distance and wearing a mask, right? But I'm not telling nobody not to go to church. And I clearly understand what you were saying, Commissioner Whitmore. I think where I went off on a tangent is where, you know, I'm concerned because I'm like Glenn. I don't want to err with God, but what I'll do and what most people probably won't do, I'll go and pray and repent. I'm finished with that.
Thank you. We know you're a man of, we know you're the man of the Lord, Reggie. You always fill in for us when we're missing a pastor to say the prayer. So there's no debating that. Misty?
Yes, and I just want to say that I am going to support the motion. That's fine. I do hope that everyone continues to be as safe as possible. And masks will help us to do that. But yes, I will support the motion.
Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to be clear that the office of the county attorney is prepared to defend your face-covering resolution with or without the inclusion of houses of worship.
Thank you.
We are prepared to defend that.
We know you got our back, okay. Steve, did you want to say anything?
You know, I think it's, I feel like, I mean, kind of, because I don't, you know, I believe that, you know, we want to get the people be comfortable in the churches, but I'm so against the whole resolution in general. And I really don't know. I haven't, I guess I'm going to have to vote one way or the other, but I hope, you know, that the, those religious folks understand I'm not voting against them as much as I'm just voting against the rights of people. And I do think that this resolution violates the Constitution. So I don't know, I'm just, like I say, I'm kind of, I'm very torn. But I guess we're going to come back and potentially vote on another resolution next week, I guess, or something that will clean all this up. Is that my understanding?
No.
Probably wouldn't be next week. When would it be?
Your next regular meeting, whatever that is.
Next regular meeting. So the intent is to be implemented. So, the intent is to be implemented immediately, but the resolution itself, that's what I heard from the attorney, shaking his head.
That's correct.
And I am 99.9% sure that there has been no action taken by local government to enforce this ordinance in a church, is that true?
I don't think anywhere.
Nowhere.
In Manatee County, you know, I know that the Hillsborough went back and forth on theirs, I remember that, but, right, so, so this has not been that, I know it's a, I get it, it's a lawsuit, I get that it's a point, and, but, okay. So, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. Reggie, did you want to?
No, only thing I'm asking, if we decide to have an emergency meeting on September the 9th, could we possibly address that also, Mr. Attorney?
Oh, yeah, with the governor's staff?
Right.
Certainly, yes, we can, yes.
And maybe that could possibly...
Yes, if you schedule a special meeting in advance of your regular meeting, we can certainly be prepared to come back with the language at that time.
Yeah, and again, I, let's go ahead and take the vote, and I want to say just a comment about this emergency meeting stuff. All those in favor of the motion on the floor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Chair votes aye, motion passes, six to one. I just want to say, on the emergency meeting, my understanding, the only reason we would have an emergency meeting is if there was some change in the governor's position. We're not scheduling an emergency meeting unless there's some change that comes down from the governor, and, I mean, literally, the only change that I could think that the governor would say is, that would affect us, is to say, I honestly, I don't know of any reason why, what everything the governor would say that would cause us to have an emergency meeting.
Lift the state of emergency, then, yeah, we have to.
Well, we have to extend it every seven days, so...
Yeah, but if the state lifts it, Jake, then we don't have a state of emergency, correct?
That's not correct.
Oh, I thought it was. You think I would have known that with being on the...
You are able to declare your own state of emergency independent of anything that the governor does.
Well, we haven't, so I wouldn't, but that's beside the point.
All right, well, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
Yeah.
I will tell you, I will not be here, so you can all have an emergency meeting on September 7th if you want, but I will not be here.
But I'm chairing it, so go for it, guys.
The 9th, is it the 9th?
Yeah, well, maybe the 9th. The governor's talking the 8th, maybe the 9th.
Maybe the 9th. I will not, I will be out of town on the 9th.
And I'll be with her.
Good, that's good, then I, it's a no vote anyway, so...
Just letting you know that, okay. All right, that is all the business we have. I do have a 3 o'clock meeting, so I'm going to turn the gavel over to Carol Whitmore, and I am going to go to meet with Joel Swallow of Mayor Feed the Hungry. They are in desperate need of donations for Mayor Feed the Hungry, I'm helping them do a public service announcement at 3 o'clock, I'm going to be a little bit late, and he's calling me right now.
Okay.
But, I just wanted to say that before I leave, that's my only public comment before we are done.
Okay, Commissioner Trace, you had a comment, and then...
Are we on Commissioner's comments?
Yeah, we're going to do Commissioners' comments. We'll start with Commissioner Trace.
Yes, I do. We have a problem out east, I'll give you one example. There's a property, about approximately 100 acres, the deed says the property line is 33 feet from the top of the road. Right-of-way, county right-of-way, state right-of-way says that the right-of-way is 27 foot from the top of the road to the back of the ditch, which is approximately 27 feet, which basically leaves six feet unclaimed, so to speak. They go to separate the property, they can't get easements because they don't have any road frontage, because it's six feet undone. I would like to make a motion that the staff look into this and try to come up with a clear plan so that these people aren't...
Landlocked.
Basically, something that's happened for, some of them are 100-year-old deeds, and they're just not up to date, that they can deal with it in a prompt manner, instead of making them have to spend extra money to prove that, yes, they actually do have road frontage. So, that's my motion.
Second, ma'am.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Trace, second by Commissioner Bellamy.
Can I just follow up with that? Madam Chair, when we're asking staff, we just want them to identify the options, is that the bottom line, so we can make sure...
I don't know that we can identify all of them, because I have heard from some people that there's hundreds of them out there, hundreds, when you start going east that are, the right-of-way is one thing, they have different things, I would like them to come up with clarity, to the best of their ability, like, maybe we accept the deed, even though the right-of-way says 27, if the deed says 33 feet, could you mean, we're talking, legally, we're just talking some lost craziness. I'm hoping that they can sit down and come up with clarity on a lot of them so that they don't have to keep coming, we've dealt with, since I've been here, I know of four or five that we have dealt with, and it basically ends up costing the person that owns the property some money to do this. So, I just would like the staff to go and see if they can come up with a reasonable plan, and Building Department, which I know them will end up in the legal department also.
Mr. Palmer, and if this is going to be a lot of work, I mean, at least staff can come back and tell us, and then we could decide if we move further on it, or do any stages?
I'm just saying for staff to look at it, because I do know that there's a huge problem out there.
Okay, Mr. Palmer.
Madam Chair, I was going to request, can we at least have the name of a property owner or a street address that is presenting the instant problem? I am very hesitant to wade into offering opinions that may or may not affect 100 different property owners. So, for the moment, can we at least have a name of this property owner and/or a corresponding street address?
We do, we will provide that.
Okay, Sherri will get it.
We do have that.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor, a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against, motion carries. Anything else, Priscilla?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Misty?
Nothing.
I'll go last. Vanessa, any comments?
No comments.
Reggie?
Yeah, I just want to, and I talked to the county administrator about this, as far as looking at, we have a lot of other sports that have taken place, right? We have pickleball, and we do have some football and some soccer. I know that we are preparing for Labor Day weekend to have a big soccer tournament at our premiere, and that's for the outdoor, for the outdoor sports. I would feel more comfortable responding to constituents with a specific criteria for the indoor sports, i.e. basketball.
You just mentioned that.
Well, it was outdoor.
Right.
It was outdoor, and what I want us to look at, or to consider working on, is what are we targeting to say, okay, we can look at indoor sports now. So, when that information comes, and maybe you already have it, I'll feel more comfortable giving individuals that want to run tournaments and things like that a more concrete response. So, if we can kind of get some information on that.
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Bellamy, I can provide the board with a statement. We've been following the small venue, medium, and large venue guidelines for Phase 2. I can provide that as a guide to follow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Reggie? Okay, Steve, are you on the phone, do you want to make a comment?
No, I'm good.
Okay, I've only got two. I'm still working with FWC, our environmental department, Damon, also Nick Azera, regarding the Passage Key Island. We had a telephone conference, as you know, this island was established by our President, Roosevelt, I think in 1905. Come to find out, we have Sarasota County using Passage Key as a tourist destination, and it's federal lands, and you're not even supposed to touch it. We're finding out it's a major lack of education, so, we are, it's going to be celebrated, it's 115th anniversary of being established. We're going to do a proclamation on that day. We're working with the TDC, just so you know, with getting education out when we're passing it to our vendors about this, and also Egmont Key, there is an area there you're not supposed to be on either. And FWC was very excited, because they just cannot, cannot, cannot control the people out there. They have lawn chairs out there, people are taking their dogs, and I guess in the last couple of years, 30 more species of birds have gotten on the island that hadn't been there in quite a few years, probably since the hurricanes in 2004, so, that's moving forward, and we're going to have another meeting after, in October, so it went really well. Also, as you know, I'm on the FACT board, and I'm on the Health and Human Services FACT Committee, and I've been bringing this up for years, and I guess some other counties are also interested in the inmate medical cost, whereas, right now, when somebody gets put in jail, the counties in all over the state of Florida have to pay for their medical care, even hospital, even when an officer has to sit there when the patient's handcuffed to the bed, because I've actually been there and treated patients like that, the county has to pay for all that, even though that inmate may have insurance, we're not allowed to bill it. So, we are moving forward with that, again, I guess there's two other counties that have submitted something, I'll send you guys a copy of the proposed policy statement. So, this will tie into what I tried to do last year, to try to recoup some of our taxpayers' monies from insurance companies, because as you know, it's against the law right now for anybody to bill private insurances when they're in the jail and they need medical care. So, we need to do something about that.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I don't know if I can...
I'm the chair.
Okay. I just wanted to let you know, I had a conference call today with FACT, with the federal committee that I sit on, and that is one of the issues that we're taking to DC this year.
Good, because we've been working on it a few years, and we've gotten hit with a couple high, high-ticket item clients in the millions, so, I think it's only fair that if a person has insurance or can qualify for Medicaid, why are we paying? Mickey, and then Misty.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sure I'm not nearly as educated as you are, Commissioner Whitmore, on the subject, but it occurs to me that, at least, if you're looking to legislate in this subject area, then the legislature, the legislation probably ought to include a prohibition against health insurance companies excluding, excluding from policy coverage, medical treatment while in a correctional facility, because...
Very good.
I have heard, at least anecdotally, that there are a number of health insurance companies that have policy exclusions regarding coverage while incarcerated. So, it would literally require the legislature to say to the insurance companies, you can no longer exclude.
That's a good point, and also, think about auto insurance, too. I bet you there's an exclusion in that. That's nothing, that's something I had never thought of, because I carry the max on my car insurance to pay for medical costs, but that is a very good point.
That's probably the only way that you can ensure that it will ultimately happen, is that the legislature literally prohibits health insurance companies from excluding coverage while the insured is incarcerated.
Good point, I'm going to send that on up to my committee. Any, that's all the comments I have. Sherri?
No comments. I had one question.
Misty?
Since we're talking about FACT committees, so the last I remember, maybe Vanessa can help me understand, the last I remember is, Vanessa, you were on the Federal and the Water Committee, I was not on a committee, and someone said I would be on the Federal Committee, and I think you said you were going to stay there, too? Is that correct, or was I going to take your place?
That was only for last year, this year they sent out new assignments.
I didn't get a new assignment.
Okay, well, I'm...
Okay, so...
It has nothing to do with me.
Yeah, you could contact whomever, what is it, the National Association?
So, that was only for 2019?
Yes.
So, for 2020, okay, I guess I just don't know the process well enough yet?
Every year, you have to apply.
They would send you an email and let you know.
I saw some emails, but I didn't know how to respond to that. I mean, do we say we want to do this, or do they, I mean, that wasn't clear to me.
Yeah, I didn't know either.
You usually ask your, what I do, is I, if I, I'd ask Vida to please let him know I'm still interested in this committee, and I think that's what Priscilla did, too. And then she sent a note up, and they...
I didn't do that.
They'll put anybody on it.
I didn't do that.
Well, that's what we did, because we got an email, I always, I did.
Okay, I'll get with Vida and Celeste.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, all right, any other comments, questions? Okay, I don't see a clock, do you?
3:06.
Okay, with that, this meeting is adjourned at 3:06.
Thank you.